All right, good morning, everyone. If people can please take their seats, we're going to go ahead and get started. I want to welcome everybody to the Coastal Commission meeting of Thursday, May 8th, 2025. I'd like to ask Miss Miller to please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Present.
Commissioner Dumalaw.
Here.
Commissioner Ecklerly.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Present.
Commissioner Redoni.
Here.
Commissioner Nodoff.
Here.
Commissioner Uranga.
Present me.
Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Harmon.
Chair Cummings.
Here.
You have a call.
All right.
You forgot Commissioner Williams.
Oh. Commissioner Williams, sorry.
All right, with that, I'd like to ask our council to please report out from closed session.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yesterday, the Commission met in closed session. It received litigation information and advice and took action on the following cases. Friends of Oceanic Dunes versus California Coastal Commission. Friends of Oceanic Dunes versus California Department of Parks and Recreation at all. Humboldt Alliance for Responsible Planning versus Coastal Commission. It also received litigation information and advice on Sable Offshore Corporation at all versus Coastal Commission. And Space Exploration Technologies Court versus Coastal Commission. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask staff about changes to today's agenda.
I could do that, or do you want to do the hearing procedures first?
Oh, yeah, sorry. First meeting procedures.
All right. Good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-span.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend use the CalSpan website. Those who wish to address the Commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the Commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless submission are available on the Commission's staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the Commission's Agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comment may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 AM on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair. We will accept a request to speak on an item up until the Chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the Internet, please go to the Commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have Internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the Commission's staff at (562) 477-9089. Again, that number is (562) 477-9089. Staff will provide you with the telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the Commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute your phone. Chair Cummings, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll come back to agenda changes, and so I'll turn that back to staff.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Yes, we have three agenda changes today, and the posted agenda is correct, but I'll walk through them. So, item 10A, this is the Sonoma County Post-Surge Map Update item. That item's been postponed. Item 13A, this is the City of Capitola LCP Amendment for a series of Implementation Plan refinements. That item's been moved to consent. And item number 13B, this is the City of Carmel by the Sea Wireless Ordinance. That item's been postponed, and that concludes agenda changes.
All right, thank you very much. That moves us on to our general public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to us on items that are not on the agenda, and I'll turn it to Chris to call off the first, to call off the individuals who'd like to speak to us on public comment.
All right, thank you. For members of the public, I'll be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair. In order to allow for live video testimony on Zoom, we will be bringing you in as panelists. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment. To speed up this process, we will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you'll be moved back to attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I'll call your names in the order that they appear in our sign-up list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach to speak. Several helpful tips: There is a raise-your-hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you're using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing *6. So, today, we have 17 people signed up for general public comment. We'll start with people in the room, with Mandy Sackett, Steve Ray, Rachel Wilson, and then Judy Taylor. So, Mandy Sackett. And then we have your presentation as well. Give us a moment to bring it up. And then if you could turn the mic on as well. There you go.
Okay, we're ready. Good morning, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. Mandy Sackett, California Policy Manager for the Surf Rider Foundation. Like the Commission, Surf Rider supports enforcement of the California Coastal Act to ensure beach access equity for residents and visitors alike. Next slide. For this reason, Surf Rider embarked on a 14-stop outreach effort, the Love Your Beach Tour. Next slide. At each location, Surf Rider gave an overview of how the Coastal Act gives everyone in California the right to visit the beach and to support, oh, excuse me, and how the Coastal Commission enforces that right. Next slide. People then filled out postcards to their state legislatures, asking them to vote against any legislation that threatens the Coastal Act and to support the Coastal Commission. Next slide. The Love Your Beach Tour had stops from Imperial Beach to Eureka to Davis to Sacramento. We collected over 1,500 postcards from constituents in more than 100 districts. We hand-delivered the postcards to legislative offices during California Coastal Day, I'm sorry, California Ocean Day this past Tuesday, and encouraged legislators to read the personal comments that people provided. Next slide. For example, "I want my daughter to experience the ocean for generations to come. Me and my family go every weekend, and it's my happy place. I created a majority of my happy memories at the beach, and I hope to do the same with my children. It's a great place for my family and friends to hang out and de-stress. Beaches are a beacon of our community. We can't get it back once it's gone. We even had a shout-out to the Coastal Commission directly. This campaign affirmed how much people of California love the coast, care about protecting it, and value their right to share, to our shared public beaches. They spoke up for you, the Commission, and in these troubled times, we urge you to continue standing strong for the public interest in return." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Steve Ray, Rachel Wilson, and Judy Taylor.
Chris, why did you have me going after Mandy Sackett? It's a tough act to follow. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, staff, and other staff. It's good to be here. Sorry I wasn't able to make it up yesterday. I wanted to be here to say some words to my friend Roberto Uranga and to Tom Lester, so I'm going to say him today. I'm so grateful to have known both of these men over the years. Tom Lester taught me a lesson that was tried, that Peter Douglas, the late, great Peter Douglas, tried to teach me, and that it was just to do the science. And if you get, if you do the science, you know, you're halfway down the road to, to the problem or solving the problem. And Tom was a master at doing the science. I worked with Tom many years on desalination issues, especially related to the Poseidon Desalination Plant. Worked with him regarding groundwater replenishment systems due to the 301H waiver that dumped a bunch of raw and partially-treated sewage into the ocean every day. He was a master and so knowledgeable, and the most difficult thing working with Tom was you could never read how he thought of anything, because for him, it all came down to the science. It wasn't matter what your opinion was or anything, it was what does the science say? So, kind of miss you, Tom. And now to my friend Roberto Uranga. Sorry to see you go, compadre, but I know it's, it's time, and you've decided it's your time. Roberto and I have gone through a couple of things together. The Banning Ranch thing was a long, long slog, and while we disagreed on some things related to that, we always managed to go out and get along well, and he was great at talking to people. So, I'm sorry to see you go. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Next, Rachel Wilson, Judy Taylor, and then Catherine Slater-Carter. Rachel Wilson.
So, Steve was grateful, one. I'm grateful, too. I have gone up and down the coast in about the last month, and what's interesting is every place I have gone, you have had a positive hand in. From Avalo Beach, when you helped facilitate that cleanup. From Morro Bay with the big tank farm and the big ship out in front, you helped facilitate that cleanup. From being able to walk on my public beach at Studio Drive, you facilitated that because there were those who were trying to say it was a private beach. Going further north off of Cambria, you have facilitated lots of things. You are extremely popular on our coastline. Last year, you said no more camping on a certain beach up between Cambria and Big Sur. It happened to be my family's favorite daytime beach, but we had stopped going there because the trash buildup was just not okay. And now, because of you and all of your hard work, my family now goes back to that beach. It is clean. It is a fun, safe place for people to go. So, I've heard that there are people who say the California Coastal Commission doesn't do anything. I have not been a place in the last month that the California Coastal Commission has not had a very positive influence. From the bluffs north of my favorite Cayucas, I'm actually a Cayukan, even though you know me with Morro Bay, I walked on the bluffs yesterday, played on the beach yesterday, and guess who preserved for those for us many years ago? The California Coastal Commission. So, I truly want to thank every one of you. I was a teacher. You guys are the most knowledgeable people I have ever known. You are the best students of the environment ever. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Judy Taylor, Catherine Slater-Carter, and then Chloe Standes. Judy Taylor. And Judy Taylor, Catherine Slater-Carter, Chloe Standes. If any three of you have heard your name, you can come up. Go ahead.
I'm Catherine Slater-Carter. I am here speaking solely as an individual. I am on the San Mateo County Harbor District. I'm the president and a commissioner there. I'm also on the Montero Water and Sanitary, but again, I'm speaking as an individual. Couple heads up on things happening on the coast. One, in last fall, you heard a, an item about parking on Surfers Beach, and you, you asked Caltrans or demanded that Caltrans put in 70 spaces. That's not nearly enough, and so the Harbor District is working with Caltrans and others, and there are some opponents, so it may come before you. We want to put in a large environmentally-friendly parking area on the east side of the highway, on the El Granada side, to keep people out of the town and still provide beach and visitor access. We are, at the Harbor District, we are working on dredging the harbor. We finally have our permits. We're going to be starting that, that soon, and we are going to be adding, putting the sand on Surfers Beach. That's been a long project. In doing that, we've been looking at how to protect the sand that we put on Surfers Beach, and the idea has come up to re-establish the natural beach protections, and that would be to put in artificial reefs in which the ocean structures can rebuild themselves, for instance, a nursery habitat for the fish, for the baby fish and such. I hope the, I hope Coastal will be looking at encouraging that. In Montero, we have a housing area called Seal Cove. You might want to go out and visit it. Call MWFC. The houses are falling into the ocean, and it's a serious issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And then again, Judy Taylor, Chloe Standes.
Good morning, Coastal Commission. I'm Chloe Standes. I've lived in Half Moon Bay for 17 years. I'm a prospective Eagle Scout and an incoming freshman in the Experience Industry Management Program at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. I'm here to update you on the Poplar Beach Bonfire Pit Pilot, a project you approved late last year, and ask for your support to, and ask you to continue to support it. From February 28th to March 14th, we installed four concrete bonfire pits on Poplar Beach. I designed and helped construct them. The idea was a test. Could we offer a safer, cleaner, more intentional alternative to the, to the illegal fires that have historically created trash and safety risks for beachside residents? This was also the first time that fire pits have been legal on a Half Moon Bay city beach since 1991. Here's what happened. People used the space respectfully, consistently, and often during the day. There were no posted signs, no enforcement, and there were no 911 calls for fire-related activity during the entire pilot project. Cleanup crews reported less trash, fewer embers, and no damage to surrounding areas. We received hundreds of positive comments through social media, in-person feedback, and letters. And on Nextdoor, where conversations are often polarized, the feedback was unanimously positive. Now, let's contrast that with what we've seen as Poplar Beach residents every single summer weekend for my whole life. Illegal bonfires still smoldering in the morning, trash left behind, and kids being chased off the beach by the Sheriff's Department, not because they're doing anything wrong, but because there's no safe, legal option. The pilot proved we can offer one. The city manager, with full city council support, is preparing a proposal for a one-year pilot extension. This isn't a forever decision. It's a chance to test year-round use, strengthen community education, and return to you with data, feedback, and a clear path forward. This is the kind of win the Coastal Commission can own. Pragmatic, community-driven, low-impact, and deeply aligned with your mission of public access and environmental protection. Thank you for backing the initial pilot. Let's keep this going.
Thank you. One last call for the in-person speaker is Judy Taylor, and then we'll move on to our Zoom speakers, starting with Lydia Ponce, Patrick McGibney, and then Robert Roy Van der Hook. I'm not seeing anyone coming up to the mic, so we'll move on to our Zoom speakers. Lydia Ponce, you're being promoted as a panelist right now. When you're able to, please begin.
Good morning, relatives calling from Venice, known as Sagna, to the Tonga people and to all the relatives who name it by its rightly unceded territory, Sagna. I just wanted to share the thoughts and prayers and all the good things for everyone to quench their thirst in the future and the seven generations to have that vital medicine of water. There are many people coming up with plans, additional plans, and trying to pitch it as a not-desalination. If you're taking salt out of the ocean, it is desalination. I just want to say that these are Snake Oil Salesman, Flim Flam, Hoodwink, and Bamboozle, the mass of people who love the ocean, all of us here right now. I'm asking the California Coastal Commission to consider that we didn't know who we were going to have as a resident of the White House, not my president, that we could take a look back at these things that were approved to possibly draw them back, pull them back, and wait. I'm talking about wind turbines, and we just learned yesterday or the day before that the resident of the White House is now going for deep mining, deep mining. He just approved it. He wants to do that in our ocean floors. So, we need to look back, dial it back, dial it down, and be prepared to defend, honor, and protect our oceans, the beach, for seven generations to come, because I know and you know that all the fruits of the world belong to all the children. And I, I'm just asking for your consideration to take a look back and, and maybe put some things on the back burner and leave, leave it, leave it resting there. We're not ready to do all these things, because enough will be done. As a matter of fact, there's a plan to put some not-desalination thing in exactly where the detox, the toxic debris is sinking into the ocean right there at Malibu Pacific Palisade. So, please, I beg you, take a look back and, and put it, put it to aside. Let's do it at another time and place. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Patrick McGibney, followed by Robert Roy Van der Hook, and then Catherine Rhodes. Patrick McGibney.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Patrick McGibney. Yesterday, late in the afternoon, a letter was posted by Blaine Reely, the Water Sustainability Czar for San Luis Obispo, where he was commenting on a document sent to you by retired hydrologist Lynette Brooks, where she details why the Los Osos Water Basin is overdrafted and not sustainable. Mr. Reely explains why there was such an increase in fluoride levels over the previous year.
Sir, I think you're supposed to be speaking on an item that we're going to hear this afternoon, so if we can have you share, save your comments until we hear that item, that be appropriate.
You're not going to hear this item this afternoon.
Yes, we are. I wonder if staff can maybe, if staff can maybe highlight which item that would be.
Yes, we have four appeals on this afternoon and two de novo applications where the issue is water supply in Los Osos, and Mr. McGibney is the appellant in the four cases.
Okay, so we're going to hold your comments until then, and so if you can either come back later this afternoon when that item is heard or stay on the line, we will hear your comments at that point in time. And so, Chris, if we can move on to the next person, that'd be appropriate.
Okay. Robert Roy Van der Hook, followed by Catherine Rhodes, and then Kelly Sears. Robert Roy Van der Hook.
Good morning, California Coastal Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. I said you were Mr. President in a previous meeting. Apologize for that. I have, my name is Robert Roy Van der Hook, and I am an environmental biological scientist with a, and geographer, and I want to echo what Lydia Ponce just said to you, and I'm also speaking from unceded land in Los Angeles, in the Fernandino Totavium area of northern Los Angeles, San Fernando Valley, Pacoima area, Zumar. And the sea otter is what I'd like to speak to in the conservation. They, they live in Half Moon Bay, where your meeting is today. They occur then south in Santa Cruz Yacht Harbor, where the chairman is on the Board of Supervisors there. They're in Elkhorn Slough Harbor, they're in Moss Landing, basically. They're in Monterey Harbor. They're in Morro Bay Harbor, and those are as far south in harbors that they occur. I am looking for the Coastal Commission to address the State Department of Fish and Wildlife to change their policy to allow the sea otter to be in Southern California. There is a law that's from 50 years ago because of Abalone fishermen lobbying that did not want otters in Southern California. It's time for them to be in Santa Barbara Harbor, Marina Del Rey Harbor, Oxnard Harbor, King Harbor, Redondo Beach, and, and other harbors. They are not just a kelp forest species. They are a bay and estuary and harbor species historically, and their prey is clams. I am unhappy with what the Board of Supervisors of LA County isn't letting dolphins or sea lions be in the Marina Del Rey Harbor, and more may be in future meetings.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Rhodes, followed by Kelly Sears, and then Andrea Luker. Catherine Rhodes.
Hello, this is Catherine Rhodes. Can you put up my presentation? Lovely, thank you so much. So, this is Catherine Rhodes. I'm a civil engineer here in, in San Diego, and since 2006, pretty much everyone, the city, the county, San Diego, the port, have been hiding scientific evidence of active faulting in San Diego Bay and in downtown San Diego. So, yesterday, I think it's item 6C, you talked about in the legislative action, you talked about SB 675 Padilla for streamlining, for Seaport Village in San Diego Bay or Seaport San Diego, 1 Highway 1. So, on September 23rd, 2021, the California Geologic Survey reissued the Alquasperio earthquake fault map for the Point Loma Quad, showing areas where earthquake zones of required investigation are. And this is the, the map that shows the fault going right through Seaport Village. Next slide, please. This is the, the map for the Navy Broadway Complex where it showed active faults, anticlines, or anomalies, but nobody, everybody just basically, including you, you guys pretended that this didn't exist when it came before you. Next slide, please. In 2018, there was a preliminary fault hazard investigation from Nino and War on February 26, 2018, and their scope of services says preliminary, or scope of services for this preliminary fault hazard evaluation include the following. So, this is only a preliminary report. There is no other report. Next slide, please. This, and this is an edit right here. It was in 2023, but in 2018, they acknowledged at least one of the act defaults. There's one to five act defaults on the site, and they put a canal there, and then, but in 2022, all of a sudden, the canal is gone, and there's no active faulting anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Sears, and then Andrea Luker, and then I'll start calling names that we weren't able to find. Kelly Sears.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning. My name is Kelly, and I'm a resident of Hollywood Beach, and I'm talking today to oppose the project of dune restoration and permanent fencing. This project was approved without any community input or transparency, and as a governing body, I urge you to reconsider the validity of this decision, especially learning that chemicals and roundup were even considered for use. That alone should have raised red flags. Another red flag should have been zero opposition at the hearing when this decision was made. No one in the community knew about it. We weren't notified, yet it impacts us the most. It's unacceptable to install permanent fencing that restricts public access to what has long been considered our community's shared backyard. Festing birds is why they're fencing it off. 19 acres gone and rendered unusable to people that live here for a bird that temporarily nests, and everyone respects here on, in this community. I would urge you to go on and do your own research and, and reach out to the community to find out how they feel about this project before you can consider letting it continue from this point on. Please do that. You guys deserve to be informed, and we as a community deserve better from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Luker.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect, thank you. Good morning, I'm Andrea Luker. I'm speaking today on behalf of React Alliance. Just to remind you, we are a nonprofit, nonpartisan, volunteer organization working to educate the public about offshore wind. Our group continues to grow, and at last, last night's monthly meeting, we had a packed house to hear from our retired local county supervisor. In terms of offshore wind, let's just remember that the east coast is way ahead of the west coast, which gives us and you the ability and advantage to be proactive versus reactive. While I'm sure you're aware of this, late last year, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, BOAM, released a report entitled "A Programmatic Environmental Impact Statement Regarding the Offshore Wind Development Plan for the New York Bite," which is a triangular area off the coast of New York and New Jersey. That wrote, that report notes that the effect on the North Atlantic Right Whale could be major, defined as having a severe population level effects that major, um, defined as having a severe population level effects that would, I quote, "compromise the viability of the species." In other words, potential extinction. React Alliance again asks you to reconsider the permitting of offshore wind in California. As Michael Josephson said, who was a renowned ethicist, "Keep in mind that sometimes doing the right thing costs more than you're willing to pay. Perhaps you won't get reappointed to the Coastal Commission or you'll come under scrutiny from others, but don't be the commission that approved offshore wind to the detriment of the state and all future generations. Don't industrialize the ocean and all our beautiful coastlines and small ports and harbors." Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'm gonna call names that, um, we weren't able to find in the Zoom meeting. If I call your name, please raise your hand. Dee Swanheiser, David J. DePinto, Michael Walczek, Jennifer Parker, Erica Bernal. Again, those names are Dee Swanheiser, David J. DePinto, Michael Walczek, Jennifer Parker, Erica Bernal. If you've heard your name, and, uh, raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. All right, I'm seeing no hands raised. Chair Cummings.
All right, thank you very much. Um, we move on to consent calendar. I don't see any items on consent calendar for today, which moves us to item number six, consent calendar items removed from the regular agenda. Turn it back to staff for an overview on that item again.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Yes, as I described earlier, we have one item that's been moved to consent today. That's item number 13A. That's the City of Capitola LCP amendment for a series of implementation plan changes, including a number of zoning code changes. I note we received several objections regarding one site in particular, which is having an overlay removed. Uh, those objectors are essentially arguing against a future multifamily housing project that might occur there, but we note that sites already designated for multifamily housing and the change is more administrative than anything else. It doesn't actually affect what can be built there because it remains multifamily housing with the amendment. Uh, so we continue to recommend the commission approve this item on the consent calendar.
Thank you very much. All right, any expertes? Seeing none, any members of the public sign to speak on this item?
I know, we just have one available for questions.
Okay. Um, I'll bring it back to the commission. Uh, is there a member of the commission who'd like to move this item?
I'll move consent.
Do it second?
Second.
All right, so a motion by Wilson, second by Harmon, the maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. Um, I guess we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nadoff?
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. That moves us on to our next item, which is our enforcement report. So I'll turn it over to Miss Hagee to give us a report on enforcement items.
Thank you so much, Chair and Commissioners. First, I wanted to provide a quick response to the public comment yesterday regarding public access OTD in Santa Barbara County. This is the same matter that the commission last month asked for a report back, so I wanted to let you know that enforcement staff has looked into the matter further. We confirmed that the OTD easement had not been recorded as required by the CDP issued by the county and have therefore written the county to ask for information regarding any efforts that they have taken to address it. Our letter also noted that there was unpermitted development occurring on the bridge area, as mentioned in public comment as well. We asked the county for information on their directions to the owner regarding both of these matters and for information on the county's plans to open the easement. We ask for a response by the end of this month and will continue to monitor the matter. So moving on, I wanted to note, unless there are any comments on that, I wanted to note that as part of our efforts to keep the commission and public informed on work done by enforcement staff, today we'd like to briefly report on the great progress made in implementing the consent agreement reached with Paradise Point Resort in Mission Bay in San Diego. As you may remember, we brought this agreement to you for your consideration in September 2023 to address public access and water quality issues at the resort. And since then, I'm thrilled to say much progress has been made in implementing the measures from the agreement you approved. Today's presentation will be given by Headquarters Enforcement Attorney, Rob Modamuck.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and members of the commission. Oh, uh, Chris, could you put the slides up for this one? Thank you. Thanks so much. On this slide, you can see a newly installed sign correctly stating that this beach is open to the public. This sign was installed pursuant to a consent cease and desist order and consent administrative penalty that the commission issued to Paradise Point Resort at the September hearing in 2023. I will be showing you many more photos, but first I will begin by providing some background on the coastal act violations that were at issue in this case. Next slide, please. Respondent's leasehold is located in Mission Bay where the yellow star is, which is north of San Diego Bay, as you can see on this map of the region. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see an overview of the bay itself. Starting clockwise from the top, you can see Camp Land, which was the subject of a similar commission enforcement action a few years ago. At the bottom of the image, you can see Sea World and towards the center, you can see the gold star where Paradise Point is located on Vacation Isle. Next slide, please. This map shows the boundaries of Respondent's Resort on Vacation Isle. The resort is located within the white outline and takes up a bit of over 50 acres of the island. The remaining approximately 75 acres of the island are occupied by public parks, beaches, and parking lots. Next slide, please. Here are some photos of the public parks surrounding Respondent's leasehold. People come here to picnic, swim, fish, and use the beach fire pits that you can see in the photo on the right. Next slide, please. We're now going to provide a recap of some of the history of the area. On this map from 1857, you can see what is now Mission Bay was once a large expanse of tidal wetlands. Uh, Vacation Isle is now an artificial island that was created during the dredging of these wetlands during the early 20th century. Although Vacation Isle and other parts of Mission Bay are now dry land, because they were originally below the high tide line, they remain public trust tidelands. Next slide, please. In 1945, the state of California allowed the city of San Diego to manage the public trust lands in much of Mission Bay. The state, however, also, quote, "reserved the people of the state of California the absolute right to fish in the waters of Mission Bay with the right of convenient access to such waters," unquote. Therefore, no leases issued by the city can restrict the public's right to fish and conveniently access the shoreline in Mission Bay and no lessie can restrict this public access. Next slide, please. In 1964, the city first leased the public trust tidelands at issue here to what was then called Vacation Village Hotel. Over the years, prior leaseholders obtained several CDPs from the commission for resort expansions. The CDPs issued by the commission protected and enhanced public access, including by requiring the resort to provide public pathways and free public parking. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see an aerial view of the resort and adjacent beaches. At the top left, you can see a green star that shows the location of a city-operated public parking lot and public restrooms next to North Cove, which is the beach outlined in green adjacent to the resort. The city had installed many signs that explained that the green stretch of shoreline is public, so that area had long been popular. However, the yellow line shows there's a lot more beach area next to the resort than just North Cove, but there used to be no public access signs there at all. Further, no signs were ever required at the entrances to the resort. In addition, no public restrooms or other amenities existed near those beaches, so even if you knew it was public and made your way there, you would not find it very inviting. The fact that only paying guests could easily access the yellow shoreline created an environmental injustice. Next slide, please. On September 6th, 2023, the commission approved a consensual resolution that we believe provides over $3 million in value. Respondent agreed to remove unpermitted development, as we will show you photos of shortly, and to comply with their permits and the approved orders. Respondent also agreed to provide over 100 new public access signs and two new vertical public access ways to lease tidelands. In addition, they agreed to provide new public amenities such as restrooms located conveniently near the beach as well as EV chargers. Respondent also agreed to implement a marine debris reduction program for the resort. In addition, respondent agreed to make a $1 million payment to the violation remediation account and to provide a $500,000 environmental justice program. We believe that together this all provides over $3 million in value to the public. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see a letter we wrote to the state coastal conservancy when we mailed the check for $1 million to them. Paradise Point paid the monetary penalty within 30 days as required. Next slide, please. And here you can see a map of the well over 100 public access related signs that Paradise Point has now installed across the 50 acre resort. We'll show you, um, photos of many of them soon. Next slide, please. Now we will see some photos of the implementation of these orders. In the photo on the left, you can see that respondent had stationed an unpermitted guard station at the main entrance to the resort. Such guards made the entrance appear private and so deterred public use. In the photo on the right, you can see that the guard station has now been removed. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see how the main entrance signs used to look. On the right, the sign states that North Cove is a public beach. However, the top sign simply states Paradise Point Resort, which appears to imply that the resort does not include a public beach, which would be incorrect. In the background on the left, you can see another Paradise Point sign that again provided no hint that both public beaches and public parking existed at the resort. Next slide, please. On this slide, uh, the arrow is pointing to a sign that respondent has now added that explains that the beaches at Paradise Point are public and that free public parking is available. Next slide, please. Here's another sign added to one of their entrance signs that again clarifies that the beach is public and that free public parking exists there. Next slide, please. Now we're going to talk about the south entrance to the resort. In the left photo, you can see that it used to be fenced off. On the right, you can see that respondent has since removed the fence, which allows the public to easily walk or drive in. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see a new sign that advertises the public amenities at the resort nearby. Many people walk along this inland sidewalk through an adjacent park, but have not realized they could also walk into the resort and enjoy the bay shoreline there. Until now. Next slide, please. Uh, in this photo, you can see a coastal access pathway that's now accessible to the public. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see another part of the fence along the southern resort boundary. On the left, you can see that the fence blocked public access for persons walking along the shoreline. On the right, you can see that respondent has now removed the fence and cleared a path. Next slide, please. Respondent was also required to create a continuous public pathway along the shoreline. Here's one of many new signs that respondent has installed to indicate that the path is public. Next slide, please. In the left image, you can see a red line, uh, demarcating the public pathway and how respondent had formerly blocked it with private dining furniture. On the right, you can see that the unpermitted furniture is no longer blocking the public access way and that respondent has installed a public access sign in a temporary painted blue line. Respondent is applying for a CDP that includes plans to install a railing or similar device to ensure that the walkway remains unobstructed. Next slide, please. Respondent has also installed public access signs that let the public know that they can enjoy the views from this scenic fishing pier. Next slide, please. Respondent has also installed many new public access information signs that provide a map of the resort and of the public amenities, as you can see here. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see an interpretive sign about native birds that respondent has installed. Interpretive signs are a public amenity that also makes the public feel more welcome. Next slide, please. In addition, respondent has installed many new signs stating that the beaches fronting the resort are open to the public, as you can see here. There did not used to be any signs welcoming the public and so few members of the public ever visited. Next slide, please. So another slide showing a new access sign, this one at North Cove Beach. Next slide, please. Uh, respondent also installed many new signs stating that the marina is open to the public and that fishing is allowed there and that the public can rent watercraft there. Respondent is also required to rebuild this marina to be ADA friendly and to include a lift to allow people with disabilities to enjoy sailing and respondent currently has a pending CDP application to do so. Next slide, please. Here's another photo of some of the violations. Respondent physically obstructed many of the public parking spaces with dumpsters. Uh, next slide, please. On the left, you can see another violation, which was an unpermitted private event tent that respondent blocked public parking spaces with. On the right, you can see that respondent has removed the unpermitted physical obstructions. Next slide, please. And on this side, you can see that install, uh, respondent has now installed many new public parking signs within the lots. Next slide, please. Respondent also agreed to undertake more mitigation for the violations by implementing a marine debris reduction plan, which they have done. They have posted signs restricted smoking around the resort and have also taken steps to minimize plastic usage at the restaurants. They've also installed water bottle refill stations around the resort to minimize use of single-use plastics. Next slide, please. Uh, you may also remember that respondent agreed to undertake a program to further environmental justice by bringing students and families for free stays at the resort where the students undertake science education and the families enjoy a coastal vacation. Commission staff has been working with respondent on this program and has recently approved it and we will report back to you once we have an update on its implementation. Next slide, please. And on this slide, you can see some of the new public electric vehicle chargers that respondent has installed. Respondent is now providing over two dozen EV chargers to the public. This is especially important because there are very few public chargers in the Mission Bay, uh, area. Next slide, please. Now we're going to conclude by discussing some of the environmental issues that respondent is addressing via the consent orders. One issue is that many of respondent's dumpsters were uncovered, as you can see here. At the top of the photo in the bottom left, you can see a native bird, the black-crowned night heron, which regularly foraged on trash that is not healthy for them. Next slide, please. Respondent agreed to cover the dumpsters and has now installed new ones that don't allow animals to enter. Uh, next slide, please. And on this slide, you can see an unpermitted pump and pump house. Respondent used this to pump water from the bay into an artificial bond, pond built prior to the coastal act that they called a lagoon. We knew that pumps without fish screens can trap and kill fish eggs and other marine organisms, but we were unsure about the environmental effects of the artificial lagoon itself. Next slide, please. Here on the left, you can see the artificial lagoon. It's full of bay water and stocked with fish. It also has a lot of algae in it, as you can see at the bottom of the photo. On the right, you can see where the water from the artificial lagoon is flowing on its way to being discharged onto the beach and then into the bay. As mitigation for the pumping violations, respondent agreed to do a study of the artificial lagoon system and its effects on the water quality and native species of Mission Bay. Following the study, respondent was required to make recommendations for how to make the artificial lagoon system more environmentally friendly. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see a native black-crowned night heron next to the artificial lagoon. We learned from the study that every few weeks, buckets of baitfish are thrown into the lagoon as food for the larger fish that respondent has stocked there. These native birds are relying on the baitfish for food in an unnatural way, similarly to how they had depended on the dumpsters for food before they recovered. Next slide, please. In this photo, you can see a map of the artificial lagoon baywater pumping and discharge system, which, as you can see, extends across much of the 50 acre resort. The study showed that surprisingly to us, the bay water is not just used for the artificial lagoon you just saw photos of and which is visible at the bottom left of this map. The water is also pumped around the resort into a series of small artificial ponds, which can be seen on the right side of this map. Once in those ponds, the water becomes stagnant and warm and also picks up more algae. Note on the top right of the map that this water is then discharged into North Cove, which we will see now. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see a photo of North Cove, which is a very popular swimming beach. The arrow is pointing towards a drain pipe that discharges the water from the artificial lagoon and pond system. North Cove has a history of water quality problems for various reasons, so it's important to ensure that the water here is as clean as possible. Next slide, please. And here's a close-up photo of the drain pipe. The water being discharged from the artificial lagoon and pond system does not always meet water quality standards. Respondent study found that the water sometimes had exceedances for depleted dissolved oxygen levels, unnatural pH levels, and elevated ammonia levels. Next slide, please. Um, here you can see one of respondent's ponds at the center of the resort that uses freshwater and does not require pumping from or discharging into Mission Bay. We're pleased to let you know that respondent is currently planning to convert their, their very large artificial lagoon system into a closed system that does not use bay water and does not discharge water into Mission Bay, similarly to the freshwater pond at the resort that you can see here. The new lagoon system will also not require dumping buckets of baitfish into it that attract native herons. We really appreciate respondent's willingness to do the right thing for water quality and native species of Mission Bay. We also want to point out that this issue helps illustrate how important it is to take a really comprehensive look at sites like this. Next slide, please. And on our last slide, you can see a photo from the 1990s of Paradise Point. The edge of North Cove can be seen on the left, but most of the beach in the frame remains relatively unknown to the public. We want to thank respondent for agreeing to a resolution that has finally changed this. There is still work to do, including installation of a public restroom and replacement of the marina with a new ADA-equipped marina, uh, that will come to you in a CDP hearing soon. However, as you saw today, respondent is well on their way towards carrying out the greatest improvement in public access in the 60-year greatest improvement in public access in the 60-year history of these least-public-trust tidelands and we're very appreciative of their work thus far. That concludes my presentation and we're available for questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have three people signed up to speak. We'll start with Pamela Hetherington and then Mitch Silverstein. Give us a second as you're being promoted and as panelists. And then Pamela, when you're able to, please unmute and begin. Hi Pamela, I see that you're unmuted. You can go ahead. All right, I'm going to move on to Mitch Silverstein. Pamela, I'm going to bump you back to attendee mode and then see if you can unmute as an attendee instead. Mitch Silverstein, go ahead.
Thank you. Mitch Silverstein, Senior San Diego Policy Coordinator at the Surf Rider Foundation. Wow, that is such a huge victory for public beach access for all San Diegans and visitors. On behalf of Surf Rider Foundation and especially our San Diego County chapters, 4,000-plus members, I'd just like to thank the Commission Enforcement Division for addressing this longstanding injustice to equitable beach access in Mission Bay. With all the attacks on the Commission lately, from those who frankly don't understand how you protect our coast and our access to it, this success story really underscores the critical safeguards that you provide to the beach-going public. In addition to the clear beach access improvements, public amenities, environmental justice program, and water quality improvements, I also want to acknowledge coastal staff for the plastic reduction programs they're requiring hotels who violate the Coastal Act to implement. This is something that's really important to our volunteers locally. We have multiple programs, you know, with dozens of volunteers and a public that really just sees, you know, we conduct over 200 beach cleanups a year in San Diego County alone and over 80% of what we find is single-use plastic. So this is just becoming a larger and larger issue and I really think it's hugely important that the Coastal Commission and that the Coastal Act and its mission to protect coastal resources really requires special conditions for those who profit and benefit from being on the coast. You know, it's a special place that we love and special rules need to apply and that, you know, whether it's a hotel, a road, a house, whatever it is, these rules should apply. So really just want to thank this comprehensive suite of enforcement actions. And also, I want to acknowledge Paradise Point for their willingness to make all these changes and make things right. So if anyone from Paradise Point is listening, thanks for being willing to do this and keep working with the Commission to make this right. Thanks to all involved.
Thank you. Next is Pamela Hetherington. I see you're on two devices now. You should be able to unmute and speak.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I had to switch computers. Good morning, Chair Cummings and esteemed commissioners. I am Pam Hetherington from the Environmental Center of San Diego. Let me begin by thanking you and your staff for your steadfast protection of the public's right to the coast. Today, I want to thank the Commission and staff for the progress being made at Paradise Point. Staff has been diligent in overseeing the many requirements dictated in the settlement. The charging stations are in, there's signage so you can't get lost and you know where the coast is, you can now walk along the coastline at the southern end. Concerning the likely entrainment caused by the pumping activity of drawing water from the bay and then releasing the fouled water back into the bay, we're pleased that this will go away. But we ask that this new configuration of a freshwater pond be monitored going forward. Does the punishment fit the crime of years of blocked or obfuscated coastal access? The settlement negotiated by the Commission will go a long way to put other lessees that have the privilege of doing business in the public's tidelands on notice that they too will be scrutinized for violations. Until the state can help monitor these public tidelands, it will be left up to the educated citizenry to work with the Commission in identifying those trying to privatize the public tidelands. Thank you for all you do for all of us.
Thank you. And we had one name we weren't able to find, Andy Naraway. Andy, if you're in the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand. And then I'll also note that we have Ted Harris from Paradise Point Resort online and available for questions as well. I'm not seeing a raised hand from Andy. Chair Cummings.
All right, thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the Commission for comments. Start with Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Chair. By the way, fantastic work. I love the work that you've done, Ms. Hagie, Mr. Marmog and your staff. I think I mentioned this at previous meetings, that I'm about five miles from where this location is and for years my wife and I had visited. I think it was 2019, I got on the Commission and we were going there one day and they had put a guard shack up outside by the street and made it look like very private. And my wife, I said, "What is going on here?" And at this point, you guys had already started. I said, "Don't worry, the Commission staff's on it." So we, you know, it's, I've, and sort of strangely, maybe ironically, that large tent that's taken down, I mean, people have to understand the size of it. It was a huge event space and I attended an event there, quite ironically, hosted by the California Stillwater Quality Association, who probably did not know that it was, you know, not supposed to be there. So I echo, you know, the folks from Surf Rider and others that the sign is much improved. Just huge kudos to you and I promise to do my part, continue to check up that they keep doing this. And I have just one quick question. I think it was you mentioned that the penalty funds went to the Conservancy, is that right? And while I love the work they do, I, you know, I wonder, is their mechanism allows some of that funding to come back to our enforcement staff to continue in the great work that you all are doing? So by the way, thanks and I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley to the Chair. The money did go to the Violation Remediation Account and that is administered by the Coastal Conservancy. The one good thing I will say is that we have an MOU with them and we do work with them to find good projects to be funded. It doesn't come to us directly, but it goes to fund other projects such as, you know, acquiring property and doing restorations. So it's positive and I'm, please feel free to report any issues to us.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? Seeing none, just again, want to thank you all for this amazing work, these stories. I wish they were told more broadly and we do our best to try to convey them and I know that I'll continue to try to make sure that people are aware of the amazing work that Coastal Commission is doing and the enforcement team is doing to really make sure that our coast is accessible for all and we're doing our best to protect our environment. So, but just goes to show the amazing work you all do and we'll continue to keep fighting to keep our coast public and protect our environment. So thank you.
Thank you.
And so with that, let's go ahead and move on. Next item on our agenda, North Central Coast District Deputy Director's Report. I'll turn it back over to Dan Carl for the presentation on this item.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Yes, we're reporting two emergency coastal permits in the North Central Coast District Directors' Report. These don't actually require Commission concurrence, so unless there are any questions about them, we can move on to the next item.
Any questions from commissioners? Seeing none, let's move on to the item of the day. Item number nine A.
This will take us a second to get some.
Okay, yeah, okay, well, let's take five minutes.
Thanks.
All right, everybody, let's rock and roll. Okay, so next item on our agenda is, I think, an item that many of you are here for. So let's get this moving so we can hopefully get through the item before lunch. The next item on our agenda is item number nine A, City of Pacifica LCP Amendment Number LCP-2-PAC-23-0056-3, City of Pacifica Land Use Plan Update. I'll turn it to staff for a presentation on this item.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to be kicking off the staff presentation for today. And again, for everyone, this is item 9A, a comprehensive update to the City of Pacifica's LCP land use plan. So before I turn it over to the rest of the team to dive into the item, I wanted to provide a little bit of context. As you are all very well aware, sea level rise is an existential threat to our coast. Our beaches will disappear if we do not change how we live, work, and play on our coastline. And can you imagine that? A California without beaches. If we want to avoid that future, we need to get serious about planning for the future that we do want. But how do we do this? Many of the shoreline management strategies and approaches that we have employed were developed before we understood how sea level rise would affect our beaches and bluffs. Most local governments are operating under LCPs that don't even acknowledge the biggest threat to our shoreline currently faces. Thankfully, Senate Bill 272, introduced by Senator John Laird and signed into law in 2023, will change that by requiring all local governments to update their LCPs to address sea level rise by 2034. But up until this point, we have largely focused on our regulatory tools to address hazards and sea level rise on a parcel-by-parcel basis, as development is proposed. But as I spoke about at the Local Government Working Group workshop last September, this approach is not working. The scale of the resources we are protecting are much larger than a parcel. And if we are only focused at the parcel scale, we will wind up with a patchwork that does not achieve the goals of the Coastal Act. Also, a parcel-by-parcel approach amplifies the voices of the privileged, those with the resources to own property on the coast. If we are serious about centering the voices and perspectives of EJ communities and those who do not have the benefit of living on the coast, we need to take a broader perspective on planning and adaptation of our coastline. And as we have heard from our local government partners, this focus on the parcel-by-parcel approach has been a huge hurdle to moving LCP planning forward. At the workshop in September, we talked about how the neighborhood scale approach is an attempt to break through that LCP logjam so that we can ensure that the beaches, coastal resources, and communities that make California unique are around into the future. Today's LCP amendment represents our first foray into the actual implementation of the neighborhood scale. As we explained in September and you'll hear about today, there is no one-size-fits-all solution. Each coastal community presents a unique set of conditions, challenges, and opportunities and must be considered on a case-by-case basis. As you will hear, we have worked closely with the city over the last several years as they have grappled with their community over how to address the very real threats to public infrastructure and private development while at the same time addressing the community needs and legal requirements to ensure Pacifica's beaches, coastal environments, and coastal environments are resilient and public access is maximized into the future. The scope and scale of that challenge here in Pacifica, but also for the rest of our coastal communities, is daunting. And if we are to be successful, we need to work in partnership with local governments to develop solutions that are forward-thinking and achievable. Staff firmly believes that the LCP update that is before you today is the first step in a multi-phased approach that will put Pacifica on the path of effective adaptation planning for the future. And let's be honest, the timing is a huge challenge here. Working with the community through this type of change takes time. We need to bring people along. And at the same time, we are already feeling the effects of climate change and have an ever-shrinking window to make the changes we need to make if we want to continue to enjoy our beaches into the future. And so phased and incremental approaches, like the one you'll see today, that are designed to constantly be evaluated, adapted to, added to, are likely our best path forward. We need a bridge to the future. Neighborhood scale concepts, like the one Pacifica is proposing today, provide a bridge to phasing and future adaptation that protects coastal resources and public access through that transition. I want to thank the city's staff and elected officials for their partnership as we have worked together to develop this approach. It is always hard to be the first one out of the gate and we feel strongly that it is time to move forward with this approach and staff recommends that you adopt this LCP amendment as submitted. So with that, I'm going to turn it over first to Kelsey Ducklow and then the rest of the team to get into the details of the Pacifica LCP update.
Thank you, Kate. You can go to the next slide, please. As Kate intro'd, Pacifica is working on a comprehensive update to its LCP, a significant component of which includes updates related to sea level rise. We will discuss the LCP in greater detail in just a moment, but I want to take this opportunity to discuss how this work fits into the broader statewide context on sea level rise planning. As many of you know, updating LCPs to address sea level rise has been a priority for the Commission for over a decade, yet certifying sea level rise LCP updates has continued to be a challenge. In 2019, a Coastal Commission and Local Government Working Group was formed to develop strategies to improve collaboration and communication between local governments and the Commission around these efforts. In 2020, the group released and the Commission adopted a joint statement on adaptation planning that includes a variety of shared goals and actions to support sea level rise and LCP planning. These include, among others, a need to allow for local flexibility while at the same time ensuring statewide consistency, a desire to develop and allow for innovative approaches, and a commitment to incremental, more routine, and phased LCP updates. As we will discuss in a moment, Pacifica's LCP contemplates and fulfills many of these key goals, in particular by setting up a phased approach to the LCP and committing to future LCP updates. Over the past several years, the Local Government Working Group has continued to advance these efforts, most notably by developing an approach it refers to as Neighborhood Scale Adaptation Planning. As those who were present for the Local Government Workshop on this topic last September may recall, Neighborhood Scale Planning in this context refers to the concept of identifying and developing adaptation strategies that are specific to defined areas or assets with shared characteristics and developing LCP policies to support and implement those strategies through a phased approach to adaptation. At the workshop in September, the group discussed a number of challenges facing both local governments and the Commission related to planning for sea level rise, as well as the opportunities that Neighborhood Scale Planning offers to help address some of these concerns. A common theme to those challenges is disagreements about the use and appropriateness of shoreline armoring in an adaptation strategy. Sea level rise planning to date has commonly been organized around general adaptation concepts and development of LCP policies that echo Coastal Act language, including strictly limiting the use of shoreline armoring. But this doesn't always reflect the varied nature of our shorelines, either across the state or within a single jurisdiction, and it doesn't always reflect the reality that multiple types of adaptation strategies, sometimes including armoring, will need to be implemented in different areas of coastal communities and at different times. Neighborhood scale planning leans into that concept and emphasizes developing adaptation strategies that are context-specific. To the extent that this might include armoring for certain defined areas, for example, as a means of buying time for more refined strategies, the planning approach would also need to include identifying how to appropriately limit use of armoring, plan for phasing, mitigate impacts, and ensure balanced protection of coastal resources across a jurisdiction and over time. Next slide. Importantly, there is consensus, including at the September workshop, that sea level rise LCP updates must include several key provisions, including the use of best available science, risk disclosures, policies informed by and reflective of vulnerability assessments and adaptation plans, policies that will ensure adaptation approaches and the LCP itself are updated over time, and particularly for LCP updates that implement Neighborhood Scale approaches, policies that ensure balanced protection of coastal resources through a mix of context-specific approaches such as prioritizing nature-based strategies, use of elevation, retreat, and non-armoring strategies, mitigation programs, and opportunities to support alternative means of public access to and along the coast. To be clear, planning for sea level rise is a difficult task. It will require compromises and there is no single best approach that will apply everywhere. Pacifica's proposed LUP offers just one approach that reflects the city's take on Neighborhood Scale Planning. Now I'll hand this off to Julian to describe the city's proposed LUP.
Thanks, Kelsey. I want to start first by providing some background information about the City of Pacifica. Pacifica, oh, sorry, you can go to the next slide as well. Pacifica is located about 10 miles south of San Francisco, along the San Mateo County coast side, with the sea limits outlined in green here on Slide 5. The city is a very popular recreational destination due to its beaches, open spaces, hiking trails, and well-known surf breaks and attracts visitors from all over the Bay Area. Next slide, please. The city's coastal zone boundary mostly tracks along the seaward side The city's coastal zone boundary mostly tracks along the seaward side of Highway 1, shown in red on the right on Slide 6, and encompasses residential neighborhoods, visitor-serving and commercial areas, significant open space and habitat areas, and popular beaches. As is not uncommon for an urban area, the city's built environment essentially extends to the shoreline, and about one-third of the city, including most of the shoreline fronted by heavily developed areas, is currently armored. The two images you see on the left of the slide depict the Beach Boulevard area in 1972 on top and in present day on bottom, illustrating the level of development that's occurred over the years and its proximity to the shore. What you also see, in addition to the development of the Pacifica Pier, is that the shoreline in present day is also completely armored, whereas it wasn't previously. Next slide, please. The city's proposed LUP update would replace the existing LUP, which was originally approved in 1980, and the new LUP contains updated provisions that incorporate best available science and reflect new information and approaches to coastal resource management that have been developed since the original certification. The LUP update process began at the local level in 2017 and was guided by Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment and Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan, both of which were funded through the Coastal Commission's LCP grant program. The process included a lengthy public outreach component, including many public meetings, and the creation of a dedicated Plan Pacifica website, all intended to elicit and maximize community input. The result of that effort, including significant collaboration between Commission and city staffs, is the proposed updated LUP before you today. Next slide, please. The LUP has a focus on new and updated provisions specifically related to climate change, coastal hazard resiliency and adaptation, conservation and protection of coastal ecosystems, fire resiliency, tribal and cultural resources, public recreational access opportunities, public views, and environmental justice. Simply put, the LUP represents a complete overhaul of the original 1980 document and addresses a range of pressing coastal issues. I'll now touch on a few of these areas to highlight the nature of the improvements being made. Next slide, please. In terms of ecosystems and habitats, the proposed LUP strikes a protective balance. Notable habitat protection policies include measures such as new funding mechanisms for creek maintenance, new prohibitions on development in wetlands, and expanded habitat protections, including updated buffer requirements and protections for rare and endangered species. Further, the proposed LUP ensures the protection of coastal waters and marine resources, including through participating in the countywide water pollution prevention program, instituting storm water management practices, and requiring green infrastructure and onsite erosion control for new development. Next slide, please. In terms of public recreational access, the proposed LUP includes enhanced coastal trail provisions with an overall objective of improving coastal access, including to best position the city as a visitor destination within the Greater Bay Area. The LUP helps to maximize public access through the planned construction of new beach access points, new viewing areas and parks, extending and creating new trails throughout the city, and conducting prescriptive right studies to determine additional opportunities for expanded access. The LUP also includes a series of provisions intended to protect public views, mainly through identifying and designating coastal view corridors along the shoreline and Highway 1, where views are required to be protected and enhanced, and by adding policies that require preserving views of hillsides and ridge lines to help maintain and enhance scenic resource values. Next slide, please. Additionally, the LUP has policies designed to protect tribal and cultural resources and incorporates the Commission's environmental justice policy. Some of the adopted environmental justice provisions include requiring the city to expand notification efforts to underrepresented communities outside of Pacifica for projects that are taking place in the coastal zone, and improving accessibility to public meetings. Moreover, environmental justice issues and considerations appear throughout the update, including in policies ensuring public beaches and parks in the coastal zone are free to access, maintaining low- and no-cost amenities, including public access parking, and limiting beach curfews. In terms of tribal resources, the proposed LUP includes a series of provisions that require the conservation of historic and cultural sites, requires coordination with local Native American tribes to protect recorded and unrecorded cultural and sacred sites, and to educate the community and developers about the connection between tribal history and environmental features that characterize the land. In many ways, the proposed LUP represents a greatly overhauled and modernized planning document with forward-looking policies and a range of improvements as compared to the existing LUP that is now nearly 50 years old. While there is consensus on many of these issues, the coastal hazards component of the update has been more controversial, and I'll now pass it over to Oceane, who will discuss that aspect of the proposal in greater detail. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Julian. The city of Pacifica, like many other coastal communities, experiences coastal hazards, including well-publicized episodes of erosion, such as what happened to the apartments here on Slide 12 that were red-tagged and later removed. In many ways, the proposed LUP update includes a number of model coastal hazards policies. It includes use of best available science, recorded risk disclosures for development in hazardous areas, siting and design criteria to minimize hazard risk without armoring, and criteria for addressing any allowed armoring, including mitigation requirements. In addition, the proposed LUP includes a redevelopment definition that reflects the Coastal Act and its implementing regulations, where redevelopment requires that structures be brought into conformity with the LCP, including in terms of siting development out of harm's way, where it does not rely on armoring. The proposed LUP also requires a shoreline monitoring program to measure beach, bluff, and shoreline trends, and requires that the city do additional and more refined adaptation planning on an every 10-year basis, including through required LCP amendments. Importantly, the proposed LUP recognizes the tension between protecting natural shorelines and beaches on one hand, and protecting development on the other. It explicitly commits the city to find ways to ensure that these priorities are balanced as they refine their adaptation plans over time, all while recognizing that the city's shoreline and beach areas are a huge part of the fabric of the community, as well as a key economic driver for its future. At a basic level, the proposed update includes a series of important coastal hazards provisions, including those that recognize that adaptation planning requires continual reassessment in order to best adapt. It also acknowledges that adaptation presents a series of difficult choices and trade-offs, and the city is committing to working through that at a finer scale moving forward. Next slide, please. In addition, and as Kelsey alluded to earlier in the presentation, the city is also proposing a form of Neighborhood Scale Adaptation Planning, where two areas of the city would have different prescriptions as it relates to coastal hazards than the rest of the city would. The city refers to these areas as Special Shoreline Resiliency Areas, or SSRAs, and this concept would only apply to the city's Beach Boulevard and Rockaway Beach areas, where the photo here on Slide 13 shows the northern portion of Beach Boulevard. The city determined that these two areas had shared and unique characteristics, where both areas are already armored, and that armoring primarily protects vital public infrastructure, including utilities, key public access facilities, and both areas lack significant sandy beach areas. In addition, both areas include assets that are both critical to the city's function and not easily relocated. Given this context, the SSRA approach focuses on the continued protection through armoring as an interim solution to protect public infrastructure, while also allowing the time for the city to refine its shoreline planning efforts over the next 20 years to determine a more comprehensive vision and adaptation pathway for the city's shoreline. Next slide, please. Slide 14 shows you the two SSRA areas in red as seen from above. At the top, the Beach Boulevard SSRA extends from the northern end of Beach Boulevard to its southern intersection with Clarendon Road. And, as you can see, there is a paved promenade which runs along the road in addition to the Pacifica Pier, which can be seen directly in the middle of the image, both of which provide coastal access that is popular with residents and visitors. At the bottom is the Rockaway Beach SSRA. Highway 1 can be seen at the top of the photo, and Rockaway Beach Avenue connects this area to the highway. The Rockaway Beach SSRA also includes public parking and a paved promenade that are popular visitor-serving areas. Together, these areas represent just over 10% of the city's shoreline. Next slide, please. In terms of what the SSRAs do, these provisions would allow the improvement, augmentation, and replacement of shoreline armoring in those areas, whether that armoring meets the Coastal Act tests for armoring or not. It's worth noting that regardless, any proposal for a new or redeveloped shoreline armoring device in the SSRAs would still need CDP authorization. The SSRAs would also allow public infrastructure and both public and private development just inland of it to rely on armoring to establish safety and stability, whether allowed by the Coastal Act or not. The proposed SSRA provisions would only become effective upon meeting certain milestones, and therefore would sunrise. They would also end, and therefore sunset, after 20 years, and they could be suspended if planning efforts are not making progress. Next slide, please. In terms of the sunrise and sunset provisions, the SSRAs are tied explicitly to two things: a coastal access and resilience program, and a shoreline adaptation program. In terms of the coastal access and resilience program, this is a required program for coordinated public access enhancement. It is designed to not only offset the impacts of any armoring projects, but to go beyond the typically required mitigation to provide additional public benefits. This would not only provide public access enhancements, but also could include other complementary measures, such as pursuing armoring removal, nature-based adaptation, beach nourishment, and acquisition and conservation of hazardous properties throughout the entire city shoreline. In terms of the shoreline adaptation program, this is a required program for refining adaptation pathways moving forward. It includes evaluating phased adaptation approaches, exploring alternatives to armoring, analyzing the ability of shoreline armoring to withstand coastal hazard conditions over time as sea levels rise, and maximizing natural shoreline processes, all while also addressing ways to ensure infrastructure and other assets are also preserved. Importantly, the SSRA provisions only become effective if implementation milestones associated with the two programs are met. What that means for the coastal access and resilience program is that first, a draft must be developed for the SSRAs to become effective; then, a final program must be added to the LCP within three years; and lastly, projects have to be implemented from the program every five years via a CDP. For the shoreline adaptation program, that means that first, a draft work program must be developed for the SSRAs to become effective; then, a draft program must be completed within eight years; and lastly, a final program must be added to the LCP within 10 years. For the SSRAs to start and for them to continue, specific criteria must be met; then, continuing requirements must also be met; and ultimately, the LCP is required to be amended and required projects are to be implemented. If that is not the case, then the executive director can suspend the SSRA provisions. In other words, the SSRA provisions are purposely limited in area, scope, duration, and applicability, and are dependent upon enhanced public recreational access amenities and more refined adaptation planning, all of which is intended to result in better long-term coastal resource outcomes. Next slide, please. While the Required Coastal Access and Resilience Program and Shoreline Adaptation Program should result in both tangible projects on the ground and better planning moving forward, the fact is that the SSRA provisions are not consistent with the Coastal Act. This is because they allow for armoring and all of its associated impacts, when that armoring would not necessarily be allowed by the Coastal Act. Normally, such an inconsistency would require denial, but in this case, denial would leave vital public infrastructure incredibly vulnerable, which could fail and have negative water quality and marine resource impacts that are also not allowed by the Coastal Act. In other words, there is a Coastal Act conflict that must be resolved as to whether approval or denial is required, and the Coastal Act process to determine this choice is by concluding which action is the most protective of significant coastal resources. Here, staff believe that the better case is made for approval. Where allowing for important public infrastructure to be protected via the proposed SSRA provisions would be, on balance, most protective of significant coastal resources. Staff makes that determination based on a range of inputs, as are described in more detail in the Conflict Resolution section of the staff report. One important aspect is the overall sum of the proposed LUP update, including the fact that it represents a significant step forward not only for coastal resource protection overall, but also specifically for the city's shoreline planning and adaptation efforts. It also reflects an attempt to plan more regionally, as opposed to what can happen in a vacuum, where planning tends to be implemented on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And, to be clear, the SSRA provisions are temporary. The structure of the proposed LCP is that more refined shoreline planning is required, including for these areas, and the intent is that better adaptation pathways can be developed, not only for the SSRAs, but for the entire city, all of which are required to be implemented for the SSRA provisions to be effective and in order to find the city's proper balance between protecting natural shoreline and beaches and protecting community assets. Next slide, please. In making this recommendation, staff notes that there are no one-size-fits-all solutions, and trade-offs might be evaluated differently in different contexts to ensure protection of beaches and other coastal resources now and into the future. And, that should be the point of LCP planning, where it is really meant to be an application of the Coastal Act to the local context. This proposal could represent the first of what is expected to be other LCP amendment applications, which provide clearly-developed Neighborhood Scale Adaptation Planning provisions, which in some cases may include focused areas where temporary armoring could be allowed even when the Coastal Act may direct otherwise. And, these amendments could also include provisions that facilitate natural processes by moving away from harm's way without armoring. On this point, staff notes that this type of flexibility is important, and these approaches allow local governments and the Commission to address the reality of existing and expected future coastal hazards as circumstances dictate. Providing for a range of approaches can also move sea level rise adaptation planning forward to protect coastal resources in communities that are already substantially developed to the shoreline edge, and in many cases, already heavily armored, like in Pacifica. Importantly, this is a practical planning approach that fully considers the feasibility of adaptation strategies, particularly the degree to which certain communities might be able to relocate development and/or rely on nature-based solutions rather than armoring. This is especially important in the short term and at a large scale, and where temporary bridges that can buy time towards longer and more refined solutions can help communities refine the right adaptation balances moving forward in phases. In closing, staff recommends that the Commission approve the proposed LUP update as submitted. The single motion to implement the staff recommendation is found on Page 6 of the staff report. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation on this item. I'd like to see if there's any expertises on this item. Seeing none, I...
It's on. Excuse me, I have an expertise on file.
And I also have an expertise, which is on file as well. And with that, I think we'll bring it open, well, sorry, we'll open the meeting up to the applicants, so if there's a representative from the city of Pacifica who'd like to speak to us on this item, if you have a presentation, we'll give you 10 minutes.
There are three folks that are going to be speaking, and I will start. Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. I'm Sue Beckmeyer, Mayor of the City of Pacifica.
Before you start, can we get the clock up?
I am honored to stand before you today on behalf of the Pacifica City Council, requesting that you accept coastal staff's recommendation to approve the Pacifica Coastal Land Use Plan as submitted. Taking this action would affirm the significant, focused, and collaborative work of Pacifica Community Development Staff and Commission District Staff, who worked together, most recently for almost 18 months, to integrate suggested modifications to the certification draft plan that Pacifica submitted to the Commission in January 2020. We are here today because of the cooperative, joint efforts of staff, and I am deeply grateful for their perseverance. As you've heard, Pacifica's local coastal program land use plan was originally approved in 1980. With only minor amendments over the intervening 45 years, that plan no longer is sufficient to address the challenging conditions we face in Pacifica: significant bluff erosion, impacts from intensifying weather events, flooding from storm surges, rising sea levels, and other effects of climate change. For more than a decade, Pacifica City Council has prioritized completing a plan update, but could not get traction. Reflecting on the sheer volume of inputs to our process, I can understand why. There were hundreds of hours of There were hundreds of hours of public meetings and study sessions, reams of staff and consultant reports, pages of comments from passionate and knowledgeable Pacifica residents, business owners, and property owners, and advocates for equal access, beaches, housing, recreation, and safeguards for sensitive habitats, and many more inputs. Today, you will hear a wide range of opinions about the bold plan that Pacifica has submitted for certification. There are policy provisions that neither city staff nor coastal staff were fully comfortable with in this process, and working together, it reflects the collaborative nature of this effort. The plan before you today provides a path forward by incorporating a phased approach to shoreline adaptation based on the framework developed by the Commission's Local Government Working Group. It is a truly collaborative effort for which we are deeply appreciative. And now, I would like to introduce Pacifica City Manager Kevin Woodhouse.
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, and Honorable Chair, Commissioners, Executive Director Hucklebridge, and Coastal Commission staff. I'm Kevin Woodhouse, Pacifica City Manager, and I am honored to be here before you today as you consider Pacifica's local coastal plan. The city has worked on this plan for more than a decade. As you know, coastal land use planning is incredibly complex in the balancing of values that need to be achieved in doing that. The city council and staff have listened to and considered input from members of the public, coastal advocacy groups, property rights groups, and other public agencies to try to balance all of the legal and practical considerations. Pacifica residents, as well as other stakeholder groups statewide, are understandably passionate about this issue, as they should be, for it invokes a tension that exists between private property rights and local and state regulations seeking to balance so many competing values. You will hear today public comments that express this passion, comments that seek an uncompromising solution one way or another for their particular interests. And I want you to know the City of Pacifica respects those passions. For this reason, as has been mentioned, an incredibly robust public engagement effort has been taken over recent years. And in the last year-plus, more than 11 significant community meetings have been taken. These meetings have engaged hundreds, if not thousands, of residents in tabletop discussions, public input opportunities, developed real-world case studies to explore realistic applications of the policies, implemented a rolling Q&amp;A portal, and refined the policies based on public input, all in collaboration with Coastal Commission staff and hyper-focused city council deliberations. The city also engaged with partner public agencies, such as our local North Coast County Water District, to consider their input regarding the importance of critical water infrastructure alongside the city's wastewater infrastructure and other utility infrastructure. The recommended LCP before you is a result of more public engagement on any single issue in the history of Pacifica. The recommendation is also, as you've heard, attributable to an unprecedented close collaboration between the city and Coastal Commission staff, a partnership through which we have been able to develop policies that strike a forward-thinking and prudent balance that adheres to the Coastal Act and serves the specific neighborhood variable needs of the Pacifica community. You've heard about the special shoreline resiliency areas and all of the obligations that the city will be held to in this plan. The city takes this obligation very seriously. Implementation of the required LCP actions is already designated by the city council in our strategic plan. In addition, the city has already partnered on a grant application with Stanford University for shoreline monitoring, and the city has been in communication with a local community group, which includes individuals with affiliations with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and Surf Rider Foundation about their efforts to explore the feasibility of an artificial reef to bring sand retention and surfing benefits to Pacifica's high-wave energy coastline. If the LC LUP is approved by the Coastal Commission, the city looks forward to partnering with the Coastal Commission and others on grant applications for this forward-thinking work. This modernized LCLUP and the many benefits it will bring for Pacifica's coastline is essential for Pacifica's future. Without it, we're left with a 45-year-old plan that is in no one's best interests. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to approve Pacifica's plan as submitted, and I'd like to turn it over to Community Development Director Samantha Updegrave.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. I'm Samantha Updegrave, Pacifica's Community Development Director, and it's an honor to be here before you today as you consider our local coastal plan, which your staff has recommended for approval as submitted. Next. As both the mayor and city manager spoke to you, this plan represents a critical update to this essential document that was originally produced 45 years ago. It's based on contemporary, best-available science, and the modernized plan addresses our most pressing coastal issues: climate action, coastal hazards, resiliency, adaptation, conservation, and natural resource protection. And it takes a phased approach to implementation to allow for intentional and detailed adaptation planning that responds to the unique characteristics of Pacifica's shorelines. Without these updates, we are left to rely on an outdated document that doesn't have these positive or forward-looking policies. Next. As Mr. Woodhouse noted, we have engaged for many years and with extensive discussion within the community. We originally filed for a certification draft in 2020, which we withdrew in 2023 after receiving comments from the Coastal Commission to ensure our compliance with the Coastal Act. And we did hold over 11 community meetings the following year. Next. Pacifica is committed to adaptation planning and action. One of our five strategic goals is to pursue climate adaptation and mitigation, and to meet this goal, the city is pursuing certification of the updated LUP, prioritizing its implementation, and continuing our collaboration with the Coastal Commission. Next. We already have some of this work underway, and I just wanted to highlight some key actions. So the city completed our vulnerability assessments last year, and we've started drafting updated coastal hazard mappings. And our next step after certification is to bring this amendment back to you, along with any necessary cleanup provisions. We're hoping to get a Civic Spark Fellow to initiate key implementation measures, which may include our zoning and development regulation updates, public engagement strategies, and identifying funding. We are also gearing up to initiate our coastal access and resilience program and shoreline adaptation program related to the SSRAs, and with the goal of submitting our first necessary milestones to the Commission within 12 to 18 months after certification. And next. And just in closing, I just wanted to share that as the new department director stepping into this very long-term project, I have been so impressed by the collaboration between city staff and Coastal Commission staff. It has been a real pleasure working with you all, and the fact that this plan is recommended for approval as submitted is a real testament to the strength of that working relationship and the rigor of this document. And I'll end it there. Thank you so much, Chair Cummings, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Okay, so as we move on to public comment, I just want to check to see if there's any elected officials in the room who would like to speak, or who have signed up to speak.
We don't have any signed up. We have some former elected officials, but they wish to speak as a general member of the public.
Okay. I did hear from Surf Rider as a group presentation. Do we have any other groups signed up for presentations?
We do have a tribal representative, which we should hear first, I think.
Okay. So why don't we start with Surf Rider, then we'll move on to tribal representative, and then we'll open up to general public comment.
Okay. Surf Rider presentation. We have Mandy Sackett, Kimberly Williams, Maeve Anderson, McKay Pelzer, and Staley Prom.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Cummings, Commissioners, staff. Mandy Sackett, California Policy Manager for the Surf Rider Foundation. So we're at a pivotal moment here. Adhering to the Coastal Act has never been more critical. Structures built during coastal development boom of the 1960s and 70s prior to the Coastal Act are in direct conflict with the reality of rising seas. How we resolve this conflict will determine whether California continues to protect our beaches or sacrifices them to become a coastline of seawalls. The Coastal Act does not allow new development to rely on shoreline armoring, full stop. But the city's proposed shorelines... special shoreline resiliency areas would do just that. This is not adaptation planning. It's a Coastal Act carve-out, and it locks in loss. The condition to limit SSRAs to 20 years is a false promise. When large-scale seawalls are built or rebuilt or reinforced, and the new development goes in behind it, long-term solutions like relocating out of harm's way will fall by the wayside and seawalls will remain. This LCP contains no serious vision for adaptive relocation or land use changes that reduce hazard exposure. Instead, it relies on the access program and the shoreline program that are meant to offset the damage, but in truth, it's giving away our leverage now with no guarantee of results later. There's no guarantee of meaningful public input into that process or assurance that it will result in anything close to being lost. Whether you're evaluating at the parcel level or the neighborhood level, you have to take an approach that is consistent with the Coastal Act. Staff keeps saying that the status quo is not working, but the solution should be to implement true forward-looking solutions, not encouraging SSRRA carve-outs. This plan is not a political... is not just a political compromise. It's a wholesale sacrifice of the public trust, and it sets a very dangerous precedent. So you'll hear from our chapter and our UCLA Environmental Law Clinic about how staff's reasoning for this Coastal Act conflicting policy should not go forward and is not legally sound. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. I'm Kimberly Williams, Policy Volunteer at the San Mateo County Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. I live here, I paddle here, I walk the beaches of Pacifica most weeks. I've been first... I've seen firsthand how armoring has already transformed our coast, how ugly riprap piles have swallowed the beach at Sharp Park, and how armoring at Rockaway can create dangerous situations, for example, for people circled in the red here on the slide who are cut off from the coastal access point as the tide is coming up. Next slide. This plan is personal for us. It's our backyard, and we're deeply concerned that Pacifica's LCP is setting us up for more of the same: more seawalls, more lost beaches, degraded waves, and fewer places for the public to connect with the coast. This slide shows a surfer at Rockaway Beach at a wave that could be in jeopardy as seas rise if we continue to rely on seawalls at this location. Next slide. The proposed SSRAs would allow entire neighborhoods to rely on shoreline armoring long into the future, including new development. Our chapter has repeatedly, over years, encouraged the city to engage in long-term planning that actually protects the coast. This current plan also doesn't do that. It avoids the hard conversations about gradually relocating, hazard-based setbacks, or other proactive strategies. And the idea that a future coastal access program will somehow fix the impacts down the road, there's no detail on this plan, no accountability, and no input from the public. The path established by this plan also comes with significant financial costs to the city and delays the real work ahead. Pacifica has a chance to leave, but not if we keep repeating the same actions the Coastal Act was designed to change. Our coast doesn't just belong to homeowners, and its value isn't just for development. It belongs to all of us, to everyone. We need the Coastal Commission to hold the line here and uphold the intent of the Coastal Act. Please don't approve a plan that trades our future and the future of our beaches for short-term development protections. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Maeve Anderson, and I am a student in the Frank G. Wells Environmental Law Clinic at UCLA School of Law, here on behalf of my client, Surf Rider Foundation. We respectfully disagree with the staff report's suggestion that the City of Pacifica's LC LUP be approved despite clear conflicts with the letter and intent of the Coastal Act. As the staff report properly concludes, the plan's special shoreline resilience areas, or SSRAs, clearly violate multiple provisions of the Coastal Act and contravene the legislator's purposeful limitation of shoreline armoring. Staff's initial straightforward assessment gets it right. This necessarily directs the plan's denial. But the staff report doesn't stop there. Instead, relying on an improper interpretation of the Coastal Act, it goes to great lengths to justify a path to approval. A Commission action to approve the plan would violate the Coastal Act and the Commission's duty to properly manage public trust resources. The Commission should not vote to approve. The staff report contends that the Coastal Act's conflict resolution provisions provide authority to approve the plan even though SSRAs on their face are inconsistent with the law's requirements. No such authority exists. First, there is no real conflict to be resolved here. The water quality and other impacts the report points to are wholly speculative. Even if there were a conflict, the Coastal Act requires it to be resolved in the manner most protective of coastal resources. Courts have consistently interpreted coastal resources to mean public-serving and typically natural resources. Here, considering coastal resources requires rejecting the city's plan. A holistic consideration of the plan's concrete harms to the significant coastal resources easily leads to the conclusion that the plan approval is not the most protective course. As the staff report acknowledges, the Coastal Act mandates the natural coastal resources be permanently protected against degradation. The report also details the many significant and unavoidable adverse impacts armoring has on these same resources, including diminishing public access and raising environmental justice concerns. These harms accrue immediately once armoring is in place. When weighed against the potential eventual risk of decreased water quality and access to marine resources or public access ways, there is only one conclusion: a plan most protective of coastal resources cannot allow SSRAs. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm McKay Pelzer, also a student with the UCLA Law Frank G. Wells Environmental Law Clinic, here on behalf of my client, Surf Rider Foundation. The Coastal Act simply does not allow the city to kick the can down the road on protecting coastal resources in favor of continued development. Surf Rider acknowledges some of the public infrastructure the SSRRA proposal highlights, but agrees with staff that emergency permits to protect it are Band-Aids. Increasing the size of the SSRRA Band-Aid won't solve the problem, especially when, as with the coastal trail, infrastructure can be moved inland. SSRAs can only provide a fleeting, false sense of security while preventing the very kind of long-term thoughtful planning an LCP is supposed to represent. And once the city is ready to plan, it will already be locked into a course of action that harms coastal resources and the public trust. Permitting armoring leads to more armoring much more often than it leads to the removal of armoring. SSRAs are not a temporary bridge. They are a choice that sets the city down a path to lose what beach it has left to preserve, and that ultimately leads to permanent armoring. Not only would approval of the city's plan violate the Coastal Act, but it would also be inconsistent with the public trust doctrine that is incorporated into both our public... our state constitution and the Act. The Commission must protect public trust land below the mean high-tide line for public use and enjoyment. California courts favor the public trust over private interests when it comes to armoring, and the State Supreme Court held that one of the most important public trust obligations is the preservation of tidelands in their natural state. Further, the high-tide line is an ambulatory boundary, meaning as the sea rises, newly submerged property will come to be located in this public trust. Armoring built on private land may protect the private property directly behind it, but tends to exacerbate erosion and does nothing to stop the sea and the mean high-tide line from rising. Approval of armoring that harms trust resources or comes to be located in the trust violates the Commission's public trust obligations. And approving the city's plan sets the Commission to take this legal risk by promoting SSRAs that may one day encroach on the public trust. This Commission should only approve a plan that abandons SSRAs and instead meaningfully plans for adaptation to sea level rise consistent with the Coastal Act and protection of public trust resources. This is the only legal path, and it is also the most practical. It requires the city to engage with the reality of sea level rise now, not 20 years from now. Our identity as a coastal state is core to California, and adapting to the realities of our changing coastline won't be easy, but this Commission is obligated to follow the law and protect the California coast for generations of Californians to come. This Commission should not approve Pacifica's revised LCLUP.
Hey, good morning. Can you all hear me? This is...
This is daily prompt from Surf Rider Foundation. We thought we had two additional minutes. Is it possible to reset the clock or can I go during general?
No, no, I actually reached out and sent an email saying that I would give you all 10 minutes, so we're going to stick to that. I'm sorry. Um, because we have a full room, we want to get through this as well, so.
Can I go during general public comment?
I don't believe you're going to be able to because you didn't sign up before the item, so. I think we got the point that Surf Rider was trying to make, so I appreciate you being here and we gave you all extra time and at this point, we need to move on.
And then we actually did find a elected official that was buried in the list earlier. Uh, we have Bruce Gibson on Zoom.
Okay.
Give us a second as we promote you as a panelist. And then following Bruce Gibson, uh, we have Kaylin McGee. Bruce Gibson, when you're able, please unmute.
There we go. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Bruce Gibson. I'm county supervisor in the county of San Luis Obispo and, uh, pleased and proud to have been a member of the Sea Level Rise Working Group since its inception in 2019. Your executive director and staff have done a great job outlining the ideas and the motivation behind the phased approach and the, um, and the neighborhood scale adaptation. I want to emphasize that these ideas have been very thoroughly and thoughtfully discussed over the last five and a half years and, and our progress has been presented to you in the workshops, uh, that most recently occurred in, in September of last year. I want to emphasize that our issue, our interest there is, is providing, um, action to get actual sea level rise adaptation in, in place. I want to emphasize that my speaking here today is not advocacy upon the specifics of the plan that Pacifica is putting forward in their LCP amendment, but I would urge your careful and thoughtful consideration of especially neighborhood scaled approaches and, uh, how they relate to phased approaches as you wrestle with the, uh, many competing interests that go into forming, uh, an LCP that actually, uh, has, uh, a good chance of dealing with the pressing issue of sea level rise as it goes forward. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Uh, Kaylin McGee.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. My name is Kaylin McGee. I am the facilitator for the local government working group, which includes elected officials from coastal jurisdictions, staff from jurisdictions and agencies, and experts. This group has been working on innovative approaches to adaptation plan.
Can I pause you for one second? Can we get the clock, can we get the clock up? There we go. All right, thank you.
Coastal jurisdictions are facing adaptation challenges now. There is currently no framework, funding, vision or mechanisms for widespread retreat. And as you've heard several times today, a piecemeal or parcel-by-parcel approach is actually a barrier to effective adaptation and coastal management. It results in the inconsistency of coastal development and management, impacts to resources and access, conflict litigation and delays, and opportunity costs where you don't get to protect your most valuable places. Therefore, the local government working group has been working on tools for adaptation that will lead to more effective and efficient LCP updates. This includes regional and phased approaches, uh, to protect beaches and access, to provide local flexibility while statewide consistency in the application of the Coastal Act, and again, to result in the successful updates of LCPs because otherwise were frozen in the past. Indeed, I was seven years old when this LCP was last passed and now I'm in my twenties. So the group, again, does not want to comment on the specifics of the Pacifica LCP update, but does want the, the commission strongly wants to encourage the commission to support innovative and approaches to adaptation and wants to emphasize that one-size-fits-all approaches in any direction with any intent are actually barriers to effective coastal management and progress. Thank you very much.
And we did have a tribal official.
Okay.
Catalina Gomez.
And I have a slide, please.
How much time do we need?
Portia Poohee. Greetings, good day. My name is Catalina Gomes. I am a Ramitish descendant and, next slide, please. I'm documented descendant from the village of Tmigtok along Calera Creek, which is currently located in Pacifica. The name Tmigtok is translated to the place of the whales, documenting our history for thousands of years of our interconnectiveness with this coastline. Next slide, please. This is a map that was done in 1909 indicating the shell mounds that are present in the San Francisco Bay at that time, indicating the presence of three shell mounds located within the area now known as Pacifica. Two of these shell mounds are in the coastal area and zone. This proves for thousands of years, our ancestors have been here, buried here. Our DNA is literally part of this coastline. Our interconnectiveness with this land and this sea and all the living things that exist here are historic. This is culturally sensitive area for us. This is sacred land. I don't feel that the City of Pacifica has sufficiently included my family's interest in developments here along the coast. It sounds really wonderful what was stated in the report, but in reality, I've been declined tribal consultation and, and it's a, a direct conflict with the city's own land acknowledgement. I am opposed to armoring the coast. It's a very short-sighted approach and, um, science proves that restoration of wetlands, marshes and dunes is the best solution to dealing with sea level rise. I feel there needs to be more work that hasn't happened. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And that was the last of our elected officials, I believe. We did have an agency group, the North Coast County Water District and the, as well as another group presentation from the Pedro Point Community Association.
Okay, so we'll, although those group presentations do move forward.
Okay. Uh, from the North Coast County Water District, we have Anne Dejarnat, Joshua Cosgrove and Adrienne Carr, I believe here in person.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair and members of the commission.
And real quick, how much time do we need? Six?
Yeah, I think that'll be fine.
Okay.
Two each, yes. Thank you very much for the time. Uh, my name is Joshua Cosgrove. I am on the Board of Directors.
If we can pause you for one second, can we get the clock up? There we go, awesome.
Thank you. My name is Joshua Cosgrove. I'm on the Board of Directors for the North Coast County Water District. We provide drinking water and, uh, water for fire suppression for the City of Pacifica and also for the Tomlantos tunnels, which I'm sure many of you, myself included, took to get to this meeting today. And, uh, much of our infrastructure and infrastructure for that tunnel, the fire suppression system for that tunnel, is in the coastal zone. And without that water, we would not be able to drive through that tunnel. We support the City of Pacifica's LCLUP. We support it, but we also request that you include a provision. And, uh, a little bit of background on, on that, during the process to develop the city's LCLUP, we, uh, were involved and, and we asked that provisions that were in the City of Hapun Bay's LCLUP, which was approved in 2020, we asked that provisions from there that dealt with critical infrastructure were included in Pacifica's plan. And most of those provisions were included except for one. And, and one was rejected and we went back with our land use attorneys and we came up with what we believe is good, uh, compromise language. So while we support the, the plan, we also ask that this be included, and I'll just read it, it's, it's a short sentence. Shoreline protection structures for critical public infrastructure may be allowed to the extent that they satisfy the applicable balancing tests set forth in the Coastal Act. So we respectfully ask that, that you include that provision, uh, along with the plan. And, uh, I'm going to conclude my presentation and, and pass it off, but thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners, supporters and guests. My name is Anne Dejarnat. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the North Coast County Water District. In Pacifica, our agency provides the water used by citizens there. Because our special district is more than 80 years old, we spend a great deal of time and creative energy focused on rebuilding and upgrading tanks, reservoirs, buildings and connections like pipelines, in addition to ensuring redundancy in securing sources of water for fire prevention. Since our district has 31 different pressure zones, as well as large areas of wildland residential interface, which may be especially vulnerable to fire, we are consistently attuned to the need to provide water as needed immediately. In general, the Board of Directors of the North Coast County Water District supports the City of Pacifica's local coastal land use plan. Although the city considers the few provisions about critical infrastructure adequate to protect the city, the Water District feels that the provisions could be inadequate to protect the vital and common infrastructure connecting sources of water to homes, buildings and land. The North Coast County Water District believes that the local coastal land use plan for Pacifica should expressly include references to the Coastal Act's balancing test, to which Inspector Cosgrove, pardon me, um, Member Cosgrove just cited, um, which the Coastal Commission could apply when critical public infrastructure is at risk. Specifically, the district requests that the following sentence be included in the City of Pacifica's LCLUP. Shoreline protection structures for critical public infrastructure may be allowed to the extent that they satisfy the applicable balancing test set forth in the Coastal Act. Thank you very much.
Good morning Commissioners and staff. My name is Adrienne Carr and I'm the General Manager of the North Coast County Water District, which serves potable water to the City of Pacifica's residences, businesses and community organizations. Our mission is to serve our customers by delivering a sufficient quantity of high-quality water in the most cost-effective, reliable and environmentally sensitive manner. The protection of essential and critical public infrastructure such as the water distribution systems from the effects of climate change, including sea level rise and coastal erosion, is vital to human health and safety. The district strongly supports the Coastal Commission's adoption of Pacifica's LCLUP, especially in light of the protective measures provided for in the SSRAs. For areas outside the SSRAs, the district does have concerns about protection of our critical water infrastructure, including fire hydrants and water supply pipelines that supply those fire hydrants and the pump stations, um, that are located in the coastal zone, including the one that provides fire protection to the Tomlantos Tunnel. The existing provisions in the Pacifica LUP require compliance with the Coastal Act, including the use of shoreline protection devices, which indirectly applies the balancing test. The application of this balancing test is implicitly included in the LCLUP, but the district would, uh, like the balancing test to be explicitly referenced in the plan. The district acknowledges it is within the Coastal Commission's discretion to apply the balancing test, which has become more important for critical public infrastructure built after 1976. In its Critical Infrastructure at Risk Guidance Document, the Coastal Commission recognizes that armoring may be allowed to protect critical infrastructure and may be a reasonable short-to-midterm strategy as long as it's consistent with the Coastal Act. Replacing and relocating critical infrastructure is extremely costly and can place an undue burden on rate pairs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, but before we continue after our next group, uh, we found another, uh, elected official representative, uh, for the San Mateo County Supervisor Ray Mueller's representative, Gina Koiny. She was here in person.
Good morning Commissioners, Chair Cummings, staff. I am Gina Koiny. I'm here on behalf of San Mateo County Supervisor Ray Mueller, who would have liked to be here today, but I'm happy to represent. His district represents the entirety of the coastline in San Mateo County from Pacifica down to the Santa Cruz border. On his behalf, I am expressing our support for the City of Pacifica's Local Coastal Program Amendment. This recommendation represents the culmination of years of coastal adaptation planning, significant community engagement and months of collaboration between both the City of Pacifica, Pacifica and Coastal Commission staff. It is a balanced approach to addressing the needs of residents and visitors, ensuring conservation of resources, preparing for wildfire and climate change hazards, as well as mitigating for a changing environmental landscape. It considers the complexities of the Coastal Act and land use planning, as well as balancing with the values that are in the Coastal Act. As we move forward, we urge you to continue to consider the Coastal Act's balancing test, which takes a measured approach to protect critical infrastructure, as has been mentioned, in the short to medium term, but also planning for long-term coastal erosion and sea level rise. Thank you all for your ongoing service. We look forward to continue to work with you and I hope you're enjoying your stay in San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for the other group presentation from the Pedro Point Community Association. We have Brian Ranero, Joanne Gold, Sherry Chan, Lila Ranero and Samuel Casillas. And we have your presentation ready.
How much time do we need?
Are we, um, going to each get three minutes or 10 minutes as a group?
Um, we can give you 10 minutes as a group, just to be fair.
And do you have our slides? Thank you and good morning Commissioners. I'm speaking today in my capacity as Vice President of the Pedro Point Community Association to urge you to reject the certification of Pacifica's LCLUP as submitted with its proposed land use change for the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site. Next slide. For context, the PPCA is a volunteer-run nonprofit representing all residents of Pedro Point for decades. Our mission focuses on building deep community ties through free events, outdoor activities and volunteerism. We represent a uniquely engaged, connected and informed neighborhood. Next slide. The PPCA has made it abundantly clear that local residents oppose a coastal residential mixed-use land use change in the Pedro Point field, yet city officials have falsely assured commission staff that there is broad-scale community support for this change. That is a blatant misrepresentation. Next slide. For years, our community has engaged in good faith with the city, providing volumes of public comment with expert-backed volen, environmental data pointing to serious sequo conflicts and foreseeable negative impacts of CRMU. Still, the city pushed this land use change with no credible justification. In a token gesture, they slightly reduced the total density allowed, as if putting any number of homes in harms way would be responsible planning. Next slide. So let me be clear, no amount of CRMU development on this site is safe or sequo compliant. However, an LIVC designation might conditionally be acceptable. The commission's own staff report acknowledges the biological constraints present, yet still endorses the proposed CRMU, saying sufficient measures are in place to protect coastal resources should development be proposed. But this is backwards. It is project-based decision-making in lieu of responsible land use planning. We unilaterally reject staff's thinking on this. We unilaterally reject staff's thinking on this. Next slide. Our next speakers will highlight the SEQA conflicts and known hazards for this site. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Sherry Chan. Whoa. I'm Secretary of the PPCA. So, thank you for being here. This commission is tasked with enforcing both the Coastal Act and SEQA by considering the baseline conditions as they exist before you approve this substantial upzoning. Next slide, please. Here on the right, you actually see a path of surfers crossing a well-traveled path to the beach, up and down solid wood and stairs. It is open and joyous because we believe that this commission, you, will continue to carry out Section 4, Article 10 of the California Constitution. It is maximum access and recreational opportunities for all people. This path is implemented in the existing plan as Access Point 18. The new plan erases public access and calls this a View Point 25 with no public access. This happens throughout the city's LCLUP. I stood here a year ago in this room, pointing this out, and thank you Surf Rider for supporting us in public comment, yet we are still asking here again for the commission to uphold this constitutional duty to ensure recreational access. We were inspired to hear about your awesome work at Paradise Point, but the point is you can shut down these access violations right now by rejecting the ratio of access points and illegal upzoning based on inadequate analysis. Next slide, please. We are absolutely disappointed to hear, learn the Coastal Act staff is backing down, backing the city's many inaccurate assessments of this site as recently as the addendum filed yesterday. And staff accept this lie that changing the land use plan from coastal recreational to residential mixed-use isn't drastically different. I don't know, maybe they both say coastal, but rubber stamping the city's change to put housing in a hazard zone locks us away from joy and towards a choice of privatization, what, oh, litigation and mitigation, creating a future SSRA for short-term development interest. Next slide, please. We recognize property rights are strong, but the archdiocese sold the swamp to its realtor in 1995. Calling it a wetlands, what it is, is not a taking. This is not new information, and the desire for profits does not supersede the reality of the ground and of the sea. Next slide, please. So in 2021, Coastal Commission biologist Lauren Garcia Garcia visited this adjacent site and filed a report over a planned development in the shopping center just to the right of this one. Commission staff appropriately reversed the city's approval of a residential mixed-use development to the right because it is an ESHA. Yet, on page 12 of the same, of the staff addendum, staff minimizes its own biologist in accepting the city's erroneous maps, stating that the figure includes a note that it is not exhaustive, it's only preliminary, and site-specific biological evaluations and field observations shall be required later. Working in partnership with local government doesn't mean minimizing your own role as staff or your own responsibility and the expertise that your staff has. I surely hope the Coastal Commission can be internally consistent with its own biologist, and I encourage you to not cede your authority and reject this land use change. Thank you. Lila?
Next slide. Our children and citizen scientists who are among the local residents have long documented the presence and complete lifecycle of the California red-legged frog in the waterway adjacent to the field, which was also documented and sent to the city by biologist Peter Bay. This is an inconvenient truth for any someone or entity wanting to change the land use to residential. The city of Pacifica appears to prefer to ignore the existing habitat. Next slide. But instead, the city went further than ignoring the data and actively attempted to remove the endangered species habitat from the surrounding freshwater waterway. Next slide, please. Additionally, the city has admitted all data from the CCC, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, historical data, and PPCA experts, and admits the wetland red-legged frog ESHA habitat in the field on their LUP maps in order to propose the change of land use to include residential development. Please, Coastal Commission members, this is not okay. We invite you to visit our community any day and see the frogs for yourselves. Next slide, please, and thank you.
Next slide, please. Our main concern continues to be mischaracterized by both the city and the Coastal Commission staff. It has always been the environmental hazards. The USGS map shows the flooding, but we don't need the USGS to tell us this. We see the field flooding since 1950. Next slide, please. We were shocked to learn the CCC staff believed that city conducted a groundwater study when no such study was conducted. When you look at the best available science, USGS data demonstrates shallow groundwater. But again, all you have to do is go down there and see the fact that water percolates all the time. Next slide, please. Yet, in one study the city does have, it shows coastal erosion and isn't even mentioned in the rezoning. Next slide. Now you can see by the overlay here, when we stack all the hazards and issues on top of each other, how we can, how can you allow this to be rezoned to residential? It was the next slide, actually. There you go. Thank you. All right.
You've seen that the city has attempted to physically destroy the habitat. When that failed, it then omitted the designation from the maps presented to the commission staff, but the record remains. This is a wetland documented in the commission maps and already identified the area as an ESHA by commission biologists. Despite a willful determination to ignore the myriad hazards, the facts remain. Commission staff is endorsing the change based on speculation of what a developer might do to mitigate these hazards as part of a development project. Frankly, it is not the job of the commission or the staff to be using project-based decision-making, desirable only to developers or the city. The commission needs to make a determination on land use, not what may be speculably possible when a development is proposed, nor is this a matter of compromising on the number of units placed into the field. Why should any one person's well-being be compromised for the sake of a development in this hazardous area? Logic tells us, please, next slide. Logic tells us the best land use for the field is conservation, at most, low-intensity visitor-serving. Next slide, please. As this is a decision on land use, the decision has to be made on the current state of the field, the facts, and the environmental conditions on the site. The field is a wetland, a documented ESHA site and home to the California red-legged frog. It floods regularly as it seeks to return to its condition as a coastal marsh. There are numerous foreseeable negative impacts in approving the land use change. To allow this land use change is to accept the inevitability that floods will damage homes, property, the environment, and put lives and livelihoods at risk. Given the history and the facts, it's simply not consociable to put people and the community at this level of risk. Let's please not look back on the decisions made here today with regret. Let's not look back thinking that this was our chance to avoid a disaster and we didn't take it. Please, you must not approve the city's proposed land use change for the Pedro Point field. Thank you.
I believe that concludes our group speakers. And the remaining speakers are speaking as individuals. We have a total of 36, 24 in person, and 12 on Zoom.
Okay, we'll give two minutes and we'll try to hopefully get through this by 1:00, but I think at 1:00 o'clock, we're going to take a break and break for lunch.
So with in-person speakers, we will start with Tiger Jazz Trolls Big Stick, followed by Cindy Abbott, and then Kimberly Fennell. Tiger Jazz.
Greetings, Chair, Honorable Commission and Staff. I am Tiger Jazz Trolls Big Stick of Pacifica, former council member and mayor. I love my community where I have lived the entirety of my 42 years on this earth. Personally, I have contributed my efforts to the process of creating this document in varying degrees and stages over the past seven years or so. Initially, passively as a mere spectator at a major meeting regarding sea level rise in 2018, I witnessed members of my community deeply concerned about their sense of home, be it house or planet, literally shouting at each other across a packed room not much smaller than this one. For me, that initial meeting provided a rude introduction to the realities of seeking balance in a town named for peace itself. In 2019, I was appointed to planning commission where I contributed at times in joint session with city council to creating the draft of what Coastal Commission almost deliberated upon in 2023. By then, I was serving as Mayor of Pacifica. Once we understood the feedback from your staff that invariably would have informed your judgment, we asked for a pause to further consider that feedback, which has led to the document before you today. I was mayor as we began the extremely intense last leg of the process reconciling your staff's feedback with the document the city had originally submitted. It truly was intense, as before our truly passionate community, we, as a council, with a fine tooth to comb strove to strike the right balance between all these and my community deeply concerned about their respective visions of home and how realistically it all fit within the necessities of following the Coastal Act. We took pains to make sure your staff was confident that we were fully compliant with the Coastal Act. This document as written enables us to protect our use of coastal resources and access, requires we further augment both, and not only allows, but necessitates the city of Pacifica to refocus from this update process we've been engaged in for over a decade to concentrating our efforts on doing the work to bring our coast side in alignment with the Coastal Act's vision. I deeply appreciate the extra and consistent staff time and resources that have been devoted to working tirelessly with city staff to dot every i and cross every t required to strike this delicate balance between my community and the Coastal Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cindy Abbott, Kimberly Fennell, and then Robina Runiels. Cindy Abbott.
I have a PowerPoint. I'll tell you when to next one. Good morning, Chair Cummings, Commissioners and staff. I'm Cindy Abbott, a 28-year resident of West Sharp Park. Last September, during the workshop with the local coastal cities working group on neighborhood scale adaptation, I was greatly relieved at the beginning of the presentation to hear staff note that it would not, was not the intention to take any action that would undermine the Coastal Act. Commissioner comments concurred. Next slide. Unfortunately, that's not what the staff recommendations have put forth about the special shoreline resiliency areas in two highly constrained areas bordered by Highway One and the Pacific Ocean. Next slide. Here's a close-up of West Sharp Park. The red line down the middle is Palmetto Avenue. Projections for sea level rise go halfway up from the ocean to Palmetto Avenue. Next slide. You can see where we previously had a sandy beach to help buffer wave intensity that also provided space for shorebirds and other creatures, and we had limited development minimizing risk. Next slide. SSRAs aren't a resiliency strategy, but a plan to develop new, non-coastal-dependent, intensified development in a coastal hazard zone. These are images from a city planning document on what they envisioned for Palmetto. Yesterday, we heard concern for individuals in the Seal Cove area where the earth is moving. People have lived there for decades when risks weren't known. Now, though, as the climate crisis escalates, we know the risks. Next slide. I remember the first time I came home in 2001 and Beach Boulevard at the end of my street was closed off. Since that time, the increasing intensity of storms and stronger waves have resulted in the end of the street being closed off every year and for multiple times. Next slide. The area is what FEMA terms as a coastal high-hazard area due to the wave intensity. Next slide. We need to develop a division for the coast of Pacifica, one that increases access to a natural shoreline, moves infrastructure away, and doesn't continue to intensify development rates between generations at risk. You've honored the coast for years, upholding the Peoples Act for decades. I trust you won't stop now. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Fennell, Robina Runiels, and Mary Ann Oesberg.
Good day to you, Commissioners. My name is Kimberly Finale. I'm a Pacifica resident. I was that scrappy little kid from South Laguna Beach who rode her skateboard barefoot down the hill and across the coast highway with her Australian shepherd nearly every day just to get to the beach as soon as possible. As a child, the ocean called to me. It was my safe space, a place to play, swim with my dog, body surf, then bury myself in the warm sand when the sun began to set, or when I got cold, sometimes laying there for hours, watching the surfers, or dreaming the day away. This was, of course, before you had to be wealthy to live in Laguna Beach. As a Pacifica resident, I find myself at the edge of our beautiful continent most days. I'm observing the daily changes in our coastline firsthand. The accelerating bluff erosion stands out as larger-than-life. The hardening of our shores nearby are crumbling, an unnatural force with undeniable rippling effects. Let us not set precedent by approving SSRAs or special resiliency areas. Our California coast is still for everyone, whether you have the money to live here or not. I am here to advocate for future generations of scrappy little kids like me that had no money and didn't even know it, thinking I was rich because I had the ocean. It belongs to all of us, as few things do. We must continue to preserve access for all by requiring the city of Pacifica to remove the special shoreline resiliency areas proposed by city staff. SSRAs create inequities between our neighborhoods and have the documented intention to place more people, including children, in hazard zones. We must begin pulling back infrastructure from the coastline, utilizing proactive planning for neighborhood scale, nature-based solutions, and a resilient strategy of adaptive relocation to preserve our beaches and access for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Robina Runiels, Mary Ann Oesberg, and then Mark Steckbart.
Hi, Robyn Runiels. I'm here on behalf of family, neighbors, and generations of Sharp Park residents who are concerned about the proposed local coastal plan. We've built our lives two blocks from the ocean, raised families, volunteered, paid taxes, and supported local programs that care for Pacifica's shoreline. Sharp Park is our forever home and the site of Fog Fest every September, but this plan threatens to make it unlivable. Designating our neighborhood as a flood inundation zone brings serious consequences, increased difficulty getting home insurance, loans for repairs, and the risk of property devaluation. These decisions don't just impact buildings, they impact people, livelihoods, and Pacifica's economy. Will this lead to climate redlining, disinvestment, and loss of essential services? What happens when people can't afford to maintain their homes or get insurance? This LCP offers no provisions, no protection for residents who have everything to lose. It favors, it favors retreat and the expansion of natural shoreline, but overlooks the lived reality of entire neighborhoods. If the goal is to preserve coastal access for all people, then preserving the communities who live along it must be part of the plan. The Sharp Park Pacific Plan offers a balanced solution, a stronger seawall, better access, better public access for all ages and abilities, and the promenade that would connect the golf course to the levee. The proposed SSRA only covers Beach Boulevard, leaving the Clarendon Gap, golf course, levee, and Fairway Park neighborhood unprotected. This, this makes the entire area vulnerable to flooding. If an SSRA is approved, it must extend to Maury Point to protect the ESHA and community. An offshore reef alone can't do that. Please support the future of Pacifica to adapt to climate challenges without erasing its people. We ask you to work with, not against, the communities to find solutions that protect their shoreline and home. Please don't turn us all into, our entire neighborhood into forced managed climate refugees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Ann Oesberg, Mark Steckbart, and Jennifer Belling. Mary Ann Oesberg.
Dear Commissioners, I am speaking today in support of the Pacifica's Local Coastal Land Use Plan, and I urge the commission to vote yes to approve it. Thank you to the Coastal Commission staff and Pacifica City Council and staff for spending countless hours coming up with a practical and common sense approach to armoring with respect to the SSRAs for Sharp Park, Pacifica, and Rockaway Beach. I currently run a second-generation family-owned property management business which includes three buildings, housing 33 tenants, five dogs, and 19 cats who call Sharp Park home. Pacifica is a unique coastal town and has some of the most affordable housing on the peninsula. Can you imagine a retired teacher, or a single mom, or a surfer who is about to open up his first business, a dog walker, multiple bartenders, a TSA worker, folks in the trades, young couples just starting out or pregnant, a firefighter, multiple 80-year, 80-plus-year-old retired seniors, and Section 8 tenants being able to live just within blocks of the Pacific Ocean, just a stone's throw away from Silicon Valley? They can, along with all of their cats and dogs. I keep my rents low and I provide housing for tenants that would be in the range of low to moderate income. And nothing warms my heart more than when I have a tenant that gives notice because they are on their way to buying their first home. My tenants live locally, shop locally, use public transportation, our roads, our utilities, pay the sales tax that helps support the city of Pacifica that is in desperate need of revenue. We are here every day, day in, day out, not just when the surf is good or the sun is shining. We have a housing crisis. Pacifica is mandated to build almost 1,900-plus units per the state housing element. Most of Pacifica's Most of Pacifica's affordable housing is in Sharp Park. Isn't it common sense that we protect it?
Thank you. Next is Mark Steckbart, Jennifer Belling, and then Deana Verbi. Mark Steckbart.
Thank you. I have written comments in your correspondence file. First thing I'd like to say is there's a problem with your policy at CR capital I 21E that says permit applications in the vulnerability zone have to waive any rights for shoreline protection. This is sort of the Donald Trump squeeze play on people exercising property rights, forced speech, and not doing things that are in their best interest. You should not put your name on this policy. You should revoke it. It's not constitutional. The second thing is, just briefly, for all the words Pacifica staff, Pacifica current and former mayors, and Coastal Commission staff put around this policy, nobody has said anything of the value and the worthiness of homeowner issues and homeowner rights. The least you all can do is treat homeowners of equal value to a sewer pipe. And you have a chance to fix this, because we have 1,000 people in our database in Pacifica that don't like anything you're doing. So, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jennifer Belling, Deana Verbi, and Pete Shoemaker.
Good morning, California Commissioners and Staff. I'm Jennifer Belling. It's an honor to be here today to speak to you about Pacifica's land use plan and the LUP. I am in support of the Commission approving and certifying Pacifica's LUP. I am a Pacifica resident, business owner, and property owner here in our small utopian city. My husband and I are thrilled to call Sharp Park our home and are proud to share this ocean-side experience with seven other families in our eight-unit apartment building and visitors who come from everywhere. We are all stewards of the Great Sea and thank the Coastal Commission for your important work to preserve the coast. I know the City Council staff, the City Council and the Pacifica staff and the Commission staff have worked very hard together to create this new LUP, and it took compromises from both sides. Approving this LUP, the first certified since 1980, is critical to moving forward, which we dearly need to do to address critical needs. The LUP is inclusive, and we look forward to continuing to pursue in a careful, thoughtful, scientific ensemble of solutions that consider all the stakeholders fairly and perform cost analysis on the various solution benefits, as well as costs to the city, and we can't afford solutions that diminish income. We thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up, we have Deana Verbi, Pete Shoemaker, and Jim Kramer.
Good morning. Deana Verbi from Pacifica. And I support a lot of this plan, but I am opposed to the SSRAs for all the verily articulate reasons that others have voiced. It just seems to me that this is a plan that says it wants to do one thing, but in fact would accomplish the opposite result by intensifying development in our most vulnerable hazardous coastal zones, by allowing new development for even non-coastal-dependent uses to rely on armoring, when we should be doing just the opposite. It sends the wrong message at the wrong time. I do appreciate the investment of time and resources and effort that went into this concept, but from our perspective, this was a largely staff-driven document. It was not developed at the direction of the City Council majority. It was dropped on all of us at a study session in December of 2023, and the universal reaction was bewilderment and anger, and that hasn't changed. If you've looked at the comments in your packet, the public response has been overwhelmingly in opposition. That hasn't changed. From a process standpoint, our planning commission never even had a chance to consider the SSRAs. They last looked at this document when it was the 2020 version. Two of the council members who voted to support this plan are no longer on our council. One sitting council member, Christine Bowles, voted against it for very well-stated reasons. One council member, Beer, was unsure and said she was voting for it just to move it along to the Coastal Commission to hear what you all had to say. So the speculative statement in your staff report that if you don't adopt SSRAs, the city will not approve it, is, I don't think, true. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Pete Shoemaker, Jim Kramer, and Lexi Mendoza. Jim Kramer.
Hello. Pete Shoemaker, a Pacifica resident for 38 years. I'm talking about specific provision. I want you to retain the Rockaway Quarry as an ADC, an area of deferred certification. Staff recommends otherwise. In a normal situation, that'd be a case for that, but this is not a normal situation, and that's crucial information. By the city manager's admission, Pacifica is about 30 staff members below the average for a city of its size. We're really understaffed, and you know that very well. And that's a big deal, particularly in the areas of planning and code certification. There's a lot of things coming at us, and we need your help. You're on our team right now. You have our back. We need you on the team. We need your backup. As you know, Pacifica is broke because of, we are primarily residences and residential areas. The low-density residential does not pay for itself. That's been vetted across the country, particularly by an organization called Strong Towns, that says that you're going broke if you just have a local residential. And the quarry has been proposed some very, very large residential projects in the quarry driven by Builders' Remedy, which is a well-intended law with could-bet have massively negative unintended consequences. We need your help to deal with these things very much. You're on our team now. You've got our back. Please stay that way. Please keep the quarry as an area of deferred certification. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Kramer, Lexi Mendoza, and then Frank Vella.
Good morning. I'm starting my own clock. I wrote to you twice recent, I'm a resident of Sharp Park. I wrote to you twice recently with what I felt was the most egregious problem with the LCLUPs. The SSRAs are bad policy for Pacifica and dangerous legal precedents. Many specifics have been given to you explaining why this proposal is not actually valid neighborhood-scale adaptation. It's been adequately rebutted. I decided to speak today, despite those earlier letters, because I feel the attention of many of us locals has been pulled away from other serious lapses in the draft document. The strong legal positions of the Surf Rider letter snapped my attention back to additional worrisome concerns. I support their emphasis on larger statewide implications of many issues other than the In many cases, the imprecise wording, Surf Rider calls it "flexible language," must be presumed to be intentional, and each one offers a loophole that can be exploited later. Yes, there is much good in this draft, and we need a new LCLUP. But I urge you to excise the SSRAs, but also to parry the other jabs that weaken the Coastal Act that are in this. Indeed, it weakens the authority of the Coastal Commission, and even local ordinances like Pacifica's Hillside Protection, which has been the bulwark of public safety and environmental protection, is in trouble. I'm overwhelmed with gratitude despite all my concerns with this. I'm overwhelmed with gratitude with the Coastal Commission and staff's persistent strength bearing the burden of protecting our public trust. It's rarely easy, but it's always critical. Thank you for all your work. I wanted to say I feel a little bit like a salmon swimming upstream, must feel. It's the first time I've ever spoken against a position taken by the Coastal Commission and staff, but I think this case requires that.
Thank you. Next, Lexi Mendoza, Frank Vella, and then Richard Harris. Lexi Mendoza.
Afternoon, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. I'm Lexi Mendoza, the Environmental Associate at Greenfoot Hills, and I'm here representing them. And I ask that you reject the City of Pacifica's proposed local coastal land use plan and urge the city to remove the new land designation of special shoreline resiliency areas. Greenfoot Hills works to protect local nature and farmland to ensure a healthy environment for everyone. Our advocacy with regard to the coast stretches back decades, including working for the passage of Proposition 20 in 1972. The proposed resiliency areas would allow for neighborhood-scale seawalls in the Rockaway Beach and West Sharp Park areas, despite the fact that seawalls and other hard-armoring tactics are known to cause accelerated erosion, ultimately resulting in the loss of our beaches. Already, these neighborhoods have seen a significant loss of sandy beaches and continue to face issues with public access and flooding due to high tides and wave action. The implementation of these new proposed shoreline resiliency areas, if approved, would set a dangerous and troubling precedent up and down the coast. The California Coastal Act prohibits the creation of seawall in response to new development precisely because of the well-known side effects that they have on our beaches and their ecosystems. Seawalls do not protect our shorelines and only contribute to our vanishing beaches, proving to be a short-term protection with devastating long-term costs. Instead, cities and counties should address sea level rise through more effective, nature-based solutions that continue to uphold the integrity of our coastlines and allow for these landscapes to adapt to changes that are brought on by sea level rise. Greenfoot Hills asks that you continue to uphold the California Coastal Act and reject the establishment of special shoreline resiliency areas as part of Pacifica's local coastal land use plan. We thank you for the consideration of our comments and for upholding the protection of the California coastline.
Thank you. Next, Frank Vella, Richard Harris, and then David Stewart. Frank Vella.
Good morning. This morning, I woke up about quarter-mile from the ocean, as I have done all my life. The majority of my neighbors and others who also live near me and have been there for generations are not aware that their homes and life is being threatened. It isn't much from climate change, sea level rise, erosion, or a tsunami. It's from rules and regulations brought on by the city and the Coastal Commission through the local coastal land use plan. Most of my neighbors in Pacifica do not have any idea of what is happening to them. Some of them also have lived there all their lives, are being designated to be in a tsunami zone, even though there has never been any evidence of a tsunami ever happening. Most of the residents do not know that if they apply for any permit whatsoever, such as a water heater, a roof, any improvement which will need approval, they need to sign a deed that eliminates the responsibility of the city to protect their homes. Where is the concern for the many residents, property owners, businesses, and all the citizens of Pacifica? The homeowners' needs have not been considered at all. Their lives, family, tax money is not any part of the local land use plan. The future of Pacifica is being ignored, or city needs protection in the Sharp Park areas especially. Protection of our infrastructure is crucial. Residents of Pacifica ask that their lives, homes, and investments in their family and property should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Richard Harris, David Stewart, and then Edmundo Larenas.
Good morning, Commissioners. If it is still morning. I am Richard Harris with the San Francisco Public Golf Alliance. I've submitted many letters on this, and I am going to focus here on the tsunami issue. You have a 1 in 975-year tsunami as a development restriction and something that will require someone who wants to do so little as repair a roof to waive their property rights. A 1 in 975-year tsunami as a development restriction is insane. I've given you on my last two letters, May 2nd and May 7th, there was very sloppy work done in coordinating the maps and the definitions, and they are inconsistent. The definitions, tsunami, in its definition, the definition of tsunami inundation zone does not define it. It's a non-definition definition. It doesn't give a timetable. It doesn't give boundaries. And then there is a, and that's point number three in my second letter, and I would ask you to look at the tsunami zone just to get an idea of how large it is. And it's essentially the whole, everything west of the highway. It is just too much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Stewart, Edmundo Larenas, and then Chris Redfield. Edmundo Larenas, if you're here, you can go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and Commissioners.
Could you approach the mic a little bit further?
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. I'm Edmundo Larenas, co-founder and volunteer, excuse me, the San Mateo County chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. This is the San Mateo chapter. I love the Coastal Commission. I have a great deal of respect for you and your staff and appreciate the difficulty and the task in front of you. I really do. Yet, it is maddening that the issues that brought us together to start our chapter in 1998 are still with us today. Protection of our coastal environment, and protection of the public's access to our coastal environment and beaches. They remain the strongest motivators of our volunteers. Most of our volunteers don't live near the coast, and some travel as far away as the Central Valley. I'm telling you this to remind you that we share the same motivation, goals, and constituents, and we are relying on you to protect our beaches and public access. I disagree with the basic premise guiding your staff report that allowing the vital public infrastructures to be protected via SSRA provisions would be a balance most protective of the significant coastal resources. There is no balance here. This is more of the same. This is exactly how we got here. Postponing the inevitable and 20-year, excuse me, a 20-year horizon will lead to more armoring, more loss of beach, more loss of access, more development, and more infrastructure at risk. Climate change has accelerated coastal erosion and demands appropriate action now. By the time the SSRA sunsets, it'll be too late. As you have heard from others today, you have the legal. Thank you. I'd like to clarify one thing, though. Our Surf Rider chapter does not support offshore reefs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Stewart, Chris Redfield, and then Brent Turner. Still no David Stewart. Chris Redfield? I'll move David down a few.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners and Staff. Chris Redfield, Pacifica Planning Commissioner, speaking as a member of the public. I'd like to speak in support of this comprehensive update that addresses our greatest resource, our irreplaceable coast. This policy covers serious challenges we face, including sea level rise, climate change, coastal erosion, existing and new development, public access, and property rights. A 20-year planning horizon allows Pacifica breathing room to implement and amend the LUP as necessary. Community engagement has been robust in this years-long update, although contentious at times. City and coastal staff have worked tirelessly to strike a balance within the parameters and spirit of the Coastal Act. I urge you to vote yes, following Commission staff's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Brent Turner, Clifford Lawrence, and then Nina Atkind.
Hello, Honorable Chair, Members of the Coastal Commission. My name is Brent Turner. I'm somewhat known for my activism locally. I normally don't weigh in on these issues, but as a health and safety person, I wanted to just mention I appreciated the conversations previous, the statement of the Dr. Kate, and also Joshua Cosgrove made mention of inclusion of a piece of health and safety coming from the North Coast County Water District, and that would be good to highlight, and I advocate for that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clifford Lawrence, Nina Atkind, and then Clifford Lawrence, Nina Atkind, and then Kathleen Moresco. Clifford Lawrence.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thanks to the Chairman, the Commission, and all. I want to express special thanks to the Coastal Commission, which I've admired your work for many years. I want you to know you are invaluable, and I want to have everyone resist all efforts to diminish your work, your mission. With that, I want to say I hope you will retain the authority you have currently over the quarry and the Shell Dance area. Sorry, but I don't think it is prudent to turn that over. We've recently gone through a long trial to set aside a plan for the quarry, and in that process, being down there a lot, I have found that people come to it from all over the world. I have met people from New Zealand, Poland, Ireland, and these are the people that are coming there on weekends. So it's not just the Bay Area. Now, another point I want to make is that December when we had the SSRA's dropped on us, it was called SRA that month, I think it was a shock to all of us, and we never really got over it. We kept asking, why are they still in there? And as far as I'm concerned, this is not supported by the community. Yes, it is supported by the staff, and frankly, I'm a little surprised that the Commission supports, the Commission staff supports it, but you understand these things better than I do. I think it has caused a lot of confusion in our community, and people don't really know this point yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Nina Atkind, Kathleen Moresco, and Victor Carmichael.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nina Atkind, and I'm a resident of San Francisco and a member of Surf Rider's San Francisco chapter. This LCP explicitly allows new development to rely on armoring, which violates the Coastal Act. In addition to conflicting with the Coastal Act's shoreline protection management framework found in Sections 30235 and 30253, the SSRA policies are vague. Policy CRI 38 references and applies to public infrastructure on the immediate oceanfront of SSRAs in Figure 63 and 64. Those figures are not in the LUP, but we believe they, they're unlabeled at the end of Exhibit 3. Those diagrams, however, lack detail, do not show clear boundaries, and do not indicate the inland extent of the public infrastructure to be included or considered on the immediate oceanfront. This is vague and creates a risk of abuse to perpetuate harmful armoring. Moreover, I want to emphasize CRI 38 prioritizes new armored sidewalks and accessways over beaches. The Coastal Act requires more. It's possible to relocate sidewalks and maintain healthy beaches, and specifically, the cell section of the Beach Boulevard SSRA contains a wide beach park. Surf Rider loves beach parks and coastal trails, but not at the expense of beaches. It's possible to have both, and this is a prime opportunity, similar to the golf course, to move the path inland and incorporate a living shoreline. The Coastal Act does not possibly support armoring here, where there are no utilities at the park and would harm water quality if not armored, and where all but two of the buildings behind the park and parking spaces and road were built well after 1977. Finally, to reemphasize, not all the public infrastructure that the LUP's SSRA provisions intend to protect is vital. It includes sidewalks and accessways, nor would it all result in water quality impacts if unarmored. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Kathleen Moresco, Victor Carmichael, and then Dan Hagerty. Kathleen Moresco.
Yes, hello. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Moresco. I'm a resident of Pacifica, and I encourage you to approve the local coastal plan. It has been developed over many years with a lot of community involvement in our community. People are very, very vocal and passionate about their feelings, so it was very difficult for the staff and the city council to come up with something that could please most of the people. I think the plan is very good and needs to be approved so that Pacifica can move forward with very important projects that have been delayed waiting for this to happen. And as far as the armoring, the Sharp Park area where the promenade and the berm behind the golf course are located, that's where people come. That creates the access. The berm in particular behind the golf course, on weekends, there's so many people walking on that, and they're able to walk up to the top of Boring Point to see the most spectacular views, that that is definitely the coastal access where people are able to enjoy Pacifica the most. So, thank you.
Thank you. Victor Carmichael, Dan Hagerty, and then Dan Stedjink.
Good morning. My name is Victor Carmichael. Having lived in the coastal zone of Pacifica since 1992 across from an area known as the Northern Dunes, my neighbors and I have had to turn to the Coastal Commission on several occasions to protect nearby coastal resources. We regularly have had to appeal city permitting decisions to the Commission due to the outdated 1980 LUP, so we welcome the update. While I appreciate the tremendous effort that both Pacifica's Planning Department and the Coastal Commission staff have directed at the LUC update project before, several elements within this update I find objectionable. First, there is a zoning change in the Carlson property. The community has tried for years to have this area set aside for runoff from Pedro Mountain during serious storm systems, and importantly, for sea level rise concerns. Also, there is the unnecessary change in allowing the city to grant CDPs for the quarry. The city has a record of attempting to facilitate unwise and unpopular plans there. And finally, there is this issue of the special shoreline resiliency areas. SSRAs directly oppose the underlying intent of the entire Coastal Act. In fact, Page 53 of the Commission's staff report directly acknowledges that SSRAs are not eligible for protection under Section 30235, the override for existing structures, or importantly, Section 30253 for new structures requiring protective devices. Approving SSRAs sets an dangerous precedent. Other municipalities will soon demand this accommodation. More visionary and ecologically sound approaches than seawalls exist. An artificial reef or groins perpendicular to the beach could be fish-friendly and establish a high-quality surf break and safe sand.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Historically, we've vetted strategies that have proved to be totally ineffective. Certainly, we will have sea level rise worsening. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Hagerty, Dan Stedjink, and then David Stewart.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to make a comment here. Dan Hagerty, El Granada. I've lived on the coast for my whole life except for the first two years. Thirty-five years in El Granada. I'd like to urge this Commission to help create a true plan now as far as Pacifica, and you know, start implementing forward-looking solutions. So, I'll be quick. Please hold the line and do not support the City of Pacifica LUP update. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Stedjink, David Stewart, and then we'll move on to our Zoom participants. Dan Stedjink.
Thanks, Commissioners. Good to see you again. Pacifica runs a little different show and has a reputation as kind of an environmental outlaw. Part of the reason is that we've kind of got a somewhat itinerant council, and we've got a really, really strong historically city manager that's got draft authority to over $200,000, roughly more than 38 of the 55 county supervisors there. The smoking gun document here is the 2010 Pacifica Village Center Draft Environmental Impact Report, Cultural Resources, that identifies the quarry as a Native American village where with, through two different contractors, found Native American documents, 18-foot and 30-foot depths while they were building the Calera Creek Sewer Center there. Through 12 public information requests over 10 years, I finally got that document in May. I'll send it to materials if anybody wants to take a look at it there. GGRNA says that this area has been a Native American site for more than 10,000 years. The Spanish enslaved Native Americans to mine limestone to build both the quarry, sorry, build both the Presidio and Mission de la Rusa in San Francisco, California. More than 400,000 Native Americans died within a nine-mile radius of this location. This is Indian land, pure and simple. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Stewart? Okay, I'm not seeing David Stewart, so we're going to move to our Zoom participants, starting with Julie Lind, Krista Pleiser, and then Lois Marshall Ward. Julie Lind, you're being moved in right now. When you're able to, please begin. Julie, I see that you're in as a panelist now. You should be able to unmute and begin.
Perfect. Thank you. Good morning. Thanks for giving me a few moments of your time today. My name is Julie Lind, and I'm proud to serve as the head of the San Mateo Labor Council. We represent 103 affiliate unions and over 95,000 working people and their families throughout San Mateo County, including more than 7,000 in Pacifica. I'm here to speak in strong support of the approval of Pacifica's local coastal land use plan. After over a decade of in-depth work and an impressive level in public engagement, including more than 10 well-attended meetings in just the last year alone, Pacifica City Council approved this forward-thinking, community-based plan in late 2024. Since then, city staff have worked hand-in-hand with Commission staff in groundbreaking collaboration, one that yielded the plan before you with staff's recommendation to adopt to submit it. This plan represents more than just policies and paperwork. It's a result of a community coming together, residents, workers, planners, and experts to design a sustainable, equitable future for one of the most beautiful stretches of the coast. As noted in the report, this plan is modern, thorough, and proactive. It takes on the complex challenges of coastal resilience, climate change, wildfire risk, and public access with thoughtful, enforceable policies. It also ensures the protection of critical natural resources and recognizes the needs of a living, working community that depends on a stable environment and resilient infrastructure. This is exactly the kind of balanced, community-rooted planning we need, not just in Pacifica but up and down the California coastline. On behalf of our affiliates and the thousands of working families that call Pacifica home, we urge you to approve the city's local coastal land use plan. It's a well-crafted, thoroughly-vetted roadmap to a sustainable coastal future. Thank you again for your time and for your continued service in protecting California's coast and our coastal communities.
Thank you. Next is Krista Pleiser, Lois Marshall Ward, and then Julia Chun here. Krista Pleiser.
Thank you. My name is Krista Pleiser. I'm co-founder of Smart Coast California, which is a 501(c)(6) organization which was established in 2019 to promote and advocate for smart land use policies affecting California's miles of coastline. We appreciate that the Coastal Commission and the City of Pacifica have worked together over the past few years on this specific LCP amendment. We acknowledge that while this is not a perfect plan, we are encouraged that this plan includes the neighborhood-scale planning. This is an important step because it acknowledges that prescriptive, one-size-fits-all approaches lack flexibility to address local contexts and goals. Thank you very much for being able to put this into a plan. We're really looking forward to, hopefully if this plan does pass, to see this in its first of its kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lois Marshall Ward, Julia Chun here, and then Tim Carlberg. Lois Marshall Ward.
Hello, my name is Lois Marshall Ward. Excuse me, I've lived in Pacifica for over 30 years. Thank you for letting Pacificans provide some input. I have three comments. The quarry is a beautiful area that provides many benefits to the Pacifica community. It contains wetlands and other unique coastal resources. Although it is zoned commercial, there is a builder's remedy application to build over 1,000 residential units in the quarry, and the city's ability to design that project is limited under some of the new state housing laws. The Rockaway Quarry is currently an area deferred, deferred certificate ADC. Please consider whether the quarry's coastal resources might be better protected if it remains ADC, subject to the Coastal Commission's original permitting authority rather than the city's. It is important that this environment, environment-sensitive area be protected. The Pedro Point Field is also an important environmental area that is important to the neighborhood and the coastal trail. Please do not rezone Pedro Point Field. Lastly, I urge you not to approve SSRAs. The Coastal Act already protects these areas, so it is not needed to protect existing pre-coastal development and infrastructure. We do not need new development in these areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Julia Chun here, followed by Tim Carlberg, and then Nancy Okada. Julia Chun here.
Good afternoon. I'm Julia Chun here with the California Coastal Protection Network. I've appeared before this Commission many times over the years on seawall and LCP issues, and one thing I've learned is that seawalls beget seawalls. I know how contentious these LCP updates can be. I have participated in all of the meetings for the Del Mar Sea Level Rise Update to their LCP and many others, and those were some of the most contentious meetings of my career. Compromises take place and are needed in those workshops, but you, the Commission, are the backstop. LCPs need to be at least as strict as the Coastal Act, and this, as proposed, does not meet that litmus test. I remember in 2013 when the Commission changed its policy regarding 20-year permits for seawalls and instead tied the seawalls to the life of the structure they were designed to protect. This was a big shift, but one that the Commission thought was more legally defensible, I'm sure. Ironically, that change took place for the first time on another Pacifica permit, I believe. But in this situation, as currently drafted, you would have neither of those guardrails. There are no enforceable mechanisms for removal of these neighborhood-scale seawalls after 20 years, and they're not limited to existing development. New development could rely on them as well. Another thing I've learned over the past 15-plus years of doing this work is that there are very few examples of seawalls coming out once they go in. Why rely on, why don't we rely on this existing development for the next 20 years, allow the city time to develop their adaptation plans, and then take that seawall out instead of investing in and reinforcing additional armoring now? I know there will have to be compromises, but this is not the compromise. If this LUP is approved, as is, it will set a terrible precedent. Neighborhood-scale projects should pursue and investigate innovative approaches such as nature-based solutions and fee assessments such as geological hazard mitigation districts to fund beach nourishment, not hard armoring that we know all too well will limit access, encroach on the public trust, and have negative impacts. I support, or CCPN supports, Surf Rider's request for amendments, and I'm afraid the justification used to resolve the perceived conflict could be allowed for armoring of much of our coast. Infrastructure is movable, although inconvenient. I hope you don't innovate with the policy changes without fully understanding implications and possible unintended consequences. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Tim Carlberg, followed by Nancy Okada, and then Andy Naraway. Tim Carlberg.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. So, my name's Tim. I'm a homeowner and a single father in Pacifica. I live just north of some of these special zones in an area called Manor along a street or near a street called Esplanade. I want to just speak to say two things. First, that the armory, the rocks, the rip rack in particular, is absolutely critical to maintaining the bluffs. As somebody who's now walked with my young son up and down these beaches all the time, it's actually the armory that is keeping the bluffs and the things above the bluffs from falling directly onto the beach. It's the, you know, the rebar and the construction materials as the bluffy road that fall on the beach that are actually the biggest hazard and the most, the dangerous aspect, the rebar, all the pieces of the housing and other buildings that kind of end up on the beach, sometimes even vehicles and other things that are parked really close. And so while I appreciate that the special zones have been, seem to have been allocated to specific areas, I would greatly appreciate and believe most of my neighbors and fellow homeowners in the area believe as well that those zones must be extended up into the Manor along Esplanade because there's critical infrastructure there, retail, businesses, housing, post office, et cetera. I think the other concern that I have is that the implications of these special zones, while they are critical to being able to preserve the while they are critical to being able to preserve those who live there, they're not very well-understood. And for those that have been excluded from those zones, once the realities become more clear, I believe that they will be challenged aggressively by those who have been excluded. So I would just encourage the commission to extend those zones further north into the Manor and Esplanade District to protect those bluffs as well.
Thank you. Next is Nancy Okada, followed by Andy Naraway, and then I'll begin calling names that we aren't able to find in the Zoom list. Nancy Okada.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Nancy Okada, Sierra Club California Coastal Subcommittee. Good afternoon, commissioners. We support Surf Rider in asking for denial of this item. Please reject it. We really believe that normalizing blanket armor policies under the guise of coastal adaptation will accelerate beach loss and access, and we ask that you do not approve this for all the reasons that the people have given previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andy Naraway. Andy, you're in as a panelist now. You should be able to unmute and begin.
Okay. Hi. My name is Andy Naraway. I am a resident and voter in Pacifica that would like to demand some answers. I'm just really confused as to what room dealings have been made between the owners of the piece of unused land in Pedro Point and the planning department council members that have led to this land being changed from commercial recreational to residential. Despite over a decade of residents' protests, environmental reports, natural weather events, and many council meetings vociferously opposed to this zoning change, the council has decided to run rockguard over the overwhelming number of local residents opposed to this change and put forward the current plan. It is obvious this land should be conservation, not residential, for the following reasons: One, it has been documented by many experts in their field and also committed to council that this field is a sensitive habitat for two endangered species: red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake. In my 30 years of living near the field, I have personally observed red-tailed hawks, egrets, herons, ducks, and even mountain lions present in this area. Two, it is a flood plain. During and after rain, the field is completely flooded with all the runoff from the surrounding hills. It all funnels down to this field. Adding buildings onto this land will push all that floodwater out to the boundaries and threaten many more homes and businesses that neighbor it. Three, it is an escape route for either a coastal tsunami and a forest fire, both of which are increasingly likely due to climate change. Adding buildings will endanger lives, period. Therefore, I would kindly ask the CCC to reject this plan and revert the field back to low-intensity visitor-serving commercial as it currently stands or to a conservation zone. Please, commission, be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'm calling names that we weren't able to find in the Zoom list. If I call your name, please raise your hand. Dina, there was no last name, just Dina. Summer Lee. Susan DeJardin. Eman Murphy. Mike Ferrera. Again, Dina, Summer Lee, Susan DeJardin, Eman Murphy, Mike Ferrera. If I've called your name, please raise your hand. In the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand if you're on phone by dialing star nine. And then we also had the one in person, David Stewart, who wasn't here earlier. All right. I'm seeing no hands raised. Chair Cummings.
Let me just ask real quick. Is Staley Prom still on the line?
Uh, yes.
We'll go ahead and give her two minutes.
Okay.
And I just want to note for the future, when we have group presentations, our intent is to give you extra time for your group, but that after your group gives its presentation, there aren't other members of that same group giving comments later. I mean, the whole point is that we're trying to give you, you know, extra time, given that you're representing a group of people. So we'll give Staley Prom two minutes, but for the future, let's try to have group presentations stay together.
Okay. Staley's coming in as a panelist right now. When you're able to, please go ahead.
Sorry, I wasn't expecting to be called again, and I have my, let's see, comments down below. We actually shuffled around a little bit earlier. Actually, you know, I did email my comments earlier. We would have liked to have been able to provide some additional points regarding the impacts that we've seen from hazardous, excuse me, from poorly approved armoring up in San Francisco in the Slope Project, and we don't want to see that happening again here in Pacifica. Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around. We have no more speakers.
Okay. So what I think we're going to do, we're going to give the city the five minutes for rebuttal, and then after that, we're going to break for lunch, and we'll take an hour for lunch break, and then we'll come back, and we'll have the staff present, and then we'll deliberate as a commission. So if a representative from the city would like to provide rebuttal for five minutes, please approach the podium.
Thank you for, thank you so much for hearing our public, hearing all sides of the issue as you heard, as you witnessed and saw in the public comments, in the written public comments for today. This is a big deal. And so I don't have a personal plan to rebut anything. I just wanted to acknowledge again what I said at the outset. This is groundbreaking. It's really a big step forward, and it does really bear the deliberations that I know you're giving to it. So thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. While I don't have any specific rebuttal points, what I would provide is hearing, as I said in my comments earlier, a lot of passion on every side of this issue, which is great to hear. And there's a sense that sort of this is the endpoint of this process, and it's really not. It's the beginning of moving towards this forward-thinking, you know, future of adaptation in Pacifica. So yes, it's been worked on for more than 10 years, and you'd like to think of it as an endpoint, a very important document that lays the groundwork for so much more progressive work to come into the future. And as I stated in my comments earlier, the city is very committed, takes that obligation very seriously in working towards the future of coastal adaptation in Pacifica. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further comments from the city, then what I'm going to ask is that, well, first, we're going to take a break. We're going to come back at 1:30. During the break, I'm just going to encourage commissioners, please do not talk about this item, and also for members of the public, please do not approach commissioners and try to talk to them about this item. We've heard all the public comment, and we'll come back and deliberate publicly. And so we will break till 1:30, and we'll circle back and get started again at that point in time. Thank you. So let's resume our meeting. The item that we left off on was Item 9A, City of Pacifica LCP Amendment. So at this moment, at this point in time, I'd like to bring it back to staff to make any comments on what was said during public comment and any clarifications that may need to be made. So I'll turn it back to Dan Carl.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. On the overall approval and the reasons for it, including the SSRA provisions, we aren't going to repeat ourselves here. Everything we said this morning, we still believe to be the case after public testimony, but we do want to respond to several specific points, and we'll go through that quickly. I'm going to pass this off to Julie and to start us off.
Thank you. So just wanted to speak, like Dan said, to some of the concerns we heard raised, first in regards to tribal and cultural resources, and this is covered in further detail on Page 15 of the addendum, but we want to highlight that the LUP includes a series of provisions that would require coordination with local Native American tribes, Native American consultants, and archaeologists for the conservation of historic and cultural sites, and that includes both recorded and unrecorded sites. So the policies in the LUP would ensure that the coordination would take place for the future development proposals if adopted. Secondly, two concerns raised about the area of deferred certification in the quarry. This is also discussed in the staff report and further on Page 13 of the addendum, but staff want to note that transitioning from an area of deferred certification to a city's permitting jurisdiction is one of the fundamental goals of the Coastal Act and the LCP process, to delegate and transfer that permitting process to the local jurisdiction. However, in this case, whether handled by the commission or the city, any future development proposal for the quarry site would require a CDP that would need to analyze constraints to potential development, accommodate appropriate habitat buffers, mitigate impacts to biological resources, provide for public access, and analyze coastal and natural hazards at a minimum. And I'll also note that the entire quarry site is within the commission's appeals jurisdiction. And finally, with the quarry, we know some folks raised concerns about builder's remedy, and we'll just note that builder's remedy has a Coastal Act saving clause. So as such, any future development proposal would have to account for all such constraints and address coastal resource protections. And then finally, with regards to the Pedro Point Field or the Calson property, staff recognizes that there are concerns for ash and wetland. However, the new land use designation of coastal residential mixed use, which would allow for residential mixed-use development, including housing and retail, is not drastically different from the current commercial land use designation, which itself allows for a variety of potential commercial uses. And that's also discussed on Pages 17 and 18 of the staff report and Pages 11 and 13 of the addendum. And similar to the quarry site, if the proposed LUP were adopted, any future proposal on-site would have to analyze the impacts for biological resources, traffic, hazards, and such. So those are staff's comments.
Great. Thank you very much.
Wait, wait. We have a couple more things. Sorry. So I had a couple of observations, and I'll pass it to Kate to finish us up. With respect to the comments that approval here would be improper and a violation of the Coastal Act, I want to assure you that that's not the case. It's true, we have identified a Coastal Act inconsistency with respect to allowing for armoring, but we've also identified the denial for that inconsistency would frustrate other Coastal Act mandates, and that presents a conflict. And the Coastal Act has a process for resolving that conflict. So put another way, approval through that process is approval through the Coastal Act, which means it's both proper and not a violation of the Act. It's true that others may weigh the conflict differently than staff did, but we continue to believe that the approval is appropriate here. The question comes down to what is, quote-unquote, "most protective of significant coastal resources." So in weighing that question, yes, we do look to the issues from which the conflict emanates here in terms of potential resource impacts from potential armoring and potential water quality and marine resource degradation without SSRAs, but we also look at the question more broadly and overall in terms of approval. Importantly, these two SSRA areas are already armored. There's no current requirement that that armoring be removed. That's an important factor to consider here, as is the reality that we don't believe that it's feasible to require relocation of the vital infrastructure in these areas in the short term, including in the LCP planning horizons that have been identified here. And more broadly, the overall LUP brings heightened resource protection for a variety of resources, including public access, and critically, as OCAN walked through this morning, the SSRA provisions themselves bring with them the Coastal Axis and Resilience Program and the Shoreline Adaptation Program requirements, both of which commit the city to significant public access improvements and more refined planning moving forward, and both of which represent significant steps forward for adaptation planning for the city. And they're also a bridge to the future, as we've talked about earlier, and even more of the same sort of planning and improvements, for which the city, as you also heard early, is a ready partner and are committed. So again, we think approval via the Coastal Act's conflict resolution provisions is appropriate in this context. On this point, I'd also note that the North Coast County Water District asked that you add a conflict resolution provision similar to that that exists in the Coastal Act into the LCP, and to make it explicit to protecting coastal infrastructure, excuse me, critical infrastructure. That's not possible, and this point is covered in some detail on Pages 7 and 8 of the addendum. Importantly, conflict resolution under the Coastal Act only applies where the Coastal Act is the standard of review. That's the case for the land use plan that's before you today, and that's why it's being invoked here. But it cannot properly be added to an LCP where the standard review is the LCP and not the Coastal Act. So in addition, the question of whether armoring is appropriate in any specific case will almost assuredly come to the commission via a coastal permit application and not to the city under the LCP. That is because the areas where armoring would be proposed would almost assuredly be located in the commission's retained coastal permit jurisdiction, as has been the case historically in the city. And in those potential cases, the standard of review would be the Coastal Act, and the commission could, if the commission found it appropriate, invoke conflict resolution in those cases. So it's not only not properly allowed in an LCP, but it's actually not needed in the LCP to reach the issues that they're asking you to reach, because in a coastal permit application process, the commission could choose to invoke conflict resolution, excuse me, resolution. And I'll pass it to Kate for our closing remarks.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. First off, I want to thank everybody who came out today, taking time out of your day to share your thoughts with us. We appreciate it. We heard you. We were listening. We have been listening. And I wanted to note that what struck me in listening to the comments was, by and large, the vision that we all have for where we want to go is the same. We all want vibrant and resilient beaches that we can enjoy and future generations can enjoy. And I was very cheered by that. It was, that was the clear place everybody wants to go, and part of the challenge is how do we get there? And this, what you see in front of you today is an LCP that is trying to make the first set of steps to ensure that the planning that we need to get there is in place and that we are protecting coastal resources all along the way. And I think that key, the key point there is these actionable steps. We, you know, the status quo has led to these situations where we have existing armoring, we have lost our beaches, and we need to take actionable steps to make sure that the planning that we need to do for the future, which will include all kinds of adaptation strategies, not just the one you see in this LCP today, but in order to make sure that those adaptation strategies are considered, you know, we think this is the right step to get there. It's going to have to be incremental. It's going to have to be phased, and it's going to require a lot of public input over time. This is something we're all going to be grappling with over the next many years, and so we'll be back with you all again soon, I imagine, as we work through all the elements of the plans that are included if it's adopted, and while just figuring out the really hard questions. How do we work through the legal challenges, the realities, I should say, the legal realities, the political realities, the economic realities of making sure that we adapt our coastline to the future? We can't do it tomorrow. We need time to figure out how to make that happen, and our goal here was to provide that timeframe with some very clear guardrails about how this process should look and what we would be achieving at the end. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Chair, and we are available for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'll open up to the commission, questions and comments. We'll start with Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you. I've got a few, I have a few questions, and then maybe I'll just dive in after that. The first question I have is, there was a mention of mitigation districts, or basically, you know, the Climate Resiliency District, I think, was brought up in one of the comments here, and I was just wondering if that, how that conversation may have gone if you guys had that conversation with Pacifica on the establishment of those types of, you know, districts for funding some of these future directions.
Just to be clear, Commissioner Wilson, are you asking about geolog, the type of thing, like a geologic hazard abatement district?
Yeah. I mean, that's one way. I mean, there was legislation two years ago that created the Climate Resiliency Districts, which is also another, it's basically another modification around like a levee district or a flood district. It's basically mitigating for hazards, and you create these districts. And so I was just wondering if there was, had been conversation about that in these discussions.
For sure. And there, so it's not, there aren't specific districts and specific actionable items on that right now before you today, but that's also partially the purpose of the adaptation program moving forward and trying to identify, you know, financial means to do these sorts of things, whatever the plan's going to be, and those type of districts, those are one mechanisms. Those type of districts, those are one mechanism, there's others, and we want the city to explore all of those things, to come up with a robust series of ways that we're going to actually get there, to Kate's point, to get there. We're going to need finances.
Okay, so I mean, from my perspective, moving forward, I'd make a strong recommendation that those conversations begin sooner rather than later. Part of what we do here is a state, an arm of the state, is to help make sure that local jurisdictions not only are able to respond, have the self-resilience, the self-reliance to be able to respond to some of these situations, and it's very helpful from the state's perspective to do that, especially in these changes. The second question was around, there was some comments around the housing and businesses in the tsunami zone and the acknowledgement of that hazard in getting permits and what that implication might have in terms of their insurances. I just want to check in about that and what your conversations were around that.
Yeah, so part of the deed restriction and hazard risk disclosure policy includes that any property within that zone would need to do that sort of restriction on the property. That doesn't necessarily limit development potential, it's the similar things that you're used to seeing in deed restrictions, waiving future rights to armoring, acknowledging risk is there, disclosing to future buyers, you know, all of those sort of standard conditions that you'd see.
Great, appreciate that. And so my last question around was, I think you guys clarified this, where we're seeing these proposed zone changes, you reiterate that this isn't an approval of a project. This is only within the space that all of the constraints that were, and issues that were brought up by the public in this meeting, as well as probably previous meetings, those will be analyzed per project and based on that project, because we don't really know what the constraints may be for that space.
That's 100% true. That's what Julian was referring to. That's the coastal permit process where you dive into all of those details, the constraints, the resources that need to be protected, and that's going to dictate what a site can actually handle.
And lastly, I'd like, there was a good shout-out to Strong Towns. I think if local residents who don't know of this organization in terms of their planning and their communities, there's an organization called Strong Towns, and I highly recommend you be involved with that organization. So I guess I'm just going to, my question's been answered, so is it all right if I just start off here? So I took some notes, so I'll just kind of go through those. So I've been a member of the Coastal Commission Sea Level Rise Working Group along with local governments for five years, maybe it's been six years on, but I'm a relative newcomer at five years into this. And it has been a journey, and it did not start from a place of trust, I would say. We really have been engaging with local governments intensively, both from a county's perspective and the city's perspective and the commission's perspective for some years now. There's a lot invested in that discussion and a lot of trying to get to a model that we can move forward with. So this is part of, I mean, I would say that those conversations definitely had a framework that was expressed in this today, although the committee didn't engage in this project or, I mean, this plan directly at all. I just want to be really clear about that. And then I want to applaud our staff's recognition of their work in this through all that time, and the staffs of the cities and the counties that have been part of that. I want to acknowledge the amazing amount of public involvement in this process. I too come from a relatively small community that is uber-engaged in the same sort of passion that this community is. And I mean, I will tell you that, looking at those photos and seeing the engagement, seeing the letters, it's amazing how proportionally it's like an orders of magnitude more per capita engagement in a community like this than you will see in Los Angeles or other places. You'll naturally see the same number of people, but it's like for a basin of 10 million, right? And so I want to really acknowledge that that is truly, from my, you know, it really hits me in my geek, right? That is it. That kind of engagement is amazing, and it means you have a ton of smart people that are really passionate in that space. And I want to recognize too, the City of Pacifica's governance, city council, and planning commissioners in all this, they all do this for free. They do it because they love their community, and whether we agree or don't agree on those things, I want to recognize the role of local government and the volunteerism of those folks to engage passionately in those spaces, and I think always indebted to that. The diversity of voices that contributed to this, I think, is notable and impressive, and just the authentic and sincere work is there. So from my perspective, and I think this was put forward, this is an iterative first step, right? It's important to recognize that this first implementation of this type of approach, right? And I'm going to put it out there, it's probably not the best one we will have over the next 20 years, because it's the first one, right? I'm just going to be really, acknowledge that because we're taking some chances, we're making some, we're doing some new things, and I think that that is something we just have to recognize, that the perfection is in the arc towards what we're trying to get to, and this is the beginning of that space, not just for this community, but how we address these regional sea level rise issues. And we're just going to always move and iterate to do better. I think what we're basically enabling, a critical refinement to inform our coastal adaptation efforts throughout California, I think it's really important. I want to clarify that what I believe is the scope in the SSRA part, which is kind of the most controversial part of this, is that, it was interesting because there was a comment around like short-term, and these are kind of short-term, 20 years goes by pretty fast. It has for me, I've been in elected office for 20 years, and it was poof, gone like that. And in the SSRA, the way it's set up intentionally to be temporary and applying, and only applying in two or three very specific areas, which is a very limited part of the coastline that we're talking about, and again, limited to 20 years, and I think that's very important. I don't, as local government, I think, and we're really getting into this right now, the anxiety around where we're going in the future, around infrastructure funding, around just holding civil society together in general, I'm going to be really clear about that. We don't have the luxury to ignore the embedded capital that is on our waterfronts and our shorelines. That is actual value, and not just my main embedded capital, to replace it or to move it in the immediate is very, we don't know where the resources are going to come to do all that in this space. And I'm not just talking about the embedded capital of just like a seawall in particular, but really all the infrastructure that it replaces or that it protects, whether it's a wastewater treatment plant or anything else like that, it's just very, and we could put affordable housing in that same space. Like if you're, we really have to extend the life of the embedded capital that we have to hold it together in these small communities, because we don't actually really know what our future is going to bring, and especially from a financial perspective. And that's why we have to begin this transition into how we're going to do that. And so I think that the neighborhood approach acknowledges this economic reality and provides a pathway to longer-term adaptation. I want to acknowledge Surf Rider Foundation and all of their partners and the advocates for beach preservation and public access. Their work is undervalued often, and I think it goes beyond just this issue, they're there for so many things, and I want to, and again, the network of groups that they are working with here is really important. Their commitment to protecting coastal resources has actually strengthened this project and strengthened every other planning process we go through. We may differ on some of the implementation strategies, but again, our shared commitment to preserving California's coastline unites us in our efforts. And it's important to remember that the coastal resources include public access and other things that these SSRAs are part of. So with that, I just want to strongly support the staff recommendation, and I recommend that this board move forward with this. I would say, like, you know, if there were details to this, as a land use planning nerd, would there be things I would tweak? Sure, absolutely, 100%. I think that's why, it's a big group effort. But I'm not going to do that today in this space. I think the work speaks for itself, and I think it represents a good first step in an evolving process that will continue to learn and adapt, and I urge the commission to approve this plan today. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Harmon.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Well, I'll start by just fully associating myself with Commissioner Wilson's comments. Normally, I would just leave it there, but I do think that this issue, this item today, is so important that it bears going on record similarly to sort of explain my thinking and really to try to tease out how important this item is today, particularly to local governments, of course, to the City of Pacifica, but more broadly to local governments that are watching this hearing up and down the state as well. So, you know, both as a commissioner, but as a city council member, I'm really happy that this conversation is happening today, because these are the questions that we are grappling with day in and day out. As is clear, sea level rise adaptation and how we manage that is among the most challenging of planning issues that we face at the local level, whether you're the City of Pacifica or in my city, the City of Santa Barbara, really wherever you are across the state, the scale, the scope, the cost of adaptation can really be overwhelming. Proactive planning, rather than reactive response, is incredibly difficult to do, but it's incredibly necessary. And so while it does require real compromises, as we've seen today, what this item also proves is that forward movement isn't impossible. Forward movement can happen, and I know it hasn't always felt that way. So there are some serious complexities here, and as Commissioner Wilson said, what's before us is not a panacea to the challenge of sea level rise adaptation for sure. I mean, just look at the SSRA allowances, as Mike said. And I totally agree with him, it probably isn't even the best first step that we'll ever see in the years to come, but I too will be wholeheartedly supporting this update today. And I'm supporting the update in particular because I very much agree with our staff's assessment that what we have before us is, on balance, meaningful and productive progress. I do want to acknowledge that there's a real lack of unanimity on some of these issues from the stakeholders. I take that very seriously, and I too have heard the concerns that have been expressed here today and that have been expressed really over the years as this process has evolved. But when it comes to the absolutely critical work of sea level rise adaptation, I truly believe that we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. The conversation about sea level rise in Pacifica, sea level rise adaptation in Pacifica isn't finished. It's not finished with the passage of this update today. That was made very clear, made very clear both by our staff and by the representatives of the city that have been here. There's miles and miles yet to go, but this update is an iterative step forward. It is movement in the right direction. And to be clear, failure to take this step forward today is not the equivalent of just standing still. To not take this step today is not cost neutral. I really believe that if we fail to move this update forward, it is truly steps backwards. And not only just for the City of Pacifica, whose commitment to adaptation is unparalleled, but for local governments up and down the state who are grappling with these same issues and who are looking to this conversation to see if there is a path forward for their own communities to take on the hard work of dealing with adaptation. So there are really challenging, difficult choices that local governments are facing when it comes to adaptation. We cannot hide from those difficulties. With my vote in support of this update today, I really hope that the many jurisdictions that are watching see my personal commitment and my hope, the commitment of this whole commission, to work together pragmatically to adapt communities in service of protecting and preserving our beautiful coast. I do want to highlight a couple of things that I think this update does really well, and I think it's worth mentioning that and not forgetting. It takes a holistic approach to adaptation. The neighborhood scale approach is really critical, and I'm going to shout out, as Mike did, this local government Sea Level Rise Working Group. I am a very new member of this group, but they have been doing really pioneering, innovative work, not on this update, but just generally to think about, how do we approach these big issues? And this approach is in contrast to the parcel-by-parcel take, and that approach, parcel-by-parcel, really leaves communities vulnerable to patchwork responses. And those patchwork responses are more likely to protect the few at the expense of the whole, and I think we have to remember that. This update leaves future adaptation options on the table, it doesn't foreclose possibilities. And I think most importantly to me, from sort of a supra philosophical level, is it proves that we engage, if we engage, if we engage collaboratively on hard questions with an understanding that compromise is going to be required of all of us, we actually can move forward. And I think before this moment, there are a lot of people who weren't sure if the answer to that question, can we actually move forward, would be yes. So finally, I'm going to close, as Commissioner Wilson did, by saying that though my view differs, I wanted to specifically thank Surf Rider and the many public commenters who spoke today and who have been part of this process all along, for the vital role they've played, and truthfully, the vital role that I know they're going to continue to play as this evolves. Both in my role as a commissioner here and in my local government role as a city council member, your advocacy inspires us to look beyond what's simply pragmatic, to rethink what's just merely possible, and to always move toward policy that's both aspirational and fundamentally grounded in our shared commitment to the coast. And though I am voting a different way today, I just have to acknowledge that you really have and are continually moving the overton window about the possibilities. I know you're going to keep doing that in communities like Pacifica, communities like mine in Santa Barbara, and communities up and down the coast, so that we can all move forward step by step to meaningfully respond to sea level rise. So with that, I think you and I too will be voting yes today.
Commissioner Hart, then we have Commissioner Aguirre. Does anybody else want to speak?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions for staff. First of all, these are just specifics that I'm hoping you could respond to, and maybe in the course of everybody speaking, maybe you did and I just missed it. First of all, so when you look at the Beach Boulevard and the Rockaway Beach, part of it is armored up until the pier, and then there appears to be a sandy beach south of the pier. And I didn't have an opportunity to visit these sites in person. I've looked at them on Google Maps, I've tried to see. Could you explain to me, if we were to adopt the plan today, how the armoring would change along that part of the beach, what the potential impacts would be to that? Now it's a sandy beach.
Yeah, so the entire Beach Boulevard is armored. That part south of the pier, there is like a picnic area that is currently sandy when you look on Google Maps, but there is an armoring, and there is a small sandy beach area. But that armoring has been there since the 80s. The SSRAs don't automatically mean anything will happen to that armoring. Any sort of CDP to change that armoring would have to come to the commission. And so there's the opportunity for this armoring to potentially be augmented or replaced, and there is a proposal that the city is currently working on for Beach Boulevard, but there's nothing in front of us today that would change the armoring from this decision.
Okay, it's a little hard to see in the maps, but that sort of... It's a little hard to see in the maps, but that sort of brings me to my next question or thought. So as we approach this, we see very clearly what is being, what we're armoring is meant to continue and what the goal is there. You know what I think is less clear, and I think this was one of Surf Rider's concerns, is that it's less clear about the benefit side. Can you talk a little bit more about that, what you anticipate coming down the road? I know we've talked in grand, you know, public access improvements, et cetera, but let's just talk about the potential restoration goals for some of the beach areas, how if this is to be allowed here, then these are the benefits that you would anticipate down the road.
Yeah, so the Coastal Access and Resilience Program, that's tied directly into the SSRAs, would be the first step in determining what those benefits would be.
Could you repeat that? I didn't hear the first thing you said.
Can you move my mic closer?
Yeah, thanks.
The Coastal Access and Resilience Program that's tied to the SSRAs is the first step in determining those benefits throughout the city to help mitigate the impacts of continued armoring. And so we don't have an exact set of options just yet. The city's going to take a public participation process, determine areas of improved access. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, those types of benefits could look like pursuing armoring removal elsewhere in the city, or pursuing some sort of nature-based adaptation elsewhere in the city, beach nourishment, et cetera. But that'll all be conducted during that program. And if it's helpful, I can kind of talk through when those program milestones are going to be submitted to the commission. To even have the SSRAs sunrise and start as something that'll be effective, the very first initial Coastal Access and Resilience Program will have to be developed and submitted to the commission for review. Additionally, for the SSRAs to even become effective, they would also have to, the city would have to start development of the shoreline adaptation program, which is the one where they'd have to really start digging into those questions about what the future would look like for the city in these areas. So both of those are just to even get the SSRAs to begin. And then there are continual milestones that have to be met so that these SSRA provisions don't get suspended, including having the Coastal Access and Resilience Program certified within 15 months of us accepting the LCP amendment, having CDP applications submitted to the commission every five years to implement projects from this coastal resilience program. And those would include the projects that we were just talking about that haven't been developed yet but could be in the future. And if you want, we can talk through more of these, but a lot of these are really backstopped. There's a lot of specific milestones that the city will have to meet regarding these two programs for these SSRAs to continue to be effective.
I think going forward, for me personally, if this, you know, if this is, and I think, I agree with my colleagues, and I think I've made statements on this in the past, I don't think there's any question that this is the direction that LCPs are going to have to go in the future. Otherwise, we are going to have a backlog of LCPs. We are not going to be able to move forward. We'll see lots of these 40-year-old LCPs just continue. Sea level rise, which of course was when the Coastal Act, the Coastal Act is 50 years old now, and nobody could have ever anticipated, I don't think, or maybe Peter Douglas, but not many people could have anticipated at the time that this would become one of the dominant issues for the commission. And it requires a whole new approach and a whole way of thinking, and I'm so grateful for the leadership of the commission, for our executive director, and all of the staff for all the work that's gone into this. And I completely agree with my colleagues in terms of the local working group, et cetera. It's fantastic. But for, but one thing I'd like to say going forward as these things come, I think it's important to have the benefits more fleshed out because what Surf Rider is saying is scary. You know, we're jumping off, you know, not, sorry, cliff. I hate to use all these sea analogies, but I think everybody knows what I'm talking about. You know, it's hard to respond to what Surf Rider is saying unless we could say, yes, if we allow this here, there will be these benefits here. And I personally have a problem with that. So I really think going forward, having these things come together as much as possible, although I understand why we are where we are here, but I just would really like to see that. So that's just really the dominant thing that's been on my mind. I want to ask just quickly about these, the concerns about the Pedro Point area. Could you just respond to what the folks that were here, the public comment, were saying?
Yeah, maybe if you're able to outline the specific concerns, but I think how staff feels is that right now, the current designation isn't protective compared to the proposed designation, but what would be protective are the policies that are contained in the update. And so I guess in my view, the most protective action is to accept the update and have all of these mitigations and buffers and all these policies which aren't in the existing LUP now in effect on the parcel. Because I think, as they've said, staff have identified, USHA have identified sensitive species, and our goal is to have those protected through the adoption of this update.
Right, and I think it's really helpful for the public to hear that and to understand that that's the case, and I'm sure you met with them. Did you, did you want to say something else? Okay, because I met with them and I understand their concerns, and this is obviously, pretty obviously, a floodplain wetland, it's got endangered species, there's public access impacts. But before anything could happen on that land, it would definitely have to come before the commission, any kind of development there.
Yeah, so just to be clear, there's currently no proposal, and so any sort of future proposal would have to go through, like what Julian was saying, all of this, all of the requirements for a CDP, analyzing all of the floodplain issues, make sureing there's public access, adequately buffering. And that area is, I think, appealable to the commission, so any decision that's made on the field, there would be an opportunity for the commission to see a project there through the appeal process.
So is it currently, so the designation today, in any event, it's an open space currently. I don't even know, it sounds like the city owns it or something. And then, nothing we are doing today is doing anything to change that, in fact, to provide even more protection with an understanding that it would come back to the commission. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, the designation of the site is changing from commercial to a more mixed-use designation. But with the update comes all of the really great habitat protections and requirements to identify hazards and provide open space. And so any sort of constraints on the open space site right now that doesn't have any development would need to be addressed in a future proposal.
Okay, that's great. So again, I just wanted to express my gratitude. This is a huge accomplishment for the city and all of the folks that are here, the city manager, mayor, thank you so much, and we really appreciate it. And it's been a tough road in Pacifica. You guys have been through a lot, and just so grateful for all the work of everyone. So thank you very much, Chair.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Thank you, Chair. I also want to commend everyone, staff and the city, and all the stakeholders who came out and spoke on the issue, whether you were for it or against it. I don't know if people knew this, but Pacifica and Imperial Beach were featured on a Vice News story once because we have very similar challenges with sea level rise, different scenarios. You guys are elevated, we're very low-lying, plus we have the exacerbating factor of raw sewage coming up with sea level rise. But I think that the stakes couldn't be higher for this particular LC, LCUP, for obvious reasons, right? We're talking about this becoming the bridge of, into the future and getting it right. And I want to associate myself with the comments that were made by Commissioner Wilson and very eloquently by Commissioner Harmon, because I do look at this through a lens as a city leader, and we have to start to think about these things, and I think this is a good step forward. It's a first step. It's not going to be perfect, and I'm very much interested in looking at this as something that we're going to have to learn from and adapt as we move forward, manage, adaptive management in a way. I do have a couple of questions that I didn't get clarity on. If we, you know, reach the point of having to suspend the adaptation efforts, do that, does that have to come before us, or is that a decision that happens at the staff level?
It's currently structured as it's an ED determination, but I think depending on the nature of that determination, I'll let Kate speak to it, but she might want to bring that to the commission. It's such an important kind of component of this, but it is structured as an ED determination.
That's right. I agree with what Dan said. This is the kind of thing where, and there are other examples of this, and LCPs where there are ED determinations, but given the import of the decision, it's likely something, if I was making that choice, I would want to bring to you for guidance.
Okay, thank you for that. And then we did touch a little bit on the Coastal Access and Resiliency Program, but I just wanted to know a little bit more if there is an in-depth, or if there will be an in-depth equity analysis as far as the communities that will be most impacted by the shoreline, potential shoreline loss, and does that go beyond Pacifica? Because obviously, these beaches not only serve the residents of Pacifica, but of people inland.
So they would have to do a big outreach program when they're determining these programs, the coastal resilience one and also the adaptation program. And so with that, we would hope that they would be reaching out to a wide variety of people who attend Pacifica inland communities. I know that they have a very complex mailing list of folks that they reach out to, but perhaps the city could speak to that more if you're curious about specific efforts.
Sure, I'd love to hear that.
I also might just observe, it's an opportunity for them to do the sorts of things that you just described. And I think, you know, the city's here to hear from you what you think ought to be, you know, incorporated in these things. It's broad enough at this time that if you had very specific understandings about what it should include, that these are the types of things that the city needs to hear. And I think this is one of the more difficult aspects of adaptation planning when we're talking not just about the folks in the community, and this is a very engaged community, but there's lots of folks in the Greater Bay Area, the state, and even further, as we heard earlier, who also come to Pacifica for these things. And so that's super important. It's a really difficult aspect, and I know local government's really grappling with that. How do you do that? But I think it's important for you to note that, and hopefully the city's hearing that, and I'm sure that they would, you know, give that its proper measure.
Yeah, I'll just briefly say there are, and we touched on this in the presentation, but in further detail, there is both guiding and implementing policies in the land use plan that require expanded notification efforts for policy documents in the coastal zone to underrepresent communities outside of Pacifica. There's efforts to remove barriers to public participation, and I guess maybe the city can speak more to, you know, how are they finding that universe of folks outside of the city? But at least there are policies contained in this document with that stated goal in mind.
I think as a city, again, representative, it's challenging because, for example, our budget's very limited. So, you know, sometimes we use our listserv, our email listserv, but there's a digital divide also for low-income, perhaps senior folks that don't necessarily have access to a computer. So then we talk about mailing lists, like actual snail mail. That costs money. So that puts an impact and burden on the city. So it's nuanced, right? And I would love to hear your suggestions. I mean, it could be that we advocate for grant funding for that type of work right at the state level.
Yes, grant funding.
I feel your pain, I know.
We are a community that receives visitors from the valley in the summer when it's hot. It happens routinely. We've discussed it in our economic development looks as we've worked with our hotels. We recently updated our bid, the process by which small amounts are collected, about half a percent is what it's going to be, to reinvest in outreach, to bring, and that's focused on tourism, but it's focused on making affordable tourism possible for folks, reaching into those communities. My day job is as an educator, a librarian. I think I, we have a huge opportunity to work through the community college, a network, to reach those communities that we're talking about, and even through our elementary schools. And I'm talking about like sister or connecting districts with each other so that we could implement some of those kinds of programs of bringing people and helping to identify who those people are, exactly as you were just saying. You're right, every time we want to send a postcard about notify the community, the city manager says it costs $7,000 to send a postcard. And for us, $7,000 on the whim is money. We have to be careful and thoughtful about our approach. So that's why I agree, putting together an overall program to reach the folks, to figure out how to reach the folks, that's part of the process. And then it's making sure that the amenities that we have are meeting their needs. So we've always prided ourselves on, we're already low-cost visitor-serving, so we weren't like, yes, we just need more. We need more of that in our community, and we intend to provide it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. Well, I'll just say that, you know, obviously, we're all concerned about the public trust, some of the concerns raised earlier, but I think this is a good balance. At the end of the day, we have to find a way forward. We cannot stand idle and just say no. And obviously, each region has very different geographical conditions and traits and characteristics as Pacifica and Imperial Beach. We're polar opposites. So with that being said, I'm going to support this, but I do want us to be vigilant as we continue moving forward, that this isn't used advantageously by anybody. I'm trying to be diplomatic here. So that we keep a very stern eye and we make sure that the implementation is done correctly and that, you know, if it doesn't work, we pull the plug and reassess. So I'll leave my comments there. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll be quick. Actually, just had one quick question, and I wondered, perhaps someone from the city might answer, or even the staff. In the staff report, it seemed to just assume, and I think staff was very clear, that they think that the removal of SSRAs would be a deal breaker for the city, and then someone in the public earlier got up and said, well, maybe some changes, that's not the case. I don't necessarily have to put anybody on the spot, but I guess it's a simple yes-or-no question. To the city, is the removal or inclusion of SSRA a deal breaker one way or the other as to whether this would be accepted? And if the answer is you can't answer that, that's all I need to know.
Commissioner O'Malley, I just might, I'd say it's a very difficult question to answer because it depends on five city council members and their perspectives.
Gotcha.
And what's brought to them.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. So I want to talk about, really, I appreciate the staff's efforts in this. I know this is an extremely complicated situation. Really quickly, align myself with Commissioner Hart, and that listing of the benefits would be great. I am, I don't want to stand in the way of progress, and I agree, a shift in approach is definitely needed to address sea level rise. My hesitation is in the SSRA methodology, not in the attempts that you all are trying to do to make this happen. And so I'll just say, because a lot has been said, I find the Surf Rider memo and presentation really persuasive. I'm sure I would approve this if SSRAs are taken out, and I seem to be the lone wolf who, which is fine, because I do think there are very good policies in it. I also share a bit of concern about the precedent setting of this. And we've said in the past, not, that precedent setting is not necessarily precedent setting, but after my 25 years as an environmental advocate and attorney, I realize things beget things, and that's just somehow what happens, and that, I'm very concerned about that. That said, you know, even though I'm not voting for this, I'm really looking forward to see how this plays out with this commission and then in future commissions in cities as well. So kudos on you for moving this forward, but I just want to register why I'll be objecting. So thank you.
Commissioner Nofoff, and then Commissioner Redoni.
Thank you. I wanted to, it's interesting, one of the unique features of the coastal commission here is that we're made up of a combination of locally elected officials and public representatives at large. And I, one of the things I really learned a lot from my partners here at the local level, and I also, having seen what it looks like when we go up and down the state and we see these issues about coastal armoring, and over and over, it's the extremely wealthy people that have the extra $100,000 or $200,000 to shore up their property. So I do appreciate the community approach, and I understand that, you know, it's, that's become quite clear to me in the last couple of years, seeing the inequity that is currently, that the current system has. And I think that it's, this is really tough stuff. And I think that it's, this is really tough stuff, and it's, I really appreciate the arguments that Surf Rider and Committee for Green Foothills and others have brought to us, and that I think those have actually made this proposal better than it would have been, and there's a lot of progress there. But I do think that overall, we uphold the Coastal Act by making the Coastal Act work now with the conditions that we are now confronted with. And the sea level rise and the ocean is relentless, and we see that everywhere up and down the coast of California. And the state, through the Ocean Protection Council, every one of the jurisdictions along the coast, other statewide bodies, in addition to the Coastal Commission, have had to, are having to struggle with this. And we need to try and do some new things. We may not get everything right, but we're working on it in real time. So I, you know, it's very hard for me, as you might be, you might notice the way I'm stammering a little bit, but I am going to support this. And I think that, you know, we have to remain engaged. Surf Rider and other groups, thank you for bringing all, you know, keeping at it, and let's see if this works. I am reassured in some respects, definitely, by the milestones and the guardrails that the staff and the city have developed that will not just, this isn't just going to go into effect, there's going to be some public benefit milestones that have to be met first. I had not been, I went to planning school, but I was not familiar with the sunrise as opposed to the sunset. I know about sunsets, but this concept of the sunrise, that you have to meet these milestones in order to even get to consider moving this policy forward, I think is a good, that'll help with Commissioner Aguirre's idea about, you know, we need to watch this very vigilantly, because that's actually built in to what you're proposing here. So with the combination of the milestones and the fact that we have a new, you know, unending natural threat up and down our coast, then this is an approach that hopefully we'll be able to do step by step. And again, the, I think Commissioner Wilson said it very well at the beginning, is this is zoning, these are not projects. And the policies that will now be applied to the projects that come before the city or us will be, you know, much more robust policies that will hopefully result in a more environmentally good outcome. So I want to thank everybody that's worked so hard to get to where we are here. You can tell from the public testimony that it's been a hard slog and not everybody's happy, but I think that this is an important thing for the Coastal Act itself, that we be able to make the Coastal Act work for today's environmental conditions. Thank you.
Very much. Commissioner Redoni.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Caro answered my one question that I was going to have today about crucial public infrastructure, something I hear about a lot, and I'm happy that we're taking a look at that and will continue to look at that, because it's really important to our, a lot of our local communities that are in these hazard zones. I want to thank the public, surf riders and others that have spoken today. It's really important that we hear your opinions, but mostly, I want to thank the staff of the city and the Coastal Commission for bringing this proposal forward, which is really a compromise and a path forward, in my mind. I'm new to the commission, but I'm not new to the LCP process and the amendment process, as many are laughing because they know that my county has been over 14 years in this process, and it doesn't look like anytime soon, we're going to bring the hazard amendments forward, which is unfortunate, and I'm happy to say, only nine of those years it's been on my watch. But this, this LCP today, I think, gives us all maybe a pathway forward, and that's why I think it's important to recognize that today. You know, doing nothing is really not acceptable anymore, and I'm really pleased that staff, both staffs, have found a way to move forward, because I do think it will open the opportunities for other LCPs and other hazard amendments to now be brought forward. And I really like the review process that's been put in place, and I think that's so important, that we continue to monitor this. And given that we've been so long in our process, as Mr. Wilson said, 20 years is not so long, so thank you, and I will be supporting this proposal.
Commissioner Raga.
Thank you. As I've been listening to all the comments, I think that the one that I agree with the most is Director Raga's evaluation of being a process. We know that this whole issue is evolving, and there's going to be changes, and we need to adapt, and we need to make changes as we go along based on the information that we have for that day. And that's where we're at right now. Over the course of my tenure on the commission, somebody noticed it to me that my views have changed. And why? Because I'm listening, because I'm adapting, because I'm changing as the environment changes and as the needs of the community changes. I've always been anti-armoring, but, you know, there are times when it might not be so bad. But, but you have to understand that it's part of a process, or something that might happen in the future. What might be good today might not be tomorrow, but it might be the next day. So we don't know. The comments from my colleagues from beach cities, Aguirre and Harmon are right on. I come from a city, from a beach city as well, and sea level rise is very important, and it's something that is very, most in our thoughts and our development. And as the commissioners said, Wilson, that, you know, this is not about a development, it's about an application. So when I look at this, and I think about the alternative, if we don't certify this, what's the alternative? There is none, right now, there is none. So not that I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place, but, because I'm not, but not certifying this would really put a, would put a tizzy in the whole discussion. So I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that. I'll save you guys a problem. But it is, it is incumbent on us, as we always, as we always do, to keep the coastal like highermost in our thinking, in what we do in our actions. Thank you.
All right. Well, I just want to start by really thanking the city of Pacifica, coastal staff, one, for being willing to collaborate and work together on something that obviously is extremely difficult and challenging and polarizing in a variety of different ways. You know, what strikes me, and I think Commissioner Raga just pointed to it, but, you know, there has been a process, and it's been a long process, and there's been a lot of community engagement and a lot of community input. And for me, that's something that's really important, because, you know, sitting on city council and now as county supervisor and being on this board, you know, there are times when things get introduced, and you can tell that there's been no community engagement, but people still try to push those issues and those policies through without the community really having an understanding of what's happening. And the fact that there is tension really just goes to show that this was made very public, and there's been a lot of input on this. And so, again, while it's not perfect, it is putting us in a position where we can move forward today. And I do want to thank, I share the same comments that my colleagues brought up, I want to thank Surf Rider and all the advocates out here who genuinely really care about protecting our beaches, beach access, and protecting our environment. I know that they wouldn't be here so strongly with their comments if they weren't so passionately about that, and everybody up here feels the same. I do think, though, that at the same time, you know, we have to figure out, like, when certain types of, whether it's armoring or sand replenishment, like, when it's appropriate and when it's not. And I think the one thing that I really appreciated hearing from staff was that, you know, like, our coastline is not the same, and there is no one-size-fits-all approach to dealing with coast, with sea level rise. And I wish at the state, they felt that same way around housing, because it isn't. I mean, every community is very different. We are geographically different, we're geologically different, the way the water hits our coast is very different, depending on where you're geographically located. And I'll just say that coming from a community where we have been hammered multiple winters in a row, and we've lost, you know, part of our wharf, we've lost parts of West Cliff, we've had significant damage done to our harbor, the way that the city of Santa Cruz has been approaching us, and I don't want to speak for the city since I'm with the county, but, you know, they have different approaches depending on how the impacts have been received. And so a couple months ago, we had our meeting in Santa Cruz, we took a little tour, and, you know, from the damage that we received on West Cliff, the city's moved forward with rebuilding that and the armoring portion of that. And then you walk further down the road, and they have an opportunity where managed retreat is the answer, because there's a state park where they can move the road into that park and allow for the cliff to naturally erode. And then in front of our boardwalk, there are a variety of different projects around living shorelines, where they're trying a variety of different options to see what can work in terms of, instead of using walls, using living shorelines. And I think that's going to be how we're going to need to approach this. It's not going to be a one-size, every community, you get to armor X, Y, and Z. It's going to be us working collaboratively together to determine how can we best, what are the areas of critical public resources or critical infrastructure? Where can we allow, you know, areas to erode? Where can we have managed retreat? And what's the timing around that? And so I think what we have before us today is, again, it's more of a zoning rather than a specific project, but it does trigger something that I think should have been triggered a long time ago, which is communities have to start planning for sea level rise, and you have to start taking it seriously. And that's something that, you know, we've been sounding the alarm, scientists have since the '90s. That's why I went to college to become a biologist, because I wanted to help be a part of the solution. And here we are, in some communities, just starting on trying to figure out how we're going to adapt to sea level rise. And so I actually want to commend the city of Pacifica for taking the lead and being a leader, because this is one of the first sea level rise LCLUPs that's coming to this commission. I know that the county of Santa Cruz is working on ours, there's other communities that are working on theirs. Hopefully, it doesn't take 14 years, but, but this is, I think this is going to be a good opportunity for us to see how this can work. And again, while it's not perfect, I think that what we've been able to identify is that, you know, there's some areas where we really, they're already armored, let's try to protect them while we work towards figuring out what we're going to do in the future and how we're going to adapt. And so I'm going to become a broken record here soon, so I'm going to stop my comments, but just want to thank everybody for their patience, for their willingness to engage and to be, to being open-minded. But again, really want to thank the city and commission staff for working together. I think it's going to really demonstrate that we can. If we work together, we will move forward much more quickly than if we work in our silos. And so I really want to continue to support those efforts. And with that, I'll turn to Commissioner Wilson for a motion on this item.
Thanks. Happy to make the motion. Two quick points. I want to associate myself with all the comments that were made here today by the commissioners. I want, Commissioner Hart really dug into one piece that really makes this complicated, is that the Coastal Act was not created with sea level rise in mind. And it has act, it has literally added both a horizontal and vertical component of change, and not just change, but change over time, and those are very hard things for us to conceptualize in the written format of an act. And it's, so we're in tension constantly around this and why it's becoming more and more anxiety-ridden to try and figure out a way to get, to deal with that. I also want us to ask that the staff, and I think that they will do this if this moves forward today, which looks like it will, that when we, this is a bit of a signal to other jurisdictions that there's a, there's a new tool or a palette to work from in order to do this. Some of those jurisdictions will take it in a heart that we're, in the way that we're moving forward, and some may think of this as something to maybe take advantage of. I want to be really clear that this is a collaborative effort, and speaking to all the jurisdictions, that this is something that we're, the goals that were set and the anxieties that Surf Rider have still exist and others. And so we're going to be looking to address those and take that all very seriously moving forward, but again, moving forward. I also want to just thank the city of Pacifica for all its efforts in this and being a wonderful place. We drove through there a couple times here in the last few days. Awesome, awesome town. Really cool. I mean, yeah, my, our favorite new Taco Bell was there. That was good. Never, never had a margarita at one of those before, but that was awesome. And also the home of my favorite family band, The Eddies. You guys should all check them out. And with that, I motion, let's see, I move that the commission certify land use plan amendment, LCP-2-PAC-23-0056-3, as submitted by the city of Pacifica pursuant to the staff recommendation, and I recommend a yes vote.
I'll second. So it's a motion by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote, and so I'll ask the, ask, well, actually, yeah, I'll ask Mr. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
No.
O'Malley, no. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni.
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nataff.
Aye.
Nataff, yes. Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is eight yes, one no.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for coming. Thanks for all your hard work, and we look forward to seeing how this progresses over time. With that, we're going to move on to our next item, item number 11A, new appeals. Appeal number A-2-HMB-25-0003, Hyatt Hotel, Half Moon Bay. And I'll give the staff a sec, or actually, Dan, are you going to present this item? Okay.
It'll just give us just a couple minutes?
Yeah, go for it.
Chair Cummings, we're ready when you are.
Sorry?
We're ready when you are.
Okay. All right, if we can clear the room, we're going to move on to our next item. So I'm going to turn it to staff. This is the Hyatt Hotel, Half Moon Bay appeal, and so I'll turn it to staff for a presentation on this item.
And we do have a PowerPoint for this item, and I'm going to turn this over to Isabel Cooper, who's going to give our staff presentation. And if folks could quietly either exit or sit down, that would be helpful to the process.
All right, here we go. Good afternoon, commissioners. Item, excuse me, item 11A is an appeal of a city of Half Moon Bay coastal permit approval for a lot line adjustment, four-lot subdivision, and construction of a new 100 and parcels two and three make up an existing auto dealership property spanning Seymour Street. The lot line adjustment would affect the boundary between slot one and two, and the four lot subdivision would occur on lot three. Next slide, please. Slide four shows the land division parts of the city-approved project. At the top, the property north of Seymour Street would be subdivided into four lots, shown in red, and at the bottom, the existing property with the auto dealership shown in yellow, and it would be expanded by approximately half an acre, where the expanded area is shown in green. Next slide, please. Slide five shows the city-approved hotel site directly south of the existing dealership property. The city-approved development consists of an approximately 66,000-square-foot hotel with 102 guest rooms and two primary buildings separated by a breezeway. That's shown on the slide as the lighter gray areas to the middle and right of the slide, as well as other amenities like dining areas, meeting rooms, and a fitness facility. Six of the provided rooms are required by the city to be lower cost, while the remaining 96 rooms would be moderate cost. The eastern side of the site would be developed with a 108-space surface parking lot, shown here as the darker gray area near the bottom of the slide along Main Street, and a small bike rental structure. Approximately two acres of the site fronting Highway one would be retained as open space, and this area would support existing wetlands, which would be restored, and the area would be improved with publicly accessible pedestrian and bike paths, benches, and interpretive signage. Next slide, please. The appellant primarily contends that the approved development is too large for the site and would degrade views of the city's eastern hills and ridge lines as seen from the LCP-designated Highway one scenic corridor and is out of character with nearby development. The appellant also contends that the project does not adequately address traffic impacts, that it should not be seen as a visitor-serving resource because similar facilities are already offered in the city, and that potential future residential development on the four lot subdivision was not sufficiently evaluated. Additional appeal contentions include that the project does not meet LCP requirements for lower-cost accommodations, agricultural land conversion, wetland buffers, and downstream water quality and erosion. Next slide, please. Slide seven provides a visual rendering of the hotel project as seen from the Naomi Partridge Trail across Highway one. As you can see, it is true that the project would result in a large structure inland of Highway one that would, from certain vantage points, enter into and block views of upland slopes and foothills to the east. The only portions not blocked is at the 32-foot-wide breezeway between the two hotel buildings in this view, roughly at the center of the image. That was on the screen a moment ago. Yes, the only portion not blocked is at the 32-foot-wide breezeway between the two buildings shown in this view. Next slide, please. Slide eight provides additional visual renderings of the hotel project as seen from the northbound lane of Highway one approaching the site from the south. From these perspectives, the structure has not yet blocked views of upland slopes or ridge lines. Impacts of public views are somewhat tempered by the fact that the hotel building would be set back between 120 and 180 feet from the edge of Highway one and would be broken up into two main buildings. There is some tension in the LCP over this site inasmuch as it is located at the southernmost extent of the city's town center area, where the LCP encourages commercial development to be clustered, and where some larger structures already exist, including the city's coastside fire station with its four-story training tower and the coastal rapery theater, both located directly across the street from the hotel site. Overall and in this context, staff believes that the intent of the LCP scenic corridor protection provisions was adequately respected by the city's approval, and the development can be found visually compatible with the character of the surrounding development at this location. Next slide, please. With respect to contentions that the project does not meet LCP requirements for lower-cost overnight accommodations, the project is primarily a moderate-cost hotel with 96 moderate-cost rooms and six lower-cost rooms, and is not a higher-cost hotel. The city's LCP does not include any explicit extra requirements for moderate-cost hotels, and the commission has not typically required additional lower-cost overnight accommodations for proposed moderate-cost rooms. Instead, the commission has generally ensured that such projects include other forms of public access enhancements focusing on lower-cost or free amenities and public benefits. In this case, the project includes two acres of open space with publicly accessible bike and walking paths, benches, interpretive signage, and bike rentals, in addition to six onsite lower-cost rooms, and has gone beyond what the LCP requires and beyond what the commission has typically required in the past for moderate-cost hotel projects. Thus, the city-approved project does not raise substantial issues regarding consistency with the LCP's requirements associated with lower-cost visitor accommodations. The remaining appeal contentions are concerned with traffic impacts, deferred analysis of future residential development of the four lot subdivision, agricultural land conversion, wetland buffers, and downstream water quality. I'll note that an addendum was published on May 6th with more details regarding these contentions, but in conclusion, staff determined that the city conducted appropriate analyses of each of these issues and applied adequate mitigation measures in each instance as required. Next slide, please. In short, while the hotel development would impact views of upland slopes and ridge lines to the east of the project site, it appears that the project adequately addressed scenic resource issues. Furthermore, other appeal contentions, including lower-cost overnight accommodations issues, have been appropriately analyzed and mitigated for. Importantly, in a substantial issue determination, the commission is not tasked with ensuring that a project approved by the local government is 100% LCP-consistent, but rather with determining whether the approval raises substantial enough coastal resource concerns under the LCP that require the commission to become involved. For the reasons discussed, the commission need not become further involved in this case, and staff recommends that the commission find that no substantial issue exists with respect to the city's approval. The single motion and resolution to do so is found on page five of the staff report, and this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any expertise? Seeing none. I'd like to know if the appellant, if there's someone from the appellant's side who's here, speak on this matter.
Yes, on Zoom, we have David Shore listed as the appellant.
Okay, so we'll give him three minutes.
David Shore, you're in as a panelist now. You should be able to unmute and begin.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Hi, yes, we can hear you, and we also have your presentation. Just give us a second.
Thank you, that'll leave in a certain minute. Thank you for that, staff. Okay, we can begin. Thank you, staff and commissioners. If there are, am I coming through there?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay. If there are commissioners who have not visited the project site in person, I request that this item be continued until such time as that can happen. Viewing the site and potential impacts in person is very different than what is presented to you on paper. I also must take exception to the characterization of this hotel as moderate cost. It's, the applicant contentions of pricing are not credible, but this slide is a rendering of the project from a recent newspaper article. All that's lacking here is a unicorn and a rainbow. The placing of the fence and bicycle rider prominently in the foreground minimizes the appearance and bulk of the hotel in the background. So, a reality check is called for. Next slide, please. This is the current view of the project site from Highway one, the designated view corridor. On the far side of the site, trees 18 to 20 feet high screen existing buildings on Main Street. Beyond and above that, we see expansive and uninterrupted protected views of inland hills. Next slide, please. By masking the building outlines from the story poles, when viewed from Highway one, the 34-foot-high and nearly 500-foot-long structures completely blot out protective view shed and present as a wall. Please toggle back to the previous slide and forward again. And then the next slide. Next slide. This view zooms in a bit from the same perspective, also from Highway one, current conditions, and here we see masking the story pole outlines focusing on the much-discussed 32-foot separation between the two buildings, which is claimed to ameliorate the visual impacts. As you can see, the gap between the buildings doesn't amount to much at all, and the views of the inland hills remain obscured. Next slide, please. Existing conditions as viewed from southbound Highway one, a view which the city refused to consider in any form. Above the trees and Main Street housing, please note the expansive and uninterrupted view of protected inland hills. Next slide, please. With building outlines masked, inland hills are completely obscured. Our certified LCP embodies the values of our community and the requirements of the Coastal Act. This project is clearly noncompliant with six sections of Chapter nine of the LCP by plain reading. It is also noncompliant with six sections of related IP. This unneeded hotel project would permanently and drastically alter the visual character of this prominent entry point to Half Moon Bay. That change would impact thousands and thousands of visitors and residents on a daily basis. That is an LCP issue. Making a determination of substantial issue, which would simply validate the findings of the HMB Planning Commission, does not appear to be even a close call here and would be very appropriate. I am available for questions from the commissioners as this proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so do we have a representative for the applicant?
I guess we have Greg Jamison here in person.
Okay. And you'll also get three minutes.
And then.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. My name is Greg Jamison. I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay, and my family, we moved here in 1985. We've been here for 40 years, and this is our 40th year that our auto dealership has been in business, and we're really proud to be, you know, a part of our community of Half Moon Bay. For this project, it has been nine years now. We've been going through the process, through all the environmental, and we've attended several city meetings, whether they be Planning Commission, Architectural Advisory, and also City Council. We've also had input and followed city staff recommendations, worked with the Coastal Commission staff, and much input from the public as well. Have a small presentation that I'd like to do on the PowerPoint.
This first slide is an aerial view showing two key entrances into Half Moon Bay. On the left is how you enter town from Highway 92, and on the right, from Highway one coming from Santa Cruz. Our property as shown is outlined, is at the southern gateway to the city and is bordered by Highway one and Main Street. Our location provides guests easy access by way of walking or biking to visit the shops and restaurants, and across Highway one to the wave crest open space area. This is a very popular area to enjoy the trails and onwards to the beaches. Looking at the site, you can see the proposed buildings are positioned with substantial setbacks from Highway one versus existing development on other properties that are built along the highway. This setback provides two acres, 40% of the five-acre site, which provides a buffer between the structures and the seasonal wetlands along the highway. This area includes bike paths, walking paths, park benches, and restoration of native species. This new area is considered visitor-serving by allowing new public access and providing new views to the west over the wave crest open space area. This view shows a simulation of the southern gateway. The first proposed hotel structure is about one and a half football fields to the north. As shown here, on site, there's a two-rel fence that runs along the west edge of the proposed bike path. Similar look is seen along the coastal trails. We would like to bring that same look to those traveling Highway one. This would greatly enhance our southern gateway to the city. This last slide is a view of the southern end of the hotel. As seen here, it is our goal to restore native landscape and create an environment for all to enjoy. I thank all of those who have participated over the years in helping get this design and look of this development to where it is today. This would be a great benefit to supporting our shops, restaurants, and our.
I will be here for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any qualified members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
Yes, we have Doug Garrison from the city.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. I'm Doug Garrison with the city. We do not have a formal presentation. This is basically just to introduce myself, and we have a relatively new community development director who you may know from her work in Marin County. She's attending remotely. We submitted some brief comments. Essentially, we want to thank staff. There was a lot of administrative record to work through. We think they've done a good job. We support their recommendation of a finding of no significant issue, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we had 10 other speakers signed up, and we believe they're all qualified to speak, starting in person, Tasha Levinson, followed by David Pasternak, and then Alec Hogg. Tasha Levinson.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I think Half Moon Bay is really lucky to have this possibility of something that could truly revitalize the southern end of our city. And I know that one of the concerns has been expressed about this blocking some of the views. The views on the freeways you're driving by would be blocked for maybe about 60 seconds, if that. It's just, it's not really that much, the views I see is a very minimal thing. I do see the revitalization, the bringing the city together, the encouraging people to walk from one end to the other, which would be about a two-mile, very pleasant walk, is really a good thing and something good for our community, something I think that would also help the other local hotels in the area by just encouraging people. Sometimes economic vitality and prosperity brings forth more of that. I think this is an opportunity for us to have that. Thank you.
And thank you. Before we continue, Chair, are we giving two minutes or three minutes?
Two.
Okay. David Pasternak, followed by Alec Hogg, and then Hazel Jones.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to address you briefly. My name is David Pasternak. For 45 years, I've lived several miles south of town, so I have really a dual interest in this deliberation. First, I see the site on a daily basis, driving north past Half Moon Bay. And second, I'm in an area which is far less developed, and there's always been a big concern about loosening of your standards for development, leapfrogging, minimizing standards, and so on, and I feel particularly vulnerable for that reason. You have voluminous material that's been submitted. Testimony has gone on and on, and I have to say, I do have great sympathy for the applicant here. Nobody should wait 10 years for an adjudication, but that's just the system we set up in California. I'd ask you to please not rely exclusively on the summary you get from your staff, nor on any of the other summaries. Do your own research, figure it out. There is dispute about a lot of detail, and that can only really be clarified by your taking the time to independently assess that information. And that goes not only for the visual obstruction issue, but also the alleged economic benefit to the city, the visitor-serving aspects of this, and some of the other aspects as well. Your staff denies any intention of accepting what they refer to as a, quote, "lighter" version of the local plan. However, that's exactly what you're being asked to do. Everybody agrees there's an obstruction, but maybe it's not that big a deal, so let's just let it slide. They say it's not going to be a precedent, but there's also mention in your staff's own report essentially saying, well, it's not that big a deal because, and I quote, "the area is not without its large structures as is." If that's not precedent, tell me what is. And my concern is that that kind of thinking is going to lead to more and more of the same. So thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Alec Hogg, Hazel Jones, Dan Hagerty.
to speak. And thank you for your, spending your time to preserve the beauty of the California coast, to protect the public's access to the beauty, and to ensure the Coastal Act is followed. I've been a resident of Half Moon Bay for 33 years, and I'm extremely grateful for the efforts of the people who fought to preserve the beauty of this community. Development's necessary, and it can provide more funds to pay for schools, for local programs. It can help local businesses prosper, however. However successfully delivering these revenues requires that we keep the coast side beautiful, erode the beauty, and visitors will find other destinations. The town has developed a plan, the LCP, that preserves the beauty of the town while simultaneously allowing businesses to grow. As a result, our community can thrive while maintaining its beauty. The many meetings in this project's review process make me wonder, why are we spending so much time and effort to find a way to work around the guidelines of the LCP? Why is it that we are trying to find ways to approve destruction of the beauty of the coast side? Approval of this project or denial of the appeal is an invitation for all potential developers to ignore the Coastal Act and the LCP when they want to build a new development. In my letter, I stated, "If approved, this project will encourage developers in this community to pursue additional development that disregard the LCP. It will encourage city councils and other areas to ignore their planning commissions. It will encourage developers to ignore the LCPs and pursue exceptions from the Coastal Commission." And I made these because, these observations, because the building would be one of the largest buildings in the city. If approved, if approved, the project changes the character of the surrounding areas by establishing a new normal for buildings. This building will undoubtedly block views of the hills beyond Half Moon Bay for a long distance, and the city council approved the project despite the fact that the project does not conform with the standards set in multiple sections of the LCP as determined by its own planning committee. So the developer of this project could and should build a structure. But I ask you to take over the process and enforce the LCP and the Coastal Act. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Hazel Jones, followed by Dan Hagerty, and then James Benjamin. Dan Hagerty or James Benjamin if Hazel wasn't here?
Good afternoon, Dan Hagerty, El Granada. Thank you for allowing me to give comments. I want to say, first of all, there's a lot of people that come to the coast that appreciate everything that this Coastal Commission has done over the years to provide a beautiful, safe access to the coast. And so I just want to hats off for everybody here. Starting out with that, you know, I've lived on the coast my whole life and I've been lucky to truly appreciate that. As far as this appeal, I think that the proposed Hyatt Hotel project is definitely too large. I disagree with the staff's interpretations. I feel there are significant impacts to the views of the hills and the ridge lines, and it does raise a substantial issue with the project's conformance with the Half Moon Bay LCP. The project is not visually compatible with the surrounding land and development. This project says nothing to visitors arriving that they are entering a small seaside town. This project will have an enormous impact on the visual impression of our town at the southern gateway to our historic downtown. The visitors that come here expect to see the open historic feel of Half Moon Bay. It defines our town and is what, and is what makes this such a unique place to be. This is why so many people recommend our town to others. It would be much better to consider smaller and more spaced apart buildings, buildings which would be more fitting for the town's character. The recently constructed Occidental Hotel Building recreation at the corner of Palisade and Mill Street is a great example of expanding the historic feel of the area. The Menlo Park Rosewood Hotel on Sand Hill Road is a relative concept example of a cluster of buildings in an equally sensitive area instead of the current massive proposal.
Thank you so much, sir.
I strongly urge you to vote to support this, to support this appeal and to take jurisdiction over.
Thank you, sir.
CDP applications.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. James Benjamin, and then on Zoom, Margaret Gossett. James Benjamin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff. My name is James Benjamin. I'm a newcomer at Half Moon Bay. I've only been there 35 years. And I have a frequent visitor at Coastal Commission proceedings. I'm well-known to staff and staff is well-known to me. It would not be an exaggeration to say that I love the Commission and I love the staff. So thank you for your work. That said, my name is on the local coastal program that is the basis for this document. I chaired the Planning Commission that approved it during the last of my four terms on the Planning Commission. We're a small town and our town occasionally disagrees, hopefully with goodwill, and this is one of those projects where we have that disagreement. The night the Planning Commission found the project not compatible, the developer and I sat down and had wine and cheese. And I was sitting with another member of the Planning Commission who worked with me on the land use plan, he's on the opposite side of this issue, and the Vice Mayor, who feels that this issue, this project should go forward. So we know how to disagree amiably, but I must say, I feel that we've lost our ability to apply the visual resource protections to our hillsides. In my comments at this, at the local level, I said, "I hope that the staff could give us some guidance for how we could interpret and effectively control development that obstructed the view of our hills." And unfortunately, I don't feel like I have that. I feel like I have a, yeah, it does obstruct, but it's not that big a deal. I don't know what is a big deal. You know, the LCP represented a compromise and we're supposed to be upholding that rather than making further compromises. So I'm troubled by the project as much as I appreciate the reasons that the proponents want to use it. Commissioner O'Hanlon has asked me to reiterate her concern about the project. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. Margaret Gossett on Zoom, and then I see we have another one, Roberta Geltz in person. So Margaret Gossett, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Margaret. Though I serve as the Planning Commissioner in Half Moon Bay, today I speak as a private citizen. This project raises a key question. Why is it treated differently than the American Tin Canary Hotel in Pacific Grove? There is a misrepresentation on page three of the addendum. Coastal Commission staff worked diligently with ATC to ensure that project balanced affordability and environmental responsibility with a three-part program. 18 low-cost family rooms, a group wing with 64 beds across 16 units, and 300 nights of low-cost or no-cost days for underserved groups, including 150 free nights. Should we expect, shouldn't we expect the same thoughtful approach here? Let's not confuse box checking with compliance. The Hyatt project does not meet the Coastal Act's mandate to maximize lower-cost access or protect scenic resources. The staff calls it a moderate-cost hotel with only six lower-cost rooms, but the applicant has made no enforceable pricing commitments, offered no oversight, and secured no long-term affordability projections. Without safeguards, the other 96 rooms risk becoming high-cost in all but name. Six lower-cost rooms, just 6% of the total, fall far short of the 15% to 25% target for projects without full low-cost lodging. A minimal in lieu fee, no off-site mitigation, and no clear justification fail to meet LCP standards. While benches and bike paths add value, they don't replace affordable lodging. People need beds, not just extras. The American Tin Canary Hotel proves genuine affordability is possible. The Hyatt project risks setting a precedent where gestures replace real commitments to equity and access. I urge you to find a substantial issue exists and conduct a full de novo review with strong and. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberta Geltz.
Well, as you said, my name is Roberta Geltz. I've lived on the coast for 45 years, first in El Granada, then Half Moon Bay, and now in Moss Beach. So I've driven this stretch of land many, many times, and of course, our coast is known for the, being right on the ocean, of course, and the hills are kind of a secondary thing, but every time I drive by, I have this feeling of joy and it's so beautiful here and so grateful to be living here. It'd be a shame to obstruct those hills as we drive by. The hotel is already, the proposed hotel is also, also close to a very big other hotel right next to Cameron's Restaurant. I don't think we need two hotels as you enter Half Moon Bay from the south. I think it would be a real eyesore. This town seems to be, since I've been here for 45 years, it seems to be leaning towards favoring developers and those with a lot of money. What about the locals who live here? What about saving our community from too much touristy, tourist is, tourists, sorry, and too much construction obstructing all the beauty here? The builder of the hotel says that he will have, as the previous person said, that he'll have low-cost rooms. This hotel that we're in right now charges, I checked this morning, they charge $360 a night and $380 for higher rooms with a better view. I don't think that a Hyatt hotel will charge less than that, and I think that's something to really look into and to notice the facts about this. There's also the matter of all the other hotels in town.
Thank you. And we were missing two names. If you're either in person or on Zoom, please raise your hand. Those names are Hazel Jones and then Katie Murdock. Hazel Jones and Katie Murdock. So I see two hands raised. I'm going to allow you to unmute under the name RGS. Can you please unmute and state your name?
Hello, my name is Hazel Joannis, and I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay as well as a former Planning Commissioner. I hope you've had the time to read my comment letter. As a Commissioner, I voted to not, to deny this project due to the confusion among the newly-assigned city planners regarding this project's scope, including its alternatives and their lack of review on the project's conformance and the existing LUP implementation plan. As you know, the city does not have an updated implementation plan and they do not, and this project, because the city staff was new on this project, they didn't really apply the LCP Implementation Plan, Chapter 18. So I urge you to take a look at this properly and to consider that this project raises to a substantial issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the other name that's raising their hand, Leslie Lacco. Are you Katie Murdock? You should be able to unmute.
I'm Leslie Lacco. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Half Moon Bay. Doug briefly introduced me at the beginning and I just wanted to let you know I'm here and available to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. And we have no other people signed up?
All right, I'd like to bring it back to staff, so we'll close the public hearing, and then I'll bring it back to staff for any comments on, on what was stated during the.
Sure, just, just to clarify, there was a reference to this being similar to the ATC Hotel Project. The Commission will be, will remember that that was a high-cost resort in the City of Pacific Grove, and because it was a high-cost resort and because of the LCP policies that dictated as much, there was a lower-cost mitigation package that was associated with that, that was derived from the 25% that we've talked about over and over again. This is, as we've articulated in the addendum that was distributed a couple days ago, this is a moderate-cost hotel in the way in which the Commission looks at moderate-cost hotels. And historically, the Commission has not required lower-cost mitigation packages for moderate-cost hotels. I'd note at the last Commission hearing, there was some discussion of that maybe the Commission should start doing that, but historically, the Commission has not, and has looked to other sorts of public benefits that Isabel described. Our present in this project, and this project also includes six lower-cost rooms, which is unusual for a moderate-cost hotel, because it's not, it's not typically something that is, that are, that is included for a project like that. So I think we're firmly behind the project with respect to it being a moderate-cost product with important benefits, including six lower-cost rooms. So I just wanted to clarify that. We're available for questions.
All right, I'll bring it back to the Commission for questions, comments, action. Commissioner Hart and then Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks. I mean, I, I have to say, for me personally, I think this rises, there's enough controversy surrounding it. It's a major project. It's in a view corridor, a very important view corridor. Sorry, I'm speaking loud enough. I understand that it's moderate cost, but I don't know what that means in this context. That wasn't, that's not clear to me. I think there is a strong need, but, you know, this is a substantial issue hearing, a project of this magnitude that's going to have these kind of visual impacts. I think it's worthy of a full hearing, so I will be voting for substantial issue.
Commissioner Wilson, then Commissioner O'Malley.
I don't know where I have to stand on that necessarily, but I do know for a couple, a couple issues or a couple things we have to understand is that one of the ways that we create more affordable visitor-serving is to create more visitor-serving to a certain degree in from the, from the, from the market space. I will also say that these types of hotels in communities like this actually reduce the pressure for short-term rental market as well. So I think that's important to consider. What would be the substantive visual modifications that the, that the Commission might support or if this was to go to, you know, what, how would we do that and what, in what way would that occur?
Well, it would depend. I mean, if the Commission were to articulate what the, the specific impacts were with respect to the project today, we would have a sense of that if that's, that's the way the Commission were to go. I mean, but ultimately, if this were to be a substantial issue or to be found, we'd bring you back a recommendation with our best take on what the LCP requires for the site visually and otherwise, but in terms of your visual question.
And the, the reason I ask that is because, again, it's one of those projects where it's like, mm, I could design that better, but that doesn't mean necessarily that I don't, it's hard for me to get to the threshold part of this, and so I'll let other Commissioners see if they want to convince me to get to that place. Thanks.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Chair. Just in brief, I'm going to align myself with Chair Hart. I think that, given, again, and I don't know if this will necessarily convince my fellow Commissioner, but I think even the fact that within the city itself, the Planning Division, Department and the, and the ultimate decision, so it shows that reasonable minds can, can vary here, I think that I would like to see this come to a de novo review and would like to find a substantial issue. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner O'Malley.
Yeah, I, I like the, I mean, the location looks like infill, but it does sound like design and also the affordability piece. I don't know what moderate cost is, and I kind of suspect that moderate cost is what a lot of people would think is expensive. So I would like to have a chance to look at the affordability component more thoroughly.
Okay. Other Commissioners? Okay, seeing none.
Wait, I got just a process question.
Sure.
So if the, the, when you're saying that, because I'm, I want to be clear that for this Commission, like we would have to agree that there's an impact to view shed of the hills, we have to identify what that, what that is, right? I mean, what it is that the, or no, we don't have to do that today?
You would have to identify that you think there's a substantial issue.
That's it.
In terms of what, what the, what the city did. I mean, for reasons, obviously, so if you're articulating reasons that are related to view shed, you're articulating reasons related to wanting to know more about the cost structure, those are all reasons. But yeah, you would have to find a substantial issue.
So are there any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. I do have a couple questions and then a question around process. I'm just wondering if you all can highlight the grounds upon which the appeal has been filed for this specific item.
Isabel could probably walk through it in more detail. There were, there were a number of different contentions. The major contention was in terms of the public view issues, and then there were secondary components that had to do with wetland setbacks, agricultural conversion, water quality, hydrology, sorts of things, and obviously low-cost visitor-serving and the question about costs.
So. So, so low-cost, low-cost accommodations was a grounds upon which the appeal was filed?
It's one of the grounds, yes.
And then I guess the question around process, I mean, is this something that if there's three or more commissioners who wish to have a de novo hearing, then this would be, the substantial issue would be found, and we have to vote on that?
It's a majority vote at this point. The three or more is just on the question of whether to hold the hearing that you've just been holding.
Okay, great. I'll just say, driving through here, you know, when I tend to go from Santa Cruz to San Francisco, because obviously, Hubble One's really beautiful. I mean, there's a lot of extremely beautiful view sheds. What makes me more inclined to support the project as I was looking at it online is that it's like right on the edge of town. And pretty much once you pass this strip, which is, you know, not suitable for, you know, any type of productive agriculture, you're in the middle, you're in the Half Moon Bay. And so, you know, because of the fact that it's really on this wedge of property that's, that's right on the edge of town, I mean, I could see if it was like in the middle of nowhere, you build this gigantic hotel, that would definitely raise concerns for me. But because of the fact that it's on this kind of marginal ag land area that's right on the edge of town, it really makes me more inclined to support, to find a substantial issue and support the staff's recommendation. That being said, I mean, I think it's, you know, I hear of the concerns of my other commissioners that brought it up, and I think, you know, if we just take it to a vote and we can see how the votes land and come back to it. I do, I am sympathetic also to the fact that the property owner's been working on this for nine years. And I think that they've really come to a balance in terms of trying to keep the height down while trying, and also since it's not high-end, it's a moderate rate with some low cost in there. That also has me more inclined to want to support it because oftentimes what we see are very high-end hotels that people are trying to build, and then we're fighting to try to get them to bring it down. And I know that the Ritz that's here, that's on the coast, is a very high-end hotel. And so this kind of balances out the amenities in terms of being able, able to have something that's moderate rate in an area where some of the only hotels you can find are really high-end hotels. So that ends my comments. I just want to thank everybody for participating here today. And then, so I'll look to the commissioners to see if somebody has a motion. They'd like to entertain.
Okay, I'll do the motion. And so this requires a majority to approve or deny, but, okay, great. I move that the commission determine the appeal number A-2-HMB-25-003 raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under Section 30603 of the Coastal Act, and I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
So we have a motion by Wilson, second by Harmon. The maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. I'll turn it to Mrs. Miller for a roll call vote on the item.
Commissioner O'Malley?
No.
O'Malley, no. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart?
No.
Hart, no. Commissioner Redoni?
No.
Redoni, no. Commissioner Not Off?
No.
Not Off, no. Commissioner Uranga?
No.
Uranga, no. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is four yes, five no.
Okay, so does that mean, do we need another vote? Or does that go to de novo? Okay, great. All right, so moving on, thank you all, and I guess we'll have that come back to the commission at a future date.
Do we need to say that substantial issue is found? I'm sorry, through the chair.
Yes, it means that substantial issue has been found.
Thank you, just to clarify. Thank you, Chair.
No problem. All right. So that moves us on to item number 12, Central Coast District Deputy Director Report. And so I'll turn it back over to Dan Carl for a presentation on this item.
Yes, thank you, Chair Cummings. Today, we're reporting four waivers and two emergency coastal permits. We're, I'll just wait a second.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll take a brief break while we clear the room.
Oh, I did, I took her out. I drove the car out to the harbor and I walked her around the path. Came back. Well, she's, so she's, she's active. She ain't walking or playing. Sure. Yes, she is. She's definitely waiting.
All right, I think we're ready to go.
Okay, so that brings us to item 12. This is the Central Coast District Director's report. We're reporting four waivers and two emergency coastal permits. We're not aware of any objections or controversy regarding these matters. So the question's whether three or more commissioners object, and if not, the commission will concur.
All right, any expertes? Seeing none. Any members of the public sign to speak on this item?
No speakers.
Seeing none. Three or more commissioners object to concurrence? Seeing none, the commission concurs. So that moves us on to item number 14. A, B, C, and D, which will all be heard as one item. And so I'll turn it back to staff for a presentation on this item.
And I will pass?
Go ahead.
Yes, we are good, we are doing a combined hearing on these four items, and I'm going to ask Ryan Maroni, supervisor in our Central Coast District Office, to give the staff presentation. We do have a PowerPoint.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Item 14A, B, C, and D are appeals of San Luis Obispo County approvals of four CDPs for four separate projects that altogether authorize two new single-family residences and two new mixed-use projects located on four separate parcels in the unincorporated community of Los Osos in San Luis Obispo County. This slide shows the location of the projects, which are being reviewed together in one combined staff report and hearing because the appellant's contentions are all centered around the same substantive question as to whether there is an adequate water supply to serve them. Next slide, please. Slide two shows the four county-approved projects. Mueller Residence would consist of an approximately 2,000-square-foot residence and garage on Alamo Drive. The Pure Wall Residence would consist of an approximately 3,500-square-foot residence and garage on Madera Street. And the Lee Motel and Mixed Use Projects consist of a combined seven motel units, a restaurant, and laundry facility, all on Second Street. Next slide, please. The appellant contends that the county's CDP approvals raise LCP consistency questions related to the adequacy of water to serve the developments, arguing that there is not sufficient water and thus the project should be denied. Staff respectively disagrees. The commission has spent considerable time over the past few years evaluating Los Osos' water supply issues, including groundwater health and any coastal resource concerns associated with community withdrawals, and has concluded that the current best available science demonstrates that the Los Osos groundwater basin is not in overdraft, that withdrawals are not resulting in any significant coastal resource harm, and that there is sufficient water to serve new water-using development. Specifically, the Los Osos Basin Management Committee, the entity created to comprehensively manage and monitor water resources to stop overdraft and seawater intrusion, has shown that the community has used less water for several years now than the basin's calculated sustainable and safe yield, defined as the amount of water that can be used without advancing seawater intrusion and meeting all applicable drinking water standards. And based on this information, the commission recently approved updates to the LCP reflecting that the community's water supply is healthy enough to support a modest amount of new water-using development, like the projects in question here, subject to strict monitoring of the basin going forward to ensure that it remains in a sustainable yield state. Thus, the commission has determined that there is an adequate and sustainable water supply for Los Osos to serve new water-using development, and applies that understanding to these cases as well. We would also note that since the commission's June 2024 approval of the Los Osos LCP amendments that provided for the types of projects subject to this appeal, staff has continued its dialogue with the appellant's and with the county's groundwater expert, including to stay up to date on the best available science and any new trends or causes for concern. While the appellant's have raised concerns about elevated chloride levels at a particular well and generally continue to indicate that the commission is wrong to determine the water supply to be healthy enough for new development, staff again respectfully disagrees. As discussed in the staff report, we have reviewed all of the submitted materials, including with the county's groundwater sustainability experts, who have opined that the basin is healthy enough to support new development without any significant adverse coastal resource impacts. Next slide, please. Staff therefore recommends that the commission determine that the appeal contentions do not raise a substantial issue with respect to LCP conformance and that the commission decline to take jurisdiction over the CDP applications for these four projects. Because there are four separate projects, the commission will need to make four separate motions in order to implement the staff recommendation. And the motions are found at page five of the staff report. This concludes staff presentation.
All right, thank you very much. We have representatives for the appellant's.
Yes, we have Patrick McGibney.
Okay, so we will go ahead and give them three minutes.
Patrick, you're in as a panelist. You should be able to unmute and begin.
Chair, I'm sorry, because these are four combined.
Oh, that's right. That's right, 10 minutes, sorry.
And Patrick, go ahead. Patrick, I see that you're unmuted. Now I see that you muted yourself, but your camera is turning on. Try to unmute again. We can see you now.
Can you hear me?
And now we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, but Chair, you've given me 10 minutes for the four appeals, not three.
No, we're giving you 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. Just a minute here, please. All right, thank you. My name's Patrick McGibney, speaking for the appellant, the Los Osos Sustainability Group. Before I begin on the appeals, let me assure you, I am just as tired of these appeals as you are. I do not enjoy being in conflict with an agency I respect and support, but please hear me out. First, let's be clear. The Los Osos Water Basin was written by the Basin Management Committee, the BMC, by order of the court and was mandated in the stipulated judgment to be followed. Its stated purpose was to secure a sustainable water supply first for the current population. I don't make this stuff up, so I'll cite page numbers and quote "direct sources." The above information can be found on page one of the basin plan, where it also says, quote, "It is vital that bold, decisive, and immediate actions be taken to stop seawater intrusion in the lower aquifer and water quality degradation in the upper aquifer," end of quote. This has not happened. Three of the four primary targets for sustainability not only remain unmet, but have gotten worse: nitrate levels, chloride levels, and water levels. Those three are actually measured metrics with data supporting those metrics. The one data point that has met its target is the one that is not measured but calculated based on estimates, this basin's yield metric. On page 37 of the basin plan, it says, and I quote, "Accurate data regarding groundwater production is necessary to implement the basin plan. And with over 40% of the basin production based on estimates, the BMC may not be able to accurately predict measures to stop seawater intrusion using the basin yield metric and other metrics. It is vitally important that the basin yield metric be as accurate as possible, i.e. based on data rather than estimates, to ensure proper actions are taken to stop seawater intrusion as early as possible," end quote. High chloride readings are primary indicators of seawater intrusion. The most recent basin management report presented by the BMC Executive Director in April showed overall chloride levels reached 249 milligrams per liter, 100 milligrams being the target. Nitrates were measured at 15.7 milligrams per liter, 10 being the target. It also showed water levels are only at 4.18, or 4.1 feet, eight feet being the target. The basin plan makes predictions about water levels on page 325, where it says, and I quote, "If the basin plan programs are implemented as described, it is expected the water level metric would reach its target of eight feet by 2022," end quote. That was three years ago, and we're only halfway there. The basin plan also warns that if chloride levels reach 250 milligrams, it indicates the basin plan isn't working or it's not being implemented properly. We are now at 249, too close to the 250. Red flags should be going up, not claims that the basin is sustainable. The county can claim high chloride levels can be expected, but the basin plan differs. The basin plan specifically says that stopping seawater intrusion is the primary goal. Yet the Basin Management Committee allowed it to advance for seven years and has only recently determined that the newest plan is not to let it advance any further, which unfortunately it has. Long-term sustainability is now being inferred based on an estimated production rate with over 40% extraction still unmetered and an estimated sustainable yield and one year of above-average rainfall. I would like to refer you to the letter that this commission sent to the county on April 19th, 2022, which made the accurate statement, and I quote, "The purpose of this letter is to highlight issues of mutual concern as they relate to proposed development in the community of Los Osos. As the county is well aware, from the county's designation of the, of an LCP Resource Management System Alert Level 3 for water supply where demand exceeds existing supply, and it still does, and from the 2015 designation by the California Department of Water Resources for the Los Osos Valley groundwater basin as a high-priority basin due to its conditions of critical overdraft. There is insufficient water to serve even the existing development in Los Osos without coastal resource harm," end of quote. That is what you wrote. When the basin plan, or the basin management committee, took over management of our basin, as a result, that high-priority designation to a low priority for the state. But the best science available, which is based on actual data rather than estimates, shows chloride levels climbing and seawater advancing. Retired hydrologist Lynette Brooks explained this very clearly in her detailed report she had sent you, which your staff briefly referred to in a footnote on pages 12 and 13 of their latest report, where they basically dismissed it as old news, nothing new. Ms. Brooks' report had presented data that was highly relevant and had not been used, outlining why our basin is not sustainable. That staff report also inexplicably claims that the basin is not just, quote, "trending towards sustainability," end quote, as it did last year, but is now, quote, "sustainable for the long term," end quote. Nothing has happened in the last year for staff to be making these claims. There is no new evidence nor data to support this. Actually, the opposite has happened, with documented rise in chloride levels and a drop in water levels. Now, it may be easy to discount Ms. Brooks' report, as they did as just, quote, "different conclusions to the same data," end quote. But it's not so simple to dismiss the state agency that oversees the sustainability of the majority of California's 515 water basins. Though the Department of Water Resources may not be overseeing our basin since it was adjudicated, they still warn the Los Osos Water Basin is in condition of critical overdraft, and this is stated in the latest director's report of our basin in April. The county and the staff have no documented data to show the Los Osos Water Basin is sustainable and is no longer in overdraft. Your rationale, as stated in staff report THA 6-2024, is that the basin has been within its safe yield with the basin yield metric under 80 for years and is therefore sustainable. Let's review what the Department of Water Resources says about this. In Best Management Practices, it says, quote, "The basin yield metric is neither an indication of nor proof of sustainability. Sustainability is only shown when pumping within the sustainable yield, and there are no undesirable results such as seawater intrusion," end of quote. This is paraphrased, but is exactly what DWR says. As you expressed in your letter to the county of 2022, you say, and I quote, "Unless and until conclusive evidence is provided showing that these types of developments do not lead to an increase in water use on a given site, we believe that the precautionary..." to an increase in water use on a given site, we believe that the precautionary principle should be applied," end of quote. Our hope would be that you take your own advice in your decision-making and use the precautionary principle moving forward. The precautionary principle says, quote, "When conditions arise to ecosystems and resources that create credible threat of harm, precautionary measures should be taken, even if cause-and-effect relationships are not fully established," end of quote. If your staff is right, that there are just two different, albeit dramatically opposed conclusions to the same data, it would appear that conditions have arisen where credible threats of harm to the community's only water supply are possible, and precaution needs to be taken in moving forward. The old steady-state model program 20 years ago is being replaced within this year. New data will be available within months, and if Ms. Brooks is correct in her assessment, any additional intensification of our water basin will only worsen the critical overdraft that DWR says our basin is experiencing. This may not be reversible. In ending, if your staff disagrees with any of what has just been presented, they are not disagreeing with the Sustainability Group, but with the Department of Water Resources, the court's stipulated judgment, and the basin plan. The Los Osos Sustainability Group asks that you deny these projects and any others until updated information is available that conclusively shows our basin to be sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have the applicants available?
We have two people signed up under the applicant who wish to speak, Matthew Davis and April Winneke, as well as three with the applicant that are available for questions. We also received a presentation from Blaine Reilly, the Director of Groundwater Sustainability Department of the County of San Luis Obispo, but we don't have a sign up for them to speak. We only received their presentation. So, but we'll start with Matthew Davis and April Winneke.
Okay, let me just, let me pause for one second. As a matter of process, since we have two people from the applicants, should we give them five minutes each, or how, because we just gave the appellant 10 minutes?
Three each? I'd say three each, because they are each just representing one of the projects. The appellant was speaking to all four.
Okay, great, so we'll give them three minutes each.
Okay, Matthew Davis first.
Hi, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Matthew Davis, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant Carl Johnson regarding the projects at 1315 and 1325 Second Street in Los Osos. These existing developments of a three-unit motel with laundry and a mixed-use restaurant with four motel units are on developed sites, both located within the urban service area and connected to public water. Both projects have been issued a valid continuing-to-serve letter from the Los Osos Community Service District. As we've heard, the appeal focuses solely on the water supply, but as commission staff clearly outlined, the best available science confirms that the Los Osos Groundwater Basin is indeed in a sustainable state. This project is, neither of these projects increase, propose a vast increase in water use, and there's no evidence, as you've stated, of adverse impact to coastal resources. We support the staff's recommendation that these appeals do not raise substantial issue and respectfully ask the commission to allow the local approvals to stand. Thank you for your time today and appreciate the review.
Thank you. April Winneke?
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings, Commissioners, April Winneke, representing Denise Muller. Denise Muller is proposing a 1,970 square foot single-family residence in Los Osos. Admittedly, the water supply issues are very complex, so we are very much relying on the technical expertise of commission staff and the county here. We believe that these issues have been fully vetted, as reflected in the commission certification of the local coastal program for Los Osos. So with that, we really appreciate your time today and that of staff analyzing these issues and bringing this before you and are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. And again, we just had the three other people available for questions, Denise Muller, Julia Oberhoff, and Dwayne Oberhoff.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll bring it back to staff for any response to what was said during the comments.
Yes, thank you, Chair Cummings. So I'd like to make a few points in response to the comments made, and mostly just to summarize kind of where we're at with the Los Osos water supply issues. So as you recall, the commission last year found there to be inadequate and sustainable water supply to serve a limited amount of new development. That determination was based on evidence by the county's Los Osos Basin Management Committee, or BMC, and Groundwater Sustainability Office that the community was using less water than its sustainable yield. Now, sustainable yield is a familiar concept in groundwater management and basically stands for an amount of water being pumped that's not leading to any adverse impacts, including on things like seawater intrusion, contaminated drinking water quality, or impacts to protected resources like creeks and wetlands. The BMC continuously studies the basin and identifies its sustainable yield. And so the commission approved the LCP based on that understanding and including a requirement that development is only allowed if the basin is within that yield. Now, to be clear, that the basin is pumped within its sustainable yield does not mean there are no issues with the water supply in the basin anymore. The basin was overpumped for decades, and it does suffer from seawater intrusion and nitrate contamination from, from too many septic systems that are, that were historically there. These will continue to be issues for many years to fully resolve, and in some locations, including based on complex groundwater hydrogeology, it may actually get a little worse before it gets better. But, and this is quite important, we knew this. In fact, much of the deliberation and discussion as part of last year's LCP hearing was on this point, in terms of differentiating between the basin's inputs and outputs as a whole versus discrete locations that suffered from legacy pollutants and the amount of time it would take to fully heal. So in our view, and confirmed by the county's groundwater experts, the issues raised today are not new, but are actually consistent with our overall understanding of where the science tells us the basin is. Yes, there are still some places with high chloride levels, but the overall basin, based on the totality of information we have and confirmed by the county's groundwater watchdogs, is within its sustainable yield. And based on that, new water-using development can be found LCP-consistent, and we continue to recommend no substantial issue on these appeals. Lastly, I will just also reiterate that we do continue to take these issues seriously. We've met with the appellant and discussed their water supply concerns. We've reviewed their submitted materials that, that was referenced by the, the appellant earlier and analyzed them, which is written into the staff report, and discussed them with the county's groundwater sustainability experts to best understand the current situation and what is going on, including because the LCP speaks to using the best available science. So we are not making these determinations in a vacuum, but instead are relying on those tasks with ensuring the basin remains sustainable. And if the BMC identifies the basin to not be in its sustainable state, we will make sure that that's reflected in the county's CDP decisions moving forward. With that, we note the county is here to answer any questions, particularly any technical ones about basin sustainability, including their Director of Groundwater Sustainability, and we are available for questions, of course, as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thanks for the reminder about the action that the board took last year, because we had a very long meeting about this topic, and this is just, you know, after the action we took then, now people are starting to move forward with trying to build homes on their properties, and so that's kind of got us to where we are today. So with that, I'll just see if there's any Commissioners who have question comments or who would like to take action on this item. Commissioner O'Malley?
I'll make a motion.
So there's four motions to be made.
Do we just do all four at the same time? Is that how we're gonna roll, or are we gonna do one at a time?
One at a time, probably.
I would do them one at a time, yeah.
All right, here we go. The lawyer's not here, so let's see how it goes. All right, I move that the commission determine that appeal number A3-SLO-25-009 raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under section 30603, and I recommend a yes vote, and for the record, our attorney is in the room.
And I'll second.
Motion by Wilson, seconded by O'Malley, maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. I'm wondering if we can, is there unanimous consent? I think so. All right, that passes unanimously. Move on to the next one.
All right, motion number two, I move the commission determine that appeal number A3-SLO-25-001, zero raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under section 30603, and I recommend a yes vote.
Oh, second, sorry.
So we have a motion by Wilson, seconded by O'Malley, maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. Do I see any opposition to unanimous consent? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Move on to the next item.
Motion number three, I move that commission determine that appeal number A3-SLO-25-001 raises no, 11, excuse me, raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under section 3063, 603, excuse me, and I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
All right, motion by Wilson, seconded by O'Malley, maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. Is there any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, passes unanimously.
All right, and finally, motion number four, I move that the commission determine that appeal number A3-SLO-25-001 raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under section 30603, and I recommend a yes vote.
I'll second, and I'll just say that I've never had the opportunity to approve of the Los Osos project, and now I get to do four in one day, so it's very interesting. Second.
All right, so a motion by Wilson, seconded by O'Malley, maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. Do I see any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. And so, thank you all, the appellant and the applicant, all the people who came out on this item, which moves us to item number 15, coastal permit applications. And I just want to ask again, are these both being heard together?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, two separate items, but we're having a one combined hearing, and Mr. Maroney's gonna give our staff presentation again. We do have a PowerPoint.
All right, and then, before we begin, I just wanted to ask our counsel, so are we gonna be going into closed session after this item?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So just so that the boards are aware, we have to, we have another closed session item that we have to address that's related to items that were on yesterday's agenda, so after this item is heard, we're gonna go into closed session, and then we will have a closed session tomorrow as well on a separate item, but just so you're all aware. So with that, I'll turn it to staff for a presentation on items 15A and B.
Thank you, Chair. And bear with me, this may sound a little bit familiar. Items, they're also Los Osos projects. Items 15A and 15B are two de novo reviews of two coastal permit applications, each for a new single-family residence in the unincorporated community of, of Los Osos in San Luis Obispo County. Both of these projects were appealed before the commission approved the Los Osos Community Plan last year, and the commission found substantial issue on both, including on the basis that the commission had not yet determined the adequacy of water supply or other sustainable development parameters for the community. Now that the LCP is certified and in effect, these two CDP applications are being reviewed against those updated LCP provisions as they apply to Los Osos. And this de novo review of each CDP is being done in a combined hearing due to the similarity of issues for each proposed new home. Next slide, please. Slide 2 shows the proposed DICK residence location and plans. The proposed project is located at 1153 Eleventh Street in a residential neighborhood in the northern portion of Los Osos, noted by the red rectangle in the image to the left. The application, which mirrors the one that the county approved in 2023, is to authorize the construction of an approximately 2,500-square-foot home along with related improvements, where the site plan is shown in the image to the right, including a connection to the county's industry wastewater lines and wastewater service from the county's Los Osos wastewater treatment plant. Next slide, please. Slide 3 shows the proposed Brower Watt residence location and plans. The proposed project is located at 208 Badera Street in the residential Cabrillo Estates Community of Los Osos, where the location is noted on the left. The application, which mirrors the one the county approved in 2024, is to authorize construction of a two-story, approximately 2,500-square-foot, single-family home with an attached garage and associated site improvements, including a septic system for wastewater treatment, where the site plan and elevations are provided in the image to the right. Next slide, please. Again, in both cases, the commission found substantial issue due to the question about adequacy of water supply, wastewater treatment, and habitat protection. The commission took jurisdiction over these projects due to these concerns, including that it was premature to provide for new projects like this since the LCP had not yet been updated to include sustainable growth parameters for the Los Osos community. However, since that time, the LCP has been updated with specific parameters addressing these core water, wastewater, and habitat issues in Los Osos. As previously discussed, the commission and both the LCP update from last year, as well as through multiple subsequent CDP appeals, has evaluated the community's water supply issues in depth, taking a close look at the current best available science as it relates to groundwater health and any coastal resource impacts associated with community usage, and has determined that there is an adequate and sustainable water supply in Los Osos to serve a limited amount of new development, like the two proposed projects here, consistent with the LCP and subject to continued monitoring of the basin's health. And in these two cases, the projects are conditioned to further require off-site retrofits that will offset expected water use. Further, and also as addressed in the LCP update, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has approved the county's Habitat Conservation Plan to address issues related to protected species, and these CDPs have been conditioned to require that the permitees comply with that HCP. The condition of approval also addresses wastewater needs and water quality. In sum, the two proposed new homes represent the type of relatively minor infill residential development that has traditionally been stifled due to public services and habitat constraints, but can now move forward, given the community's concerted effort over the last few years to solve these problems, including as reflected in the Los Osos Community Plan update from last year. As proposed and conditioned, the projects meet the LCP's requirements, including for water, wastewater, and sensitive habitats, and can help meet the community's housing, housing needs. Next slide, please. Staff therefore recommends that the commission approve CDPs with the recommended special conditions for the proposed new homes. Because there are two separate projects, the commission will need to make two separate motions in order to implement staff's recommendation, and those motions are found on page four of the respective staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have representatives for, for the applicants, or the applicants themselves?
Uh, no. Or we have Jeff Edwards signed up to speak as available for questions, and we have Patrick McGibney as the appellant on, still on Zoom.
Okay, so I guess we'll give the appellant five minutes since there's two items?
He's not, he was the original appellant when these were appealed. He has no specific status now. He can comment on the.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just gonna get to that, yeah.
Then, we'll still give them five, since these are two separate items.
That's what I was gonna say.
We'll go ahead and give them five minutes, though, for, for the record, they're not appellants on this, previously appellants, now they're just members of the public speaking on this item. Okay.
Thanks for the clarification, and Patrick McGibney is also the only speaker that we have, so. Patrick McGibney, go ahead.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll only take a few minutes here. You're using four, okay. I'm with the Sustainability Group, and as stated in the last four other appeals regarding the Los Osos Water Basin and quoted from DWR's Best Management Practices, where they say, "The basin yield metric is neither an indication of nor proof of sustainability," end of quote. That is the metric you are using to show our basin is sustainable. But why would that be? Well, because the sustainable yield and the basin yield metric are variables based on estimates. That was shown in 2015, when the basin management committee raised the sustainable yield in order to drop the basin yield metric, basing this increase on basin programs that were never completed, overdrafting the Los Osos Water Basin for six years, until they recalculated without those uncompleted programs, and the new, and the model showed them to drop the sustainable yield to 2380 acre-feet yearly, putting the basin yield metric at over 80%, as it should have been for the previous six years. But lo and behold, we had rain that year, so residents and farms did not have to water as much, which dropped the extraction from the basin and also dropped the basin yield metric to under 70, and that is what you are basing long-term sustainability on. In summary, after 10 years of basin management, with three of the four target metrics unmet, the water chloride and nitrate levels, that would imply the basin isn't working, or the basin plan isn't working, or it's being implemented improperly. But the main thing that this would indicate is that the Los Osos Water Basin is not yet sustainable. That's not an opinion, but that's what the data shows. As previously stated, any additional intensification of our water basin will only worsen the critical overdraft that the Department of Water Resources says our basin is experiencing right now.
overdraft that the Department of Water Resources says our basin is experiencing right now. Take the precautionary approach and uphold the appeals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there any other, so there's no other members of the public signed up to speak to us on this item, so, okay, okay, so I'll turn it back to staff.
Thank you, Chair Cummings, and I'm gonna make a few similar points in response to these two projects as well. So just as a, as a reminder, the commission last year found there to be inadequate and sustainable water supply to serve a limited amount of new development in Los Osos, and that determination was based on evidence by the county's Los Osos Basin Management Committee, or BMC, and Groundwater Sustainability Office, that the community was using less water than its sustainable yield. And sustainable yield is a familiar concept in groundwater management. It basically stands for an amount of water being pumped that is not leading to any adverse impacts, including on things like seawater intrusion, contaminated drinking water quality, or impacts to protected resources like creeks and wetlands. The BMC continuously studies the basin and identifies its sustainable yield, and so the commission approved the LCP based on that understanding, including a requirement that development is only allowed if the basin is within its sustainable yield. Now, to be clear, that, excuse me, that the basin is being pumped within its sustainable yield does not mean there are no more issues. The basin was overpumped for decades, and it does suffer from seawater intrusion and nitrate contamination from too many septic systems. These will continue to be issues for many years to fully resolve, and in some locations, based on complex groundwater hydrogeology, it may actually get a little worse before it gets better. But, and importantly, we knew this. In fact, much of the deliberation and discussion as part of last year's LCP hearing was on this point, in terms of differentiating between the basin's inputs and outputs as, outputs as a whole versus discrete locations suffering from legacy pollutants and the amount of time it would take to fully heal. So in our view, and confirmed by the county's groundwater experts, the issues raised today are not new, but are actually consistent with our overall understanding of where the science tells us the basin is. Yes, there are still some places with high chloride levels, but the basin overall, based on the totality of information we have and confirmed by the county's groundwater watchdogs, is within its sustainable yield. And based on that, new water-using development, like these two products today, can be found LCP-consistent. And again, just to reiterate that we continue to take these issues seriously. We've met with Mr. McGimney and the Sustainability Group to discuss their water supply concerns. We, we have worked extensively with the county to stay abreast of the water supply situation, and reviewed the materials submitted as part of these specific projects, including in terms of elevated chlorides that was discussed previously. And so we are not making these determinations in a vacuum, but are instead relying on those tasks with ensuring the basin remains sustainable. And if the BMC identifies the basin to not be in its sustainable yield, we will make sure that's reflected in the county's CDP decisions moving forward. And again, I'd note the county is here with any technical questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, bring it back to the commission for any questions, comments, action.
Happy to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Hart?
All right, I move the commission approve coastal development permit number A dash three dash SLO dash two three dash zero zero two zero pursuant to the staff recommendation, and I'm asking for a yes vote.
I'll second, but I just wanted to note that this is something that will be continually monitored, because as we see, we're, now that there's water, we're seeing more applications. So we are going to be looking at things on a case-by-case basis and keeping abreast of the water situation, getting affirmative head nods from our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Hart, seconded by Commissioner Nofov. Does, maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. Does any member of the commission object to unanimous consent? Seeing no objection, motion passes unanimously, and that concludes...
Don't we have to, do we have to do the other?
Oh, we have to do two, yeah, sorry. I thought we did, yeah, that's right, never mind.
I'm sorry. I move, I move that commission approve coastal development permit number A dash three dash SLO dash two four dash zero zero one, zero zero one one pursuant to the staff recommendation, and I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Hart, seconded by Commissioner Nofov. Maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. Like to see if the, there's anybody in the commission who objects to unanimous consent. Seeing none, that passes unanimously. And with that, we now end our regular agenda for Thursday, and we will now go into closed session. We want to thank everybody for coming out today, and we will see you all tomorrow.